Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the strategic planning session. As mayor, I'm honored to be here today and look forward to discussing our future plans. And I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Councilor Robach.
Yes, councilmember Kelman.
Here.
Councilmember Lando. Councilmember Steele.
Here.
Mayor Procham, Sustarsik, and Mayor Moore.
Here.
Are present.
And we'll move to oral communications. At this time, members of the public may address the council regarding items on the agenda. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on any items not on the agenda unless authorized by law. Matters not on the agenda may, at the council's discretion, be referred to the city managers placed on a future agenda. Those members of the public wishing to speak are asked to come forward to the microphone and state their name for the record. All speakers will be limited to a period of five minutes. Speakers must address their comments only to the mayor and entire city council and not to any individual member of the staff or audience. Any documents for review should be presented to the city clerk for distribution. And if you have any one who would like to speak in the public, please state your name.
I'm Catherine Showalter, and I serve as the environmental, on the environmental quality control board representing District Four. So, good morning, Mayor Moore, Mayor Procham, Sustarsik, and councilmembers. I offer three comments regarding the strategic planning workshop this morning. First of all, it has to do with the community outreach for today's meeting. The only materials available online to me was the meeting notice and agenda, and I'm sure that's true to for other community members as well. When Googling, I found a 2020 strategic plan document that had not been updated in three years. Please include a link to the material so that the public has a resource when making comments. So, the materials for today's meeting, any kind of tracking, anything that had taken place since the last strategic planning meeting, I was not privy to. And so, it's hard to make public comments when that material is not available to the public. The second comment I have has to do, again, with community outreach, but it's for the potential developments such as the Old Ranch project. And I would really appreciate if something is included in the strategic plan as far as items coming out of this meeting today. So, we know that there's going to be a public workshop for the EIR and scoping and all for that Old Ranch project. And I'm hoping that we can really get the word out to the community and reserve a meeting site that's large enough to accommodate at least 100 community members. Please, let's not repeat the mistake that the Los Alamos City made when regarding the Lampsit project. People were in the lobby, they were outside, couldn't even get in the door. Community members regarding the project and wanting to make comments weren't able to approach. And so, I just want to make sure that we can do something in advance. Maybe because we know it's in the fall, it's coming, October, November, whatever, reserve the McGaw Auditorium, the high school auditorium. Could be a great civics project for students at the high school to watch. My message is, let's please be prepared and not repeat the mistake that happened at Los Alamos. And then, my third comment has to do with a strategic issue that's coming and that's not here today. And that is the 2028 LA Olympics. It's only five years away, and that seems like a long time, but it's really not. So, events are going to be held next door at our neighbor in Long Beach, also the Honda Center in Anaheim. So, just to give you a sense of what's happening, at the Long Beach waterfront, BMX racing, water polo, the triathlon, and open water swimming will be taking place. At the Long Beach Arena, handball. At the Belmont Veterans Memorial Pier, sailing. And at the Long Beach Marine Stadium, rowing and a canoe sprint. So, that's just a touch. You know, we know there's lots of events going on in UCLA and USC and other venues in downtown LA. But there's going to be a lot happening here, and I just want, again, for us to be prepared, whatever that means. Are we at the table? Are we talking about maybe potential transportation through the Orange County Transit District or Long Beach Transit? If community members want to go to some of these events in even Long Beach. It's just putting it out there and let's start thinking about it. There's meetings taking place, there's volunteer opportunities. And some of you city council members may be already doing things and aware of things that I'm not aware of. So, and if so, then let's let the community know. Let's get excited about this. This is a big deal. So, those are my comments I offer this morning. Thank you very much.
My name is Pete Arnold, longtime resident, Seal Beach. My first time I attended this was last year. I was terribly disappointed in the amount of the public that showed up. I don't want to think this should turn into a city council meeting. But maybe the council members and welcome new council members, it is a full-time job. And somehow, maybe they could select somebody else to come with them. So, they would better understand than having the big hoopla go down at the city council meeting. So, if we had an extra 10 or 12 or 15 people here for taking notes, for debating with you or without you, or approving whatever you like, I think that's fine, but I don't know how to set that up where it wouldn't turn into another council meeting. I'd like to thank everyone on the council and staff for going through what I thought was a very tough year. Even though COVID was over, we had storms, we had flooding. We have the almighty God, the state of California, dictating what we have to do. And a lot of trash coming down the river. And I think that's one of my biggest issues, and I know it's probably an endless problem because you've got old 50 cities between here and San Gabriel, dumping their waste into their San Gabriel River. But thank you for what you do. The berm is going down, the wind is still blowing. I don't understand what the Navy's doing, but sometimes I'm concerned about that. But stay healthy and thanks again for what you do. New members, good luck. Remember, it's a full-time job.
Any other public comments? Okay, I'd just like to say thank you to the consultants who worked with staff in the council before the meeting. From previous strategic planning meetings, I've been impressed with how they cover things and keep us all focused. And this meeting is a great opportunity for the council and city staff to meet a few times each year to collaborate together. And I encourage everyone to be open-minded, creative, and disruptive in our discussions. And let's work together to create a plan that will make our city the best it can be. Thank you for being here, and pass on to the city manager.
Well, good morning, council. Just for clarity purposes, our staff team will be arriving right around the first break this morning and we start actually getting in for the strategic plan discussion. So, just wanted you to know they will be here in just a little day. I want to thank all of you. I know for Lisa and Nathan especially, want to acknowledge the fact that last September, you were two of the only, I think they have 10 council candidates, but two of the nine, our incumbent council member excluded, that stayed for the entire day with us and were fully engaged in this process. And now, you're getting to see it from this side of the table. So, I think you'll, both of you will see that it's a completely different process from your perspective now being here at the table and having an important role in this process. This is my 12th year doing strategic planning as your city manager. And I want to say thank you to this council for your ongoing commitment to this process. It's something that was extremely important to me 12 years ago when I became the city manager in previous councils. And councils thereafter have continued to embrace this process because of how significantly important it is to our community. I know the mayor already acknowledged, our team that's with us today, Rick Hayden and Carol Jacobs, can't say enough about the credibility and the experience and the expertise that they bring to this process. This is Rick's fourth strategic planning process with us. I know it's difficult to remember, you know, before COVID, that Rick started with us. I believe it was actually just a few weeks prior to when we declared a local emergency and statewide and national emergency. Carol is, she's, I've worked with her for several years. The two of them are retired city managers. You know, Carol in her, before becoming a city manager, was in finance. She was finance director. And so, the significant amount of experience that the two of them bring, the credibility that they bring, not only to this process, but as former public sector professionals and the embrace, the importance of working with council members and how successful we can be working alongside of our staff team. So, I want to thank the two of you. I know with the three of us combined, probably over 100 years of experience working with elected officials, I know, right? But I especially want to acknowledge that and appreciate everything that they do, especially with this process. I mean, there's a lot of time, I know it's maybe from the public's perspective, it appears that we just show up here and we have a meeting. There's been a significant amount of time and days and hours and weeks preparing for this process so that we can make it a really successful day for all of us, for our city and for our community. Everything from individual, as all of you know, individual interviews that you each had with both Rick and Carol to talk about, you know, the city from your perspective and what we've accomplished over the last six months, what you see as, you know, challenges. And that, all of that helps frame why we're here today, which is to talk about our priorities. So, I want to thank everyone. I know my staff team is not here, but to thank them as well. And really, for the time that you've expended on our behalf to make this a successful day. Also, want to acknowledge SBTV3 that's here, Matt and Tim, thank you very much. I know Robin, as you know, is not able to be with us today, but Matt especially, who's been working behind the scenes, keeping things moving over the last couple of months. They're audio recording today's meeting so that it will be available, as we have in previous strategic planning meetings. It will be uploaded to the website, so for the public, and we would encourage them to come and listen. If they're not able to be here with us today, to listen to the audio recording, so that will be available. And then, also, last but definitely not least, want to acknowledge Megan Coats, my executive assistant, who's worked very closely, not only with Rick and Carol, but with our team in this process in terms of where we're at and also the, every logistic that you see here today is a result of her work and coordination with both Rick and Carol and myself on behalf of the city. So, Megan, thank you for being you and for what you do and for the role that you play today with us. Thank you. And so, with that, I will turn it over to Rick for to get us started today. Rick, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill, and good morning, everybody. One of the things we want to do before we start today is to go over the city's civility principles. And we ask Gloria to go over those with us today because they're basically a very important part of the city and the city's character. And we wanted to hear two of their principles today.
Thank you, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, and members of the city council, city manager, Ina. Thank you for the opportunity to restate and promote the city's civility principles. During challenging times, when resources are lean and when we are doing more than less, there is a tendency for us to become impatient and unkind. So, this is just a reminder that as we start each day and as we start each meeting, let us be mindful of the chief civility principles and the policy that this city council or the previous city council approved back in September, on September 12, 2020, I'm sorry, 2018. And they were later adopted by resolution at the October 22, 2018 council meeting. What chief civility really is, it is a wave of social change which embraces and it promotes meaningful dialogue between the city council, the board and the commissions, as well as staff and the community. So, with that, I will go over these principles. The first point is that we will treat everyone courteously, and that goes without saying. I think I said that last time, too. Number two, we will listen to others respectfully. I wrote a little comment here, we can always find common ground, even in difficult conversations. The third one is, we will exercise self-control. The fourth one, give open-minded consideration to all viewpoints. Number five, focus on the issues and avoid personalizing debate. Because as we work together, we can achieve a lot. And finally, number six, we will embrace respectful disagreement and dissent as democratic rights, inherent components of an inclusive process, and tools for forging sound decision. I would like to let you all know that staff remains dedicated and committed to the chief civility principles. And we're grateful to council, who has also offered their support and their commitment of these principles as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gloria. Carol and I are going to be going back and forth between the table and podium today. So, on behalf of Carol and I, I'd like to thank you again for having us here. This is my fourth talk with the city. I really enjoy working with city Seal Beach. One, you have beautiful community. Two, you have excellent staff. And three, as Gloria mentioned, you have the civility principles. Not a lot of cities have civility principles. And in this day of age, I think those are important to have as far as working together as a team. Gloria mentioned, we can do, I think your comment was, we can work together, we can achieve a lot. And that's what we're here today to try to achieve a lot. And the step forward, your principles going forward, your highest priorities for the next fiscal year starting July. The objectives that we have for today is a couple things different than what we've done before in the past. In the past, what we've done is we have concentrated on strategic priorities, strategic priorities. This year, in talking to your city manager, we wanted to take two steps back and take a look at primarily roles, norms, protocols, since we have two council members, it gives us an opportunity to get to know them and also present, get to know their colleagues a little bit. So, we're hoping today would be a good engaging discussion. Talk a little bit about going over the norms. And we have some suggested norms for council to discern that we've seen from other cities that we thought would be good to expose you to as well. And then, seek consensus on what the key priorities should be going forward for the next fiscal year. And then, the purpose of today, also, an activity like today is to just win the team and not affect it. The agenda for today, we're going to start with a little icebreaker for the council and for the city attorney and the city manager and the city clerk. That way, you get to know each other a little bit, find out what you have in common. There are some cities that city councils do not interact, except when they're on the diets. And it's hard to have a good instructive team when you don't know each other. And the more you get to know each other, the more you're able to get to know, you know, what's your priorities individually and what the city priorities should be collectively. Basically, have a role clarification exercise, go over, we provided for council prior to this meeting, a article to read, talk a little bit about that. Go over a little bit about governing norms with some other cities, you have a part in governing norms, considering. You have rules of decorum, which are excellent, but I think you can talk with that here on some other norms as well, too. Talk about some key accomplishments and challenges. Around that time is when the department head is going to be coming in, that point you need to clarify on any type of accomplishments and challenges you have in department head's career, except for other experts to call upon. And then, we're going to get into immediate development. We're going to be talking about priorities. What should the priorities be? What priorities for this current fiscal year? What's the status of accomplishing those? We'll argue in the process. And then, also identify what the priority should be going forward for the next fiscal year. And then, we'll wrap it up. The goal of the day today is to wrap our looking at my career clock as we review the key. What I want to do now is just turn it over to Carol and have her talk about some suggested principles for the day.
Good morning. It's a pleasure. It's an absolute pleasure to be here in Seal Beach, I have to say. Very, very early in my career, I, I used to be the county councilwoman a thousand years ago. So, Seal Beach is near and dear to my heart, and I've been here, I just really enjoy this community and how well it's run and how well you have chosen to see this for 30, 32 years. So, today, what I, what I really want to do is talk about some boundaries. Couple things that's going to make this day go easier, not like here, but any time you're interacting with each other. You want to listen to understand each other's point of view. You all come from very different backgrounds. And when we listen to understand and not just listen, or not just listen to see like, what am I going to respond to? Our conversations are going to be much more fruitful. We want to seek consensus. You have to at least see you to make a decision. And go be consensus, even when there's disagreement, it's an important part of using a councilman. Assume good intention. As Jill said earlier, 30 years of watching council meetings, 30, 30, 35 years. You know, we, I have never met a councilmember that said, I want to be a councilman because I want to really mess up the town. I don't, you know, this is a terrible thing and I want to just rep with that. We all come to this job because we want to do something that's good for your communities. That is, that is what you all have in common. Where, how you get there and how you think about that is a little bit different. But when you all are speaking to different, assuming the other person has good intention. That they, that they want what is best for the, what's best for the organization and what's best for the city. During the day, you do some scrolls and you think we're not on track, you know, let us know and we'll, of course, correct and we'll move us, move us back in the right direction. And really, today, it's about, it's all about you and let's stay focused on what we're trying to accomplish. And your input and your conversations is going to be really important today. The other thing we have is what we call the bike rack. So, there are going to be things that maybe you don't want to talk about that don't really belong in this conversation today. So, what we'll do is we'll put them on the bike rack over there. We'll refer, we'll go there, write it down. And that'll be something that Rick, not Rick, Jill, will, will come back to the council and talk about at a later date. But it's really not going to be part of this priority setting that we're, that we're talking about today. Okay, ice breaks. Eagles, that's all you do. But, but today, I think this is so important because you do have two new councilmembers. And your opportunities to talk together as a group is really limited. So, what we want to do today, there's a piece of paper in your packet that says the comments. And Jill, and Nick, who I didn't know yet, and Gloria are going to participate in this as well. And we'll give you about 10 minutes. What I want you to do is to try and talk with everyone, everyone in the group and find out two or three things that are not work-related, that are not Seal Beach-related, something that you have in common. And write that down. Okay? Questions? Pretty easy, pretty easy. And I, and I would be surprised, y'all can't find something in common. So, we have, it's 9:24, so we have till 9:34 to go ahead and do that and ready, get up and go.
Pretty easy. Yeah, what we're going to do is basically say, is that what you want to do? Surprise you with things you have.
I thought it was, she was calling you too.
Survivor. Oh, okay. I've seen every episode of Survivor at least three times.
I'm 44.
Yeah, it's on CBS as a half. Something else I met yesterday.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah?
That was our first introduction to Jill was my neighbor, Grupe Huster. And you don't got to make it back.
Yes.
North Lakes. One of my favorite Christian songs, which is, His Name Is...
Travel.
If you go to church, you know that song, it's like a beautiful song.
Keep it up.
You were a volleyball player.
There are about five minutes left, so just keep you on track.
This is Gorill.
Okay. Pretty sweet. I went to use a C O. Yeah, once. But uh, I feel like going back to. Started. Why did I find first time? Yeah, where did we go?
Just got six pounds off.
Just watched a movie, Freddy, places, it was on TV and I just love movies. Keep it on. And I was looking at, what does it mean, what did they do with the M? You pull this one fast one year, the, the, the. What do you have to do on sign up? That's a hundred percent. Nick.
Uh, it depends which first class, I think. Yeah, the flying app probably, probably hurt the ones. Just one from there.
The last thing I wanna do is get cross with the office.
That's his hometown, everybody.
Yeah, just last name. I can't sing that, I don't like that, I use the lines. I sprinkle some grandparents. But I'm. Balls. Actually, when I travel around, although. Mexican. I never found a Mexican until two.
Alright, you guys, wrap this up. So Carol, you saw the hesitation, but everybody was totally. I saw a lot of smiles, what I saw, a lot of, it appeared to be really good conversation. So, does anybody wanna share what they learned about somebody that you didn't know before? Be brave and start.
Joe Kalmick and I both have foot pain.
Okay.
We got that in common.
Got that in common, alright. Anybody else want to share?
Joe Kalmick and I both had earth shoes. Earth shoes.
Earth shoes.
Let's spend an hour.
No, alright, maybe not, okay. Not all the same time.
Earth shoes had a recessive, very aggressive heel. Back in the hippie era. This was the greatest.
Greatest shoe ever.
You know, Joe and I are the only people who know what earth shoes are.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'll see their skin.
Something else in common.
Yeah, okay. Who else?
Yeah, uh, Nick and I like Seinfeld and Game, Game of Thrones.
Alright, alright, alright. Who else?
Um, Nick and I have twins in common, cause I'm an identical twin, but he's got a different twin.
My sister was born a year or less two days after me, so we're Irish twins.
Ah, okay, alright, that's a good stretch.
So you guys have never wondered, is it really me that's here?
Yeah.
I've seen yours, I've seen yours, and we'll never tell.
Who else?
Gloria and I are both night owls.
Night owl.
There you go.
I'll share one more, Lisa and I are Midwestern girls, so we were both born in the Midwest. And our fathers' careers brought us to Southern California. My dad, we came here in the late sixties, cause my dad got hired at McDonald Douglas. Um, and then Lisa's same, same thing, her father's career brought her, brought her here.
You see, you're not all so bad, right? When you get into those really hot political discussions, you gotta go. But we both came from Midwest, we're all. Alright, come on, come on. So, I hope that gave you an opportunity to kinda share with each other. You know, we're all human beings at the end of the day, and we all have things in common. And you're all working for a common purpose, and that's to make Seal Beach the best city it can be. And if you keep that in your mind all the time, even when things get hot heated, you'll get through it and you'll, you'll go to live another day. I am going to let Rick take over now.
Great. Thank you, Carol. And, you know, Carol, Carol brought up a, a good point, you know. You could get into some heated discussions, you may have some philosophical differences with each other. Uh, you may have some, uh, political differences with each other, but at the end of the day, you all have a commonality. And that's, you want the best for the city of Seal Beach. Uh, Carol and I were talking about a little earlier, what do we have in common? And one of the things, we're both football fans and, uh, pro football fans. And I started thinking about it and I said, Seal Beach. The year was nineteen seventy-four. I was here visiting my great aunt and my great uncle, who lived in Leisure World. Uh, and the reason why I remember that is because that's when the, uh, Miami Dolphins played the, uh, Minnesota Vikings. And I remember distinctly being a big football fan, last thing I wanted to do was come all the way down to Southern California and see my great aunt, great uncle, but they decided you can watch it on their TV, they have a colored TV. So you can watch it in color. So that, that was, that was my exciting day, you know, for that, so. We wanna talk about governance and why teamwork is important. And again, from, from a teamwork perspective, it feels all with communication, is how you deal with each other from that perspective. Uh, your working together as a team impacts a lot of things, uh, regionally. It, it impacts your regional relationship with some of your, uh, public sector partners from that perspective. You have a lot of regional influence, uh, and that's important because you don't have a lot of control over what happens here locally in, in the city of, uh, Seal Beach. You have the Coastal Commission, you have the State Lands Commission, uh, you have Caltrans, you have, uh, Orange County Transportation Authority, you have the Fire Authority. You know, those are things that impact the city, but you really don't have that much control over what happens in their areas, in their lanes, uh, but you can influence them from that perspective. Strategic direction, uh, economic development, how you function collectively as a council impacts economic development. I can tell you that if, if, if a developer wants to come to town, if a builder wants to come to town and do a project in the city of Seal Beach, they're gonna be watching the city council meetings. They're gonna be watching how you interact with each other to see how difficult will it be to get a development through the process. If they see problems from an interaction standpoint on the council, they may take that business someplace else. Uh, because time is money for them, and they wanna make sure that they can deal, uh, with council as effectively as they can. Staffing, I know you've had a couple of recent hires as far as department heads are concerned, uh, in the city over this last year. I can guarantee you that those new candidates for these jobs are watching your council meetings. They don't wanna end up at a city council with, that's dysfunctional, that can't get along. And there's some cities that are having a horrendous time recruiting right now for department heads. Why? Because the candidates and the applicants, they watch the city council meetings and they go, whoa, 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 whoa. I, I, I don't wanna go there. I can see what's happening at the council meetings, I don't wanna go there. And, and so, your ability to get along with each other speaks volumes from that perspective. Uh, because it trickles through the organization also. You know, how, how you approach each other on the dais also affects how the organization functions as well too. So teamwork is important from that perspective. Teamwork is, is like a sport, I love sports. Watched the NCAA the other night, I was, I was really pulling for San Diego State on that one. Uh, I thought there was hope, you know, but they just couldn't have a comeback from that perspective. But it is, it, it is working together, uh, in order to be effective, uh, from a city council perspective. Talks about, requires clear roles, we're gonna go over role distinctions in a little while. Uh, also talks about cooperation and persuasion. Reason why we say cooperation persuasion is because you were elected, uh, by your constituents in your district. Every vote counts from that perspective. But you can't deliver anything to your constituents unless you can get along with your colleagues. So the votes that count now is on your left and on your right, from that perspective. Because it takes three votes to get something accomplished. You can't accomplish anything as a council member, but you can count, accomplish a lot as a voting majority of three. And that's important to remember, always count to three. I once gave a, uh, presentation to city employees, and it was geared towards the engineers, uh, and the public works folks, because there was a lot of things that came down from a council perspective that they didn't understand why they were doing it, and my presentation basically was an exercise, and it was three plus two equals four. And they said, no, it doesn't, it equals five. I said, no, if you have three council members that say it equals four, I'm telling you, it's gonna equal four. So you gotta go along with that equation. The rule of three is very, very important. And then commitment to the relationship. Commitment to the relationship to each other and also to staff, to your city attorney, to your city manager from that perspective. I, I don't know, you know, how well each of you know each other from, from a council perspective, you have two new council members on board. I would encourage you, go to coffee, you know, have lunch, get to know each other, because the more you get to know each other, the more you're able to communicate effectively from that perspective. Even if it's hard discussions and hard deliberations to have, at the end of the day, you know each other and so you're able to work through those hard discussions. Exceptional city councils, uh, we, we provided you a, a handout, uh, prior to this meeting, uh, regarding, uh, the Institute for Local Government. And it talks about what makes city councils exceptional, effective from that perspective. And it says that councils have a, a sense of a team. And they partner with the city manager to govern and to manage the city. You're elected by districts, you know, but, but we encourage you that when you, when you govern, to govern on a citywide perspective while being mindful of the district that you re- represent. You have clear roles and responsibilities, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna talk about that in, in, in a few minutes. You honor the relationship with staff and each other, you know. You have a rule of decorum, you have rules that you follow, you have the civility principles that you, that you adhere to. Those deal with honoring those relationships. And then it talks about having effective, uh, meetings and, and holding yourself and the city accountable. That's where protocols come in, that's where norms come in. And then also having a continuous practice of improvement, that's where training comes in. League of California Cities, if you haven't gone to any of the League of California City meetings, they're phenomenal. Uh, you're able to interact with colleagues from other cities, compare notes. Find out what's going on in the other cities, what concepts are they dealing with, what issues are they dealing with, how do they deal with those issues? The more information you get, the better you are when you're on the dais and you're having to deliberate those things. Questions about the, the article, was, was there anything that, that may have resonated with you? You know, uh, in the, uh, exceptional city council article is by the Institute of, uh, Local Government, this one? You know, in the exceptional city council article by the Institute of Local Government, this one? One of the things that it mentioned in the article was, once a decision is made, you should commit and respect the majority view. You know, that's a concept that Intel brought up many years ago back in the eighties. And it's called disagree and commit. And basically what that is, is when you're having deliberations on a very controversial issue, it's fine to disagree with your colleague, if you disagree, you know, professionally. But at the end of the day, whatever the majority of the council comes up with, you should respect that decision and then move on from there. That's one of the things I always used to emphasize when I was talking to my city councils. Any other thoughts, comments regarding the IOG article?
I would just say that it's been my experience that our council has pretty much, by default adopted these principles. And it's been made very clear to me how successful that's made us. When you just look at a particular city, it's one of our neighbors that is at this point, in my opinion, not following any of these principles.
And a lot of this is a refresher as far as it's a best practice type thing. And, you know, Carol and I, we deal with a lot of cities. And there's some times where, when we have done this type of an exercise on the commons, councils aren't even engaging because there's just so much tension in the room that they don't really want to talk to their coward part. So what you're doing here is working, it's good and we applaud you for that.
Yeah, Rick, if I could, I'd just add a couple of things, because, you know, some of the things I took out of this article. And to Joe's point, you know, we're really blessed to have a council that collaborates. Even when they don't agree with each other, they're respectful in their disagreement. And this process has allowed us, I think from the very beginning, from staff's perspective, because you're elected by district, you know, we're constantly trying to figure out, but how can we get the council to be looking at a citywide perspective as a whole? And so, I think we've come a long way over the last almost twelve years in terms of their perspective, their willingness to collaborate and look at the city as a whole. And this process has been significant in getting us there. I'll also add to your point about, you know, everything that you do, everything that you say, the discussions that you have, the actions that you take, how you get there, everyone's watching. And so, from a staff perspective, I mean, even if you're not saying anything, that sends a message to us at the staff level. And so, again, appreciate and thank you for, you know, you working together and your commitment to continue to work together collaboratively in decision making. Because it does, it trickles down even to, you know, at the entry level staff person, they're watching and that impacts their work as well. So thank you for your ongoing commitment.
Well, one thing that has become also very evident to me is a lot of cities are being forced to go to districts that have at large, I mean, they think that this is the worst thing that's ever happened to them. Whereas having grown up with districts, to me, everything is easier. Getting elected, dealing with constituents, it's much more focused. But the people that I've come in contact with throughout all the Orange County cities, they hate it.
They hate districts.
They do not like districts.
Well, I love my little district.
So it's interesting to see how, what, you know, I never would have given any thought to, makes a huge difference in the psychology of the people running for those positions.
I like, I like the fact that districts allow or make it so that you don't have a council concentrated in one area of the city and you get certain areas overlooked. You have a representative that, you know, is more familiar with your district than, you know, wherever the focus is, at least you're not, you don't have as much forgotten, you know, people are looking at your, you know, the beach, Leisure World up here, you know.
Yeah, and you have a unique situation because you've grown up through the district process, you know, over the last dozen years. A lot of cities were forced to go to districts. My last city that I worked at was forced to go to a district because of a lawsuit. And so, they're grappling with, because they don't know, they don't know what's in store for them. How are we going to function? How are we going to govern? We give a lot of presentations on governing through districts and how to set up the governing process in districts. Again, you know, look at the city as a whole, but be mindful of the district that you represent when it comes to decisions. Thank you for sharing that. Now we're going to take a look, kind of segue a little bit on roles and responsibilities. Again, the Institute of Local Government came up with the fact that everybody needs to know what their roles are. Everybody needs to know what their responsibilities are from that perspective. You know, the mayor, you have a new mayor this year. You know, he presides over the city council meetings, it's a ceremonial position from that perspective. The city council, you set the goals and the policies from there. You're dealing with the overarching direction as to where the city wants to go. You define the what, basically through policies. And then it's up to the city manager to deliver on the how. How do those policies get implemented? And they do that through her department heads and her city staff. And then the city attorney is there to provide, you know, legal advice to the city councils from that perspective as well too. So role clarification is important. I don't think you have an issue with role clarification in this city based off of the comments that we received from the city council during our interviews, but we thought it would be good to go over those as well too. You have a document called Council Rules of Procedures. And it talks about basically what it's like during council meetings as far as the process that you adhere to. It's primarily guidelines for the city council to follow during city council meetings. Talks about your meeting policy, goes over the agenda, talks about rules of decorum during the council meetings. One of the items is item number ten, talks about the relationship. The relationship between city staff and the policymakers, the city council. And it talks about the clarification between those roles and how important it is to have a separation between those roles. In that section, it talks about in the Rules and Procedures, Chapter Ten, Ten B and Ten C. And it talks about, council is a policymaking body and the city manager is the administrator of those policies. Also talks about council members deal administratively through the city manager. A good colleague of mine, Ken Happy, and he worked at the nearby city of Salas Obispo when I was in the city of Santa Maria. He wrote an article years ago, probably about fifteen, fifteen or almost probably twenty years ago, called The Six Reasons Why It's Best to Work Through the City Manager. And he wrote it not from the city manager's perspective, but he wrote it from a council member's perspective as to the reasons why it's always good to work through the city manager because they're the administrative officer of the city. They don't deal with the politics, but they deal with more of the procedural and the business aspects of that. And I think your city charter goes one step further and it says, "The city council nor any of its members shall interfere with the execution of the city manager's duties", which is important. And that's basically saying, please work through the city manager when you have an issue. Jill, I'm not too sure what your policy is when you're dealing, you know, with council members and dealing with department heads. You know, is there a preference that you have as far as work through you or, you know, if they talk to a department head, do they let you know just out of council contact?
Sure, no, my practice has always been, you know, I want the council, each of them individually, to have access to department heads. And likewise, I want department heads to have access to the council because I think there's value on both sides of that. I think the more our staff team understands who the council's members are, what's important to them, and that helps drive our policy recommendations. And same for council members, I think it's so much, it provides so much value to them to know who our department heads are at a personal level as well. All that I ask is just, and from the staff team especially, is if they have, you know, communication with the council member, that they let me know what it was about, so we know if there's some policy, you know, direction that we may be potentially looking at. And then likewise from the council, because ultimately, at the end of the day, I'm the one that's responsible. So if a department head agrees to do something on, you know, for a council member, they don't let me know that and then something falls through the cracks, then I'm going to be held responsible for it. And so it's just a, you know, mutual respect in terms of communication. And it works, it's worked really well for us on several levels.
I'd like to chime in, just if I'm going to talk to a department head, I'll talk to Jill first and just make sure that's acceptable. Just that occurred, you know, I think it's important to make sure she's always in the loop, so. And then also like an email or something to a department head, I'll make sure that Jill's included on the email, so she's in the loop. And if we are, have a concern with the department head, just to keep the city manager in the loop.
Excellent, excellent comment on that. I didn't prep your mayor before I said that, but I mean, you knocked it out of the wall on that one. So, yeah, I mean, continue to keep the city manager in the loop, that's extremely important. One thing that I would highly suggest from a former city manager's standpoint is when you do talk to staff, try to keep it to the city department head level. Try not to go down into the staff directly from that perspective because they may not understand the totality of your question and they may just give you a little bit of an answer without taking a look at the totality as to what the bigger picture ramifications are. That's why your department heads are key to talk to and your city manager from that perspective.
Are we going to talk about the awesomeness factor?
We can, yes. Yeah, no, one of the things that I shared with Jill was, as a city council member, a newly city council member, and any, whether it's the mayor or the council, how you're viewed from staff is different than how you were viewed before you got elected. And so, you may just have a simple question or a simple comment to a staff member. They may view it a lot differently than how it's intended. A couple of years ago, I was at a city and we were talking about this and the Recreation Parks Director raised their hand and said, "We just went through that about six months ago." I said, "Sure." And he said, "Yeah." He said, "I had a requisition hit my desk that we need a hundred new chairs." And I'm like, for one of our rec centers, "Why do we need a hundred new chairs?" Well, we had a council member that was in there at a meeting and came up to the staff and said, "You need to do something about these chairs, they're pretty hard." Well, they took that as an edict, buy new chairs. So they immediately, and it went up through the chain and everyone said, "Oh, the council member requested it", until it got to the department head and then he said, "Whoa, whoa, 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 wait a minute. We don't need the new chairs, I think, let me give them a call." Called the council member and they said, "Oh no, I was just, I was, my back was hurting that day and I just happened to mention, you need new chairs." So it's the overarching power, perceived power, now that you're a newly elected, you know, city council member and even the mayor now, you know, from that perspective. And then, the other thing is, everybody's entitled to their own opinion. Everyone has an opinion. However, you need to realize that as a council member now, you're representing the city. And so, your opinion may not be viewed as your opinion, it could be viewed as the city's opinion. And so, when you talk to people, you may want to preference it by saying, "Oh, this is my personal opinion. This is not the city council's opinion." Because a lot of people might view that as you're speaking on behalf of the city. So there's that gray area there that you just need to be a little bit concerned about. You guys are doing it correct. I mean, you've never put this type of a slide in before when we've made these types of presentations, but I thought kudos to the council because you do know the role of the city council. Council sets policy, these are verbatim comments that we received during our interviews with council members prior to today's exercise. Council sets the policy, improves the annual budget. Council makes policies with the advice of the city staff and the city manager sees the policy is carried out. Councils like the board of directors, they do not get involved in the daily operations. Council answers to the residents and only supervises to employees, the city manager and the city attorney. A+, A+, A+. I mean, those are exactly, you know, from a former city manager's standpoint, what we would want to hear. So you know your roles and, you know, if you have for the city manager, she appreciates that, I'm sure. So, so going one more step in talking about the effective council manager form, I want to turn it over to Carol and have her talk a little bit about that.
I think you stole some of my slides.
I got a roll.
You are rolling, you're doing great. Again, if every council worked as well as you do together, life would be a lot better for all communities. I've just been so impressed in talking to you all and talking to Jill about the collegiality and the working together. It's so important and almost feel like we don't have to do this for you, but. But being a new council member too, that's like getting a brand new job and there's no rulebook. It's like being a new parent almost, right? There's no rulebook, you don't know what you're supposed to be doing. You don't know what all the rules and regulations are and the guidelines of how you really work together effectively. And so, that's kind of why we want to just kind of refresh this with you. You guys are doing this. From everything we're hearing, you are, you are a good team. You have the right people on the bus. It's very important that those city manager, city council relations remain strong. And I think Mayor Moore, you said it best. The thing that will destroy your relationships is lack of communication. You know, I have seen city managers and city councils go sideways because somebody talked to somebody, you know, the telephone game and by the time it got back to the city manager, it had no bearing on what the actual issue was. And now they want to fire the city manager, right? So that open communication, you know, if there's a conflict, sit down and talk about it first, right? Don't assume what the city manager meant, don't assume what the council member meant. Say, "Hey, you said this the other day and just want to follow up, what did that mean? And is it okay that I, you know, are we good, you know, do you have any concerns?" You know, work through those issues when they happen, don't let those things fester. And that's kind of, works for council, it works for all of our relationships, right? And that's what this is, this is just another relationship in your life that you need to manage. Same with your residents, you need to manage your residents as well. They're coming at you with all kinds of things they want you to do and you want to help them, right? That's why you got elected, because you want to help them. But you want to make sure that you funnel that through the right, through the right person and that's Jill. And Jill's going to make sure that it gets funneled to the right department that can solve that problem for that resident. So that's why that communication is so important. Jill's ultimately responsible. And like Rick said, sometimes you go to a management analyst or somebody, even the organization, a council member walks up to you and they're relatively new, they could be terrified, they're terrified of you, like, "Oh my God, it's the council member. It's the mayor, what should I, how should I act? What do they want to be?" You know, and you really have such a position of authority and respect in the community that they want to make you happy. And so, they will offer to help you, maybe they shouldn't or maybe it needs to go to Jill for further clarification. So you guys are doing a great job with this. So you guys are doing a great job with this. And, um, just something to keep in mind as you, as you move forward, because you have a lot of tough issues ahead of you. And, and you might not feel so collegial all the time. But try to remember, try to put this back in your head. We, we gave you another article to read by Kevin Dugan, who was, um, a very much respected prior city manager. Works for, um, our, um, professional organization, ICMA. Um, what did you, did anybody hopefully read it? Um, I've read it a number of times. Um, what, what did you find interesting about that article? Go ahead.
It clearly, um, shows not only the upside of having an effective relationship, but what the downside can be and the consequences. It can be either annoying, everything from annoying to very serious. And, you know, that's where managing one's district in terms of not running off with the first suggestion by a resident that you need to do this or you need to do that, uh, you can create a lot of havoc for city staff, your colleagues on the council, and the city manager. Put everybody in an awkward position.
Yeah, but always, always taking that breath and, and saying, you know, "Let me check, let me check into it. Let me get back to you. You know, let's see if there's something we can do," instead of just saying, "We can solve this problem." Because everyone's coming just to solve that problem for you. Um, anybody else have any comments about the article? I, I thought this was interesting, and this was mostly for our new council members. New brand new, council's been around a long time. They've made all kinds of policies, decisions that affect the community. The council has made those policy decisions, not Jill. Jill, Jill's job is to implement the policy direction of whatever the city council is. So if there's a policy that you don't like, that's not Jill's fault. That's, that's prior councils. Not nobody sitting here in tune, obviously. But that is, you know, Jill is, Jill's directed to implement policy. And I suspect Jill will never admit it, but sometimes there's a policy that the council wants implemented that she thinks is a really bad idea. And she may have told, told you per, you know, privately that that she thinks is a bad idea. That's her job. It's her job to tell you it's a bad idea and why. But if you guys decide to do it, she's all in. And she's going to implement that with the best of her ability. That's her job. And obviously, she did it pretty well for 12 years. It's a long tenure for a city manager these days, so. Um, but, but that's another thing that I, that I got out of that article is, you know, don't, this, this isn't a blame game. This is a, if you don't like the policy, change the policy. If you don't like the municipal code, change the municipal code. Um, but it's not a, um... It's not the city manager's fault that something is happening because of a, a council policy or a council direction, or the building of a development, or whatever it is, right? It's, it's, it's a policy direction set by the city council. And the other thing is, um, managers don't play favorites. You're like, I, I don't want this to be obnoxious, but you're like your children. There's no favorites. You have children. There's no favorite, right? Each of you have different personalities, and each of you need to be dealt with differently. But don't assume because Jill is meeting with, um, you know, Jo, Moore, that Shelley, and, and you see that, and like, "Oh, my God, she's not paying attention to me." Well, that doesn't... Because some council members require more attention than others based on their personality and their needs. And so she's never playing favorites. She's trying to meet the needs of all five of you, which is a, it's a very tough job sometimes. Not with this group, but other city managers had that problem. So you want to, don't assume ill intent from Jill. Don't assume that she has a favorite. Um, you all are different people. You all have different needs. You're all coming from different perspectives. And she's trying to make sure that all of your, um, concerns are being addressed in the appropriate manner. All right, where we going next?
If I could chime in on that one. I think, I think Jill brought up a good point on, on, you have a, a issue that comes up in your district. And you don't want to jump to conclusions before you talk to staff, because with every issue, there's two sides to every story. And, and so you, you know, like, like Carol mentioned, let me look into that. You talk to the city manager, find out what's going on from, from that perspective. You know, you, you're dealing with district issues. You're dealing with, uh, uh, community perspective on issues. And so you can be very, you know, passionate about that issue, especially if it's in your district. You have to realize that city manager looks at it from, from more of a, a, a professional perspective. Uh, they look at it from the entire city and what ramifications that could have in one district compared to the city in totality. And so, uh, she has a professional obligation and also fiduciary responsibility to give you her professional opinion. It may not be what you want to hear, but like Carol said, you don't want to kill the messenger. Uh, she has an obligation to tell you what she feels professionally you need to hear from that.
And, and this is, I want to share one brief story, um, because it had a, had a major impact on me as city manager. I got a call from a resident one day. Screaming, I am, my mom kept screaming at me, throwing all kinds of curse words at me about a code enforcement officer that I had. "Your code enforcement officer, I want him fired right now. He is the worst ever. He came to my door and he's..." And the code enforcement officer had been up to this residence a number of times for various violations. Came to my door, pounded on the door, screamed at my daughter, and I want him fired. Whoa. And, and I know the staff. Jill knows her staff. And that, and this is the part of the other reason I want to share this. So I said, "That seems so out of character for this guy. Wow." "Hey, come on, mom. What's happening?" So you talked to this guy? "Yeah, I did. Why? What's wrong?" "Well, he wants you fired, apparently." It's like, well, I said, "What happened?" He said, "Well, I drove up to give him a violation. Um, a school bus drove up. And inside the school bus was an autistic child. And the autistic child lived at this house, at this house. So I went to the driver and the kid is not doing well. And he's acting out. And goes to the bus driver, goes, "Hey, can I help you?" He says, "I can't leave this kid alone. And either I have to take him back to school or he has to get into that house." So the code enforcement officer goes to the house, knocks on the door, doesn't get an answer, pounds on the door. This 15-year-old girl opens the door and says, "What?" And she says, "Your brother is out there in the bus, and you need to go get him because he's losing his mind." And she's like, "Oh, oh, okay." And so she goes in, gets the kid, and he goes on, on his way. She tells dad, you know, what happened. And apparently, you know, this guy was completely out of control. She, he's trying to help, right? And so I, I called the father back. I had the code enforcement officer in the room. I said, "Tell me what happened." He explains the story. Goes, "Okay, thank you." And he hands it over. So when a resident tells you something, please, for God's sakes, get the other side of the story. Get the other side of the story. Talk to Jill about it, if it's a personnel issue. Find out what really happened. Find out what that other side of the story is. Between the three of us, we've probably got a zillion stories like that. And, and it just went to show me that you always have to hear both sides, because what you're hearing is not always the, the full story. And it's so important to get both sides so that you can make an appropriate response. If he had done what this resident said he had done, I'd have done something bad to him, right? I would have, I would have written him up or given him days off or something. But that's not what happened. So just want to make sure that, that you keep that in your mind when residents really want you to do something or they're really hopped up about an issue. Talk them off the ledge and then say that you'll look into it with the appropriate people.
I'll just add to that, Carol. This, our, our council's been very good about doing that. And one of the many things I asked for during my annual performance review was just a reminder about the things, you know, that I need to be successful in order to help them be successful as a council. And one of those is through forthright communication, obviously, is giving us the benefit of the doubt, because they're going to hear a lot of those stories, a lot of those complaints, um, out in the community from the residents. And they've been very good about letting me know that, giving us the benefit of the doubt, giving me a chance to get some information and some background on it so that I can get back to them. So, thank you.
And closing that loop is really important, right? It's important for Jill to get back to you and say, "Hey, this is what happened. This is what I did. Case closed. Move on."
One of the interesting phenomena that I've experienced, and I'm sure Shelley and Tom has, that would be of interest to our new council people is that there is an assumption for a mayor in our type of government, as opposed to directly elected mayor, that you have at least two votes and have the legal ability to reverse any decision that the entire council has made. And, uh, you know, I mean, I, the last two years that I was getting phone calls and emails, regardless of what the subject was. And so you, you have to, it, it's a little bit more delicate situation because you don't want to speak for the council person for that particular district where they're telling you that you have to change this. But it's just another, one of the strange things that, that occur. Court of Chief.
Again, you guys gave us a very, very good time. And we really wanted to share with you some of the thoughts you had on, um, the role of the city manager. You guys, you guys have this down pat. You understand what the role of the city manager is. Um, you work through her. You're communicating with her. Um, as council, we should not go around the city manager, but work through her. That is good governance. That's what, that's what keeps this organization healthy. That's what keeps this organization moving forward in the direction that you choose it to move. And that, that's key. Um... Jill, and we'll get to see the rest of the team there in a few minutes. Um, Jill has hired professional staff. They are experts in their field. They know things that Jill doesn't know. They know things that you don't know. And she's hired them for a reason. And remember that they're experts. And so when you have an issue or a concern, talking to the department heads to get their expertise, you know, you'll say, "Well, I want to do this one thing." And, and they'll say, "Well, that's not physically possible because it's a public works project, right? That, you can't, that's not physically possible. We can't do that. And here's why." That's, that's what you hire them for, right? Is to tell you what works, what doesn't work, how to resolve issues, um, how to help interpret, interpret things. You've got a, you've got a city attorney here who will help you interpret legal, legal issues. Um, you know, I always recommend, take your attorney's advice. That's what he's here for. I'll give you a shout out, Nick. Um, you know, and, and the relationship between Nick and Jill has got to be very close as well, right? They have to be communicating with each other. They have to know what's going on. They have to know what you kind of all are thinking and what legal issue you may accidentally step into that you didn't know you were stepping into, right? So when the attorney says, "Hmm, that's probably not a good idea," that might be good advice. And, you know, he's, he, there's a reason he's giving you that advice. And so I want to make, I do want to give a shout out to the attorney, because that attorney-city manager relationship is very important as well. And, you know, they're, they're in close communication, I'm sure, on, on a variety of issues. Um, but tho- those are your, those are your two employees. Those are the only two people you have control over and you can provide direction to technically. And I know we talk about department heads and things, but you're not directing them. You're asking them a question through Jill, and we're getting the answers that way. So just want to make sure that that's another thing we want to talk about. But again, an A+ to you guys on the role. I'm telling you right now, not every city council knows this. Or if they know it, they don't practice it. And that makes life difficult for everybody. So Jill mentioned this a little bit earlier, but, and talking about it in her performance review, but I do think it's good to get it out on the table kind of publicly. And let's, let's talk about... What, what do you need as a city council from Jill so that you can be successful? What, what are the, what's the top two things that would say, "If my city manager did these two things, you know, it would be great and everything would be good, and I would get what I need."
Information.
Information. What else? Come on, there's got to be one there.
Trust.
Trust? Do you have to tell you the truth? I would just say, keep you as a prize of developing issues and...
I'm sorry, what's that?
A prize of developing, developing issues.
Communication.
Communication. Do you need, any, anytime you need explanation or education about a variety of issues? I mean, a lot of things that are coming down from the state now are very convoluted and big and kind of get there. And, you know, there's a, there's an educational process that, especially if you're new to the council and you haven't had to dig deep into these issues. Um, you know, can she help educate you about a variety of issues that you're having to make a decision on? You all have briefings, I assume you all have briefings with her, and she kind of sits down and explains what's, what's happening. The briefings are important.
Heads up on upcoming items on the agenda.
Kind of heads up on upcoming items. Good, good staff work. What happens, what happens when you read a staff report? And you don't have all your, you have a bunch of questions. What do you do?
Ask Jill.
You ask Jill? Okay, good, good answer. You ask Jill, right? Um, and, and you ask Jill privately. And you are welcome to answer, to ask those questions publicly because you want your constituents to know that you're asking, you've asked those pertinent questions. But you're not playing stump the stars, right? It's not stump, it's not stump Jill, it's not stump the staff. It's like, let the staff have those, have those answers for you when you ask it. And it's totally appropriate to do that. But if, but if you're, well, it does two things. One, you get the answers that you need, both privately and publicly. And, and secondly, if there's enough issues that you're bringing up, Jill can make a decision to pull that item and get more information for you until it's ready to, to go to the full council and your, and your questions have been answered, right? So, so there's a couple of options that Jill has. But there's nothing worse for a department head. He's sitting in a council meeting and asks some question on page 48 of a staff report, and they don't, they don't even remember writing it, you know, two and a half weeks ago. And they're embarrassed because they don't know the answer. Jill's embarrassed because they don't know the answer. And you don't have gotten your answer. And now you've publicly kind of humiliated everybody. And there's no point in that, you know? The staff is not going to humiliate you. And, and it needs to work both ways. You know, they're, they're professionals, but sometimes they don't know the answer to everything. And if you just give them that heads up, I guarantee you, they'll find you the answer. So that, that's just another, another way to kind of make sure that you're communicating appropriately with, with all parties that are part of your team. Um, anything else that you have to talk about that what you need from the manager? No? It's a good list. All right. I'm looking for Jill this time. Oh. And Jill, what do, what do you need to be successful? What do you need from the council?
You know, I, I just want to say, the last two election cycles, You know, I just want to say, the last two election cycles, so 2018 and 2022, I didn't have the opportunity to go to Sacramento with new council members as newly elected. Along with me for the LEAK conference, really for them to have a full two and a half, three days to engage in how to be an effective council member. And so, you know, we've taken that on from a staff perspective, from what we think they need as new council members, and then looking for other sources like JPIA, they do an elected council member academy. But again, it's not for, you know, four months after they've already been seated council members. And so, we've spent a significant amount of time talking with them. This last election cycle, our two new council members, we spent time with each one of them individually, with every single one of our department heads. I personally have spent a lot of time with the two new council members. And for the last twelve years, you know, there's commitments that I asked for through my performance review, and a big piece of that is, in order for us to build trust, we have to spend time together. It's just, and I explain it, it's just like any other relationship with your, you know, your significant other or your spouse or your kids. In order to build that mutual respect and trust with each other, we have to spend time together. And every single one of my council members has been willing to do that, whether it's on a weekly basis or a bi-weekly basis, just to have that connection and talk about issues that are important. And of course, being direct with each other is important, we can't build that trust and we're not always going to agree with each other and that's okay. No relationship is perfect that way, but, you know, you need you to be honest and forthright with me about how you're feeling about something. I think, we talked a little bit about it earlier, it's just an understanding and having patience with me that there's five of you and one of me. And if Carol likened it to children, I kind of liken it to, you know, having five spouses and so on. Well, I would not go there. But really, you know, you want to do everything you can to make that relationship work and that's what it takes. Of course, I have a staff team to support me, but in essence, there's one of me and five of you and I think all of you respect that in trying to balance, because each one of you have your own personalities and your own needs. And to Carol's point, that means sometimes I'm spending time with one of you more than I might another just for the mere fact that there's maybe a lot more going on, for example, in Old Town in Joe's district than there might be in Nathan's district in Leisure World. And so I think that's, you know, really important. Also, I think working together to see really the big picture. And, you know, each of you has a district perspective, you also have a citywide perspective. And I think we have, there's a lot of benefit of us working together to see that big picture because we all want what's best for our community at the end of the day. That's why we're here. I think, you know, acknowledging, and I know we go back to talking about, you know, when there's, you're going to hear things in the public, whether it's about complaints about me as a city manager or about department heads and giving me the benefit of the doubt. Give me a, and sometimes, you know, there's a discussion that's to be had with the department head or a department head discussion with a staff member because, you know, we're not perfect. None of us are and we fall short on things. And those are discussions for me to have those conversations, either with you to have that conversation with me privately or for me to have a conversation with a department head or staff member privately because there's an opportunity, lessons for lessons learned and for professional development. And I want to have, you know, the benefit of the doubt, to have that conversation with you privately versus having you bring up a concern or a complaint publicly. I don't think either one of us benefits from that. All of you have been very good and Carol already talked at length about this, it's about no surprises. I work really hard and on behalf of my team as well to make sure, because I want you to be successful. We all want you to be successful and so we don't want you to have any surprises as much as we possibly can support that. At the same time, we want to make sure that we're not getting surprised by anything, especially publicly. Because to Carol's point, I mean, we want our meetings to be successful. We have the city's business to get done. But no one wins when we're being caught off guard. And we've had circumstances from previous council members in the past and it's just not, it's just not effective and it's not efficient and it's not a good use of our time when we're all here on behalf of the city. Not undermining me, I've never had an issue with this particularly, but not undermining me as a city manager through any of the staff team, I think is significantly important. And we talked about the awesomeness factor and understanding that by the mere fact that you're elected council members, that carries a significant amount of weight with it. So just by you even commenting to a staff member about something, they want to please. We're all here because we want to please you, we want you to be successful and we want this community to thrive and to move forward. And just keeping that in mind as you're having those conversations. And I think just, again, you know, we facilitating my annual review, performance review process because that's an opportunity for us to sit and have these types of conversations. And, you know, like I said, we're not, none of us are perfect and there's always opportunity for growth and development. And again, I can't say enough about your ongoing commitment to this process. And this process today drives our work plan. You being engaged, you being vocal about what's important to you is so important and our team will be here shortly to hear that as well. This really, in terms of even our budget development process, this is what drives our plan and makes sure that we're a cohesive collaborative group and we're all working together for the same goal. And so I think that from my perspective, and to continue to do what we're doing and your continued commitment as council members to meet with me on a regular basis and to have those discussions and to be able to continue to build that trust is what's most important. Carol, did I leave anything out?
I don't think so. Wow, that was really good. I think the other thing you got to remember is, there are very few other positions on the plan. You have five bosses. To have to make five individuals to work, you know, to understand how all five of you are feeling at any given time and that ability to count to three, right? Every city manager I've ever met has always got three in the back of their head. Do I got two mad at me or do I got three mad at me? How many do I got mad at me right now? Because there's some issue that's going on that the city manager is being blamed for for whatever reason. So I think that's important. The other thing is, she's got five bosses, she's got a bunch of department heads and she's got an entire city staff and organization here. And so balancing all of that is like on a table. And she's always trying to figure out who needs her time the most. So, and what's the most emerging issue? So, and that changes on a day-to-day basis. And one thing about being a city manager is, you go in to the office with your list of things to do and you're in there ten minutes and it blows it, right? And you got to reprioritize and re-figure it out. So I think you guys are all doing a great job. And we don't say this to all councils, we only say this to councils that it's actually working for. Because most councils, in my experience, have some degree of dysfunction. And you'll have some degree of dysfunction at some point, but you've set the framework to work through that dysfunction and to work together to make sure you make the city do the best they can. So this is just kind of all... Last thing to remember as we talk about teamwork. You guys all want the best for the city, that's your unity of purpose. What is the best for the city? You all understand what your role is, what your lane is. You've established a really positive governance structure. You have civility rules, you have ways that people are supposed to treat each other, you know? And Mr. Mayor, I want to put this on you, right? How councilly you run and how walk this the public get sometimes, that's in your control, right? You could just say, that's not appropriate language, that's not how we handle ourselves here, you know? And that needs to happen sometimes in many organizations because somebody is really mad about something. And they're going to be out there and they're going to start cursing and swearing and all of that. And when they do, you got to time out, right? And that, you're setting the bar for the public as well. And how you react to that sets the bar for the public. So they know they can't come in and just, you know, act like... They can say whatever they want respectfully, but they can't act inappropriately. And it's your job to tame that if it needs to be tamed. You have norms, protocols and policies, those are doing a great job. I think this is a model city and I think you guys can go on the road about how to be in districts effectively with those new cities, right? When you're talking to your colleagues that are city council members. You know, this is how we work and this is how it works for us. So I think that's a really good thing. I am now going to give it back to Rick.
And we have one more section to go through, about four more slides and then we'll be ready for a break. Yes, so just want to let you know, we're in the red zone. So you've got the councils, what makes them work well?
We just talked about that.
The purpose.
Go to the next slide.
The role, but it's also the norms.
Ah, there you go.
So we wanted to talk about the norms too. That's the last section that we're going to talk about before we go into the break is norms. Basically, you know, norms are agreed upon standards of behavior, of conduct. To be effective, councils, they have a list of established norms. You have a list of what you call rules of measures. They were adopted back in 2014. And there's ten areas in that section. Basically, how do you act during council meetings? You talk about decorum, you talk about how you limit public remarks to the public comment section. Mayor calls upon members of the public during each one of the agenda items. You talk about how you respond to members of the public, how you refrain from making, you know, personal attacks on other members of the public. Talk about the enforcement of the decorum. One of the things we wanted to talk to you about also is what are some typical norms that other cities have and that they have adopted? And I wanted just to bring those to your attention from a city's perspective. Number of us, the very first one deals with districts. And this has come out of how cities deal with districts, how do they want to deal with the districts? Well, you've been dealing with districts for a number of years. Some cities have said they want to maintain a citywide perspective while being mindful of the districts that they respond. They want to move from I to we. As new council members, it's always, I want to do this, I want to do that. Now it's a we, we need to do this, we need to take this responsibility on. Working together as policymakers, dealing with teamwork, that's why we're here today. Assuming everyone has good intent, take a look at your long-range plans that provide the big picture items. When you deal with CIP matters, capital improvement projects, do those... Do those affect your long-range forecasts? Do they deal with where you want to be fifteen, twenty years from now? You need to take that into consideration when you take a look at things such as your capital improvement programs. Stay focused on the issue at hand. Some councils have an issue in which one or two council members they like to go off on tangents and they speak for fifteen, twenty, twenty-five minutes, they come back to the same matter again. That puts obligation on the mayor, you know, try to bring council members in from that perspective during council meetings. You know, you've already talked about the respect issue, avoid no surprises, that goes on both sides. You've talked about the council member form of government, you know, respect the roles that everybody plays. And then the last one was, you know, communicating concerns directly with the city manager. You know, don't criticize staff and public, gets back to what I mentioned early on. You have future applicants that want to apply for the city. They're going to look at council meetings and if they see that you're grilling your planning director, your community development director because you don't like an item, you're criticizing them in public, there's ways of doing that from a professional perspective. Because you have other people watching that may want to work for the city of Seal Beach, so... Regarding any of these, you know, or any of these examples that you see that would be good to have implemented here in Seal Beach? Any thoughts?
I like all of them.
You like them all? Is there a desire on the city to maybe work with staff to try to codify these, put them in your rules of decorum in some manner?
How do these compare to what we have?
What you have are these that talk about primarily how council engages when they're on the dais during council meetings. They're pretty much guidelines, you know, as far as procedural. Have you take a look at those for a minute? And then those are the ones that some other cities have identified. Number ten, I kind of glossed over that one. That's an important one from a city attorney's perspective. Keep items confidential, confidential, especially when you're dealing with closed session. You know, it's like Vegas, what happens in closed session stays in closed session. You don't talk about it outside of that room from that perspective.
They all look fine to me as well.
You look... Okay.
Yeah, I think before, the rules of decorum were specifically about how the meetings were ran and I think just from a perspective in terms of timing, maybe at a time when the meetings weren't quite as effective and efficient because of disagreements amongst council members and staff. And so we've come a long way since then. I think these typical council norms that you've brought to us and are recommending has to do also with how you conduct yourselves and how you can be successful in working together with staff. And from my perspective, I think we're sending a strong message to the community if this was an adopted... You know, we brought it before council, if that's the consensus of the council, it sends a strong message to the community about why we are successful as a council working together and alongside staff and what that does for our community. So that would be my perspective on why it would be important, just memorializing it publicly.
Also, to address Shelley's point, you have the civility principles that Gloria mentioned early on. Those deal with two items. Number five, disagree agreeably and professionally. And then also number eight, demonstrate respect, consideration and courtesy to our people. So those two are the only ones that you would really have codified from a documentation perspective. The other ones would be new from that perspective. They may be common sense, they may be how you practice, but it's not written down anyplace that we could find.
We have consensus to go forward with that?
Have consensus, okay. Is there anything missing that you'd like to see up there?
The other thing you're doing is you're setting the bar for future councils. You know, and so when people want to run, when you have vacated your seat and you're no longer running, you know, this is the standard that they're going to walk into. This is where the bar, this is how you're going to set it. You're not going to have to tell people how to act, it's already written down.
Yeah, and Carol brings up an excellent point. These are working fine now, but they can change one election cycle down the road. And you may have somebody... I dealt with a council member in another city council in Southern California and we went through a council workshop and her primary intent was to disrupt local government. She ran on the platform of being an obstructionist. And so every time that they dealt with an issue, she was opposed to the issue just for the sake of being opposed to it. And it created a number of key challenges for the city. They wish they had something like this, you know, identified and adopted years prior so they can bring it to their attention to try to get some type of cooperation, but it was unsuccessful from that perspective. So I think from consensus, we look like we're in agreement on that. So I basically asked, you know, what examples, you know, what would you like as far as set of adopted norms? Didn't see anything missing? What about protocols regarding districts?
Well, yeah, as you mentioned, for future councils, you know, if you have a turnover of the maximum number of people in any given cycle, there may not be an understanding about the fact that we are representing districts as well as the entire city in our role. You know, I constantly had to respond to residents by saying, I'm one-fifth of the decision-making that's going on here, thinking they think that if they contacted me that, you know, I'm in charge. And that by the same token, that the council members in the future understand that they are representing... And that, that by the same token, that the council members in the future understand that they are representing, that we, we do represent districts. And, and all of the back and forth that should be addressed in that situation of letting the other, letting the district member that has an issue know if you have an idea or something that, you know, that might improve that situation or help make a decision that's going to be affecting another district's business, that there's a protocol for keeping that information open.
So is that, is that a common practice or is that, is that a written protocol? Or a common courtesy?
Well, I think in this case, it goes beyond.
Yeah, it used to be a common courtesy.
Yeah, I mean, well, and it should be ongoing. But again, you know, and I didn't think about that until you brought it up. That we could be all going here and you get a group of five people that are working independently in their mind. Then you're actually not representing districts anymore.
So that's one, that's one thing that Carol put on the, on the bike rack for Jill to follow up with her staff on is maybe come up with some common courtesy protocols as far as district representation is concerned. So everyone knows and every future council knows where they, you know, what their roles are from a district perspective. If, if someone out of, outside of your district contacts you, you respond back to them, but as a courtesy, you let the other council member in that district know you're contacted. You should refer to them, let, let the city manager know that you have that contact as well too. So she's aware as to the, the interaction that's going on. Okay, well, great.
There, there used to be, there used to be kind of a policy that whoever represented the district knew the district and had, you know, some, there was some difference to that. I, I, I recognize in here too where this second, the second section we went through where it said, recognize you are now different than when you were elected. And, and, and I, I recognize that too, because when you're campaigning, you know, you say all sorts of things, but once you become elected, you're, you, you're part of the city. You have to follow the city charter, the, the constitution of the state and, and Brown Act and various other things. And so you have to act a little differently, but you still, you are part of the city, but you still represent your district. And I, I wouldn't want to see anything that says, well, you can't, can't speak to your district or whatever, because you still represent those residents. And, and I, I wouldn't want to have, you know, your ability to speak be cut forward because, you know, you're one person. I think you should still be able to speak to your district.
Yes. Okay.
I had that issue come up with one of Shelley's constituents. He had an ongoing, well, he made, seemed to me like it was a new problem and nobody was getting back to him. And so, you know, I told him that Shelley was his, you know, councilperson. And so then I informed Jill and then I passed that on to Shelley. But come to find out, they'd been dealing with this guy for a while. And, you know, he made it seem like, you know, nobody was listening to him, so.
Yeah, it, it's the fresh bite of the apple syndrome. Whenever a council member. For you, for you Nathan, whenever a council member newly elected, you're going to hear people coming towards you with their issues to try to find out if you have an ear and you're receptive to them, because they've been dealing with that issue for a number of years and no one's been receptive to them. So they're going to, they're going to come at you again. So it's always good to reach out like you did, you know, to other council members and, and city manager, letting them know that they have council contacts and representatives. Question for Mr. Mayor, you know, before we conclude with this section, is, is there anything from a council norm perspective that your colleagues can do that would make your life a lot easier? From a mayor running a meeting perspective?
I think they're already do that for the most part. So I, I think just waiting to like call on them for a comment or something. I heard in the meeting would be, that's all I could think about. I think everyone's very respectful here, so I don't see an issue with that.
Well, great. So then this is the summary slide and this is the commitment slide. The slide is the only thing stopping before a break right now, so. Can we agree on the norms and protocols that we would all adhere to from a consensus standpoint? Agree to respect each other's roles and responsibilities? Each person shall contribute to the care and feeding of the partnership. That's something that Jill talked about a little while ago. You need to work on your relationships. You need to work on building that trust. And you need to work on, on getting the, the training by way of either the JPIA or Cal, California Cities to, to, to get more knowledge. And then also respect the chain and, and use the established process. Is that, is this something that we can get, get a consensus on? I see some heads being nodded. Yes, yes, okay. Well, great. At that time, I think, I think we have a break for about 15 minutes. And I think the department heads are here to join us.
Oh, I heard them out there.
While, while we're waiting for Joe to come back, for those of you that just joined us, the department heads, my name is Rick Hayden. I'm from Baker Tilly. I, I know some of you. This is my colleague Carol Jacobs, also from Baker Tilly. We're both former city managers, been with Baker Tilly for a while now. Baker Tilly used to be called Management Partners. Excuse me. We were from Management Partners. And back in October of 2022, Baker Tilly was acquired Management Partners. And about 85 of us came over to the firm of Baker Tilly. They're one of the, the largest public sector advisory firms in the nation. There's over 4,500 advisors that they have nationwide. About 200 of us are dealing specifically with local government, like what we're doing today. So Carol and I don't know everyone, because I know we have a couple of new department heads around the table. So for, for our benefit, would we mind going around and introducing yourselves? And that way we know which department you're with and certainly.
Sure, thank you, Rick. Good morning, everyone. My name is Patrick Aguilas. I'm the Assistant City Manager.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Michael Henderson and I'm the Chief of Police.
Good morning, I'm Joe Bailey. I'm the Marine Safety Chief.
Good morning, Idris Lee, Public Works Director.
Alexis Smith, Community Development and Community Services.
Good morning, I'm Barbara Arnato, Finance Director.
Good morning again.
Great, well, thank, thank you very much. So for those of you that just joined us, what we talked about earlier this morning, we developed a, an exercise for council members to get to know each other a little bit and also executive staff, to find out what they had in common. Then we transitioned over to a discussion on role clarification. Clarification as to city council, what their role is as policymakers. And then city staff and primarily the city manager in being the execution of the policy that council adopts. And then we talked a little bit about norms and protocols. And council had a, a good discussion and came to consensus that we provided them some norms that other cities use. And by consensus, they decided to adopt those as far as their, their procedures as well too. So at the end of the day, we'll be providing a council summary report on this, today's workshop. And then from that, it'll go to the city council. And then part of that will have what the, the protocols and the norms are as well too. So you'll, you'll see what those are. This part of the afternoon session is going to be talking about accomplishments. What the city has been able to accomplish this last year. Some of the challenges that the city sees as far as facing going forward from here. We'll have a presentation from Barbara on the budget. So you have an idea from a financial standpoint where the city is and identify some key budget dates that are going to be coming up in, in the months to come. And then after that, we're going to go through the priority session dealing with the status on the priorities that you accomplished or you identified last year and what the status of those are. And then also going forward, what your priorities will be from the city's perspective in 23, 24. Our goal today would be to wrap up around noon. I have fluid on my mind right now. Around noon is when we're going to be having lunch right now. And then the idea is to wrap up around three o'clock today. So with that, Carol and I met with your city council prior to today's workshop. We had individual one-on-one meetings with the city council. And one of the questions we asked them was, what do you feel are some of the accomplishments that the city has had over the last year? And I'll let you take a look at, at these. We won't go over too individually on any of them, but I'll, I'll just have you take a minute to, to look through those. And I'll open it up to, to council. Do you have any clarifications on, on any of these as far as accomplishments are concerned? Or from your perspective, did we miss anything that we should have, have put on there? I got a burp. Having, having heard that, I'll turn it over to, to Jill.
Yeah, I, I will just add, I was thoroughly impressed with the amount of accomplishments and the depth of them that you, all five of you, especially individually captured in your interviews with Rick and Carol. One thing I will want to say is I've encouraged my team to be engaged and participate actively in the discussion for the rest of the afternoon. And this is only typically twice per year, that we, we have the ability as a group, the entire management team along with the five of you and our city attorney, to sit together and have these types of discussions without being bound specifically on specific agenda items. So I would just encourage everyone to, you know, engage and really, ultimately, all of us together are going to benefit from this. So we're looking forward to the open dialogue. So we didn't have a whole lot to add in terms of accomplishments. And I know one of the things we try to focus on and we're not, we need to do a better job of is we're so busy that we don't take the time to actually celebrate the things that we've accomplished. So when you're sitting down trying to think about those things, especially when we somewhat had an idea or council without, we really had to think through some of these. Something that, so we have a few items to add about. One of those, which you will hear a little bit about is we began building a five-year projected citywide unfunded needs assessment. So of course, we have all of our planning documents in terms of storm drain needs and our capital improvement needs, but to really sit down and I want to commend our staff team for the work that they've done with Barbara to get to a point where we've been able to project out five years and what our department head needs are individually in order to continue to carry the city forward. And of course, there's a significant dollar amount that's attached to that. We've talked about this before, but I think it bears repeating because of how closely our staff team worked at a regional level to advocate for the sand replenishment project that will benefit Riverside. I think unfortunately, when it gets discussed publicly, especially in local news outlets, it's like, you know, the sand replenishment needs countywide stops at Huntington Beach and doesn't come any further north to Seal Beach. And we're a significant part of, of that effort, as all of you know. But I think that bears repeating, as I mentioned, because I think we're, we're getting close to the finish line in terms of getting this project funded. It's significantly overdue. Implementing comprehensive technology-based parking program improvements to ensure compliance, parking equity and access. And we'll talk a little bit more about that, but we really need to highlight that. I mean, parking management in and of itself has been a 10-year-plus discussion with our staff team and with council and with the support of a team that has the expertise and the knowledge and the experience to be able to guide us through this process. Securing Orange County Water District rebate, a million-dollar rebate for the Lambs and Well Treatment System. We've increased our senior shuttle ridership, over 1,000 riders since pandemic, which is really significant in terms of our outreach and getting seniors to take advantage of brief transportation. In partnership with the county, all of you know, we were able, and I'm Joe Kelmick, was primarily responsible this, working with alongside our Marine Safety Chief, Joe Bailey, in funding wheelchair-accessible beach mats to allow ADA access to our shoreline, both on the Eighth Street Lot and the 10th Street Lot and others that may not be ADA accessible, but it just makes it easier for them to get to the beach. And then something that we're working on right now is we were able to secure through Alexis' leadership, additional CBPG funding to be able to fund those bathroom rehab projects what traditionally has been targeted to leisure world, but to our city, our community as a whole. And we're still working on those outreach efforts. So those are some of the ones, additional ones that we wanted to identify as, as accomplishments, especially over the last six months.
Any, any comments, clarifications from, from council on any of those nine additional items?
Just say thank you for all that you've done. We've accomplished a lot.
We're going to get into the ability of staff being able to accomplish a lot a little bit later on before we get into the priority session. But bandwidth is an issue. And, and the ability of, of council to acknowledge the bandwidth that staff has to make this list of accomplishments is pretty remarkable from that perspective. The reason why is because you have a lot of challenges. And there's a lot of challenges that council indicated in our interviews that we had with them. The ones that you see up in front of you, seven of them, these were mentioned by more than one city council member. I thought you would bring to everyone's attention. Housing element is a challenge. I, I would say that three quarters of the cities that I've been working with this last year during goal-setting sessions, this is their number one issue that they're dealing with right now, is, is the housing element from that perspective.
If I could just add real quick, you know, I mean, it's like, I, I know I feel this way and I'm sure other team members here do too, that we don't have more things on that accomplishment list. But that's not to say that we aren't having small wins and progress along the way on, on all of these things, because, because they are outsized, you know, they're, it's not, it's not these little tiny things that we can just check a box. They are giant, multiple factors, multiple people involved, you know, multiple efforts to, to really things forward. You know, we've, we've all talked about the housing element. It's not just the housing element, it's the housing element work plan that comes with it. So, you know, these, these are, all of these are very, very large things. And, you know, we're, I know that we're, we've been very excited to be here today and just start talking with you all about how, how they continue to work through all of these. Sorry, thanks.
The housing element by, by itself is a major priority and, and it consumes a lot of staff time. Just the various elements of, of getting, getting it to something that could be submitted for consideration. Inflation and, and cost of living is impacting not only from a RFP perspective, request for proposals, but request for quotes, even from contractors, bids that normally city would set aside, anticipate a project coming in around 25,000, it's now coming in at 35, 40,000, exceeding the budget, having staff to regroup before they bring it back to council for consideration. Where are we going to get the money to fund some of these things? Staffing challenges, you know, again, coming out of the pandemic, your human resources is dealing with staffing challenges as far as recruitment, retention of employees. Adding additional projects may overburden staff. Again, it's, it's a, a note from council saying, we acknowledge that staff has, only has so much bandwidth. And, and so we need to be conscious of that when we identify the projects we really want them to prioritize on. Flooding, you know, like almost every city right now, in California is having to deal with flooding issues in various sections of town. Storm drains, dealing with those issues. The multimillion dollar problem. issues, the multimillion-dollar problem that you're dealing with, you know, trying to resolve the flooding issue. Public safety officers out on entries, the Old Ranch Country Club project. And then these are some additional challenges that we heard during our interview on the short-term record, requiring more staff time to administer, transitioning animal control in-house, it's been challenging, the physical sustainability, which we're going to be talking about in a few minutes. Unfunded mandates are a concern, discussion regarding the parking management on Main Street, and then finding contractors that are available to work. Anything that, from a council's perspective, that you'd like to add on that? Is that enough? Well, it's not enough because we can't help with some more. So Jill, if you want to talk a little bit about those?
Yeah, so I think, you know, obviously, moving forward, Alex already touched on this a little bit, but just our staff team being able to meet your expectations and community expectations, and we're trying to deal with, you know, the staff load that we have. We've been so successful at being lean, it's encouraging to me to see that the staff when, or the council, when you were having discussions with Rick and Carol, that you identified staffing as a challenge. And it is, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. As a result, I think of the workload and some other issues, seeing an increase in our workers' compensation claims from employees, and to make matters even a little bit more challenging, is the fact that our third-party administrators having staffing challenges. So having the ability for them to be able to manage the workers' compensation claims in order for us to get some sort of resolution on behalf of our employees, and that's also making, you know, putting a lot of pressure and overburdening the staff that we do have that's present. Barb will talk a little bit more about it, but of course, high inflation, it's affecting everything that we do, from project costs to services, even getting with RFPs, getting contractors that have the ability and staffing to be able to propose and respond to RFPs, and of course, making labor negotiations even more challenging. Talked a little bit about we've got upcoming negotiations with our POA, Police Management Association, some changes in SBTV3 that will, is required, it's going to require a discussion about short-term and long-term solutions in terms of how that operation's managed. And then also just as you all obviously identify, was unfunded mandates, it just continues to add and compound in terms of staff's workload. And again, with an already lean staffing model and then workers' compensation, it's adding a challenge on top of that.
Questions for staff? Clarifications, and yeah, something such as matter actually.
Yes, I have the list of unfunded mandates.
We're going to go over it. Alex said, you want to, I think for the public's benefit, I mean, it just would be, it would be helpful to throw it out there so that it's evident what we're dealing with.
Yeah, again, you all know, housing element, housing element work plan. Four other general plan elements, safety, environmental justice, circulation, open space elements, all have to be updated. Ordinants and programs to address, increased permit streamlining, so permit streamlining has been, that's been legislation for many years now, and every year it tightens up a little bit more, we have to do something a little bit faster, we have to ignore certain pieces, we have to permit things whether we want to or not. Post-entitlement packages, we have to put together all these things that need to appear on our website, what you need to qualify as a complete package, and there's a lot of details in there, but again, not rocket science, but it's someone that has to sit and put together five different packages of examples. ADU is lots, let's know all of that. Objective development standards, we don't have those, that's part of the Permit Streamlining Act, someone can come in, propose housing development, for example, we can only judge them on objective standards, but we don't have those in our program. Short-term rentals, as you know, that came through, you know, that came through court, that's not even legislation, so things can come at us from multiple directions. The local coastal plan and sea level rise planning, this is, we've got to do this, we're going to have to continue to do this, sea level rise is going to start impacting us in very, very real ways, particularly in community development. We've heard some things from coastal commission, we don't know how we're going to deal with it yet, and that involves public works as well. 100% online permitting, so no touch, no human interaction, in particular when it comes to solar permitting, completely automated by law by September of next year. Housing inspection services, I didn't even know this was coming, but if someone calls and wants their housing unit inspected, we need to provide that service. We don't have staff that's qualified to do some of these inspections, in fact, neither does the county, it's fascinating stuff. Training and safety programs for COVID enforcement offices, that was legislation from last year either, but we're working on it, we're not there yet, and this is, it's every year, every year there's a new round of stuff. And every year, what the legislation says is that this is not an unfunded mandate because you can charge fees for it. So all of these things, the state is just saying, oh, just charge fees, just charge fees, not for your housing, they can't charge you for housing, they want us to get rid of those. It's a constant struggle of balancing these very interesting pieces, but I'm happy to go into depth on another time with all.
She's smiling, but I promise you, she doesn't smile when we're talking.
I mostly cry.
If I can, because I know a lot of us have these unfunded mandates, I know for sure police reform has a ton of them as well, but I want to point out two, SB 1383, ADU 1826, those are dealing with green organics, the waste recycling, as well as carbon reduction in the state. Now, the thing that's not on there, and it's kind of new-ish, is the state's clawback. So they provided grants for some of these, and now they're trying to return that money back to the state because they're facing some fiscal issues at the state house. So that's something to think about as we, you know, contend with all these unfunded mandates, that there is going to be some clawback from the state, particularly with a lot of these funded, you just mentioned some of the ones that you're dealing with, and of course, the organic recycling mandates that are by our system.
From a police perspective, when the state, police reform is a topic on the state level, it has been for a couple of years and will continue to be, and as a result, new legislation is enacted that brings forth a lot of the time new training mandates, which is fine, we want the highest trained police officers we can find, but often it is not accompanied by a funding component to that. So if the state imposes a training requirement for police officers to say, go to crowd control training, I no longer have the discretion to say, we'll do it at this time under these circumstances. The state is imposing a mandate of, say, a certain amount of hours, well, I'm now taking away from something else to pay for that, for that training. It's valuable, I'm not saying it's not something we should do, but there's very rarely a funding component that comes along with those mandates, and as a result, other things suffer. And then police department, we're primarily personnel-driven, so that means I'm taking personnel and manpower away from something else to give to whatever that mandate is.
I guess from a public work standpoint, there is no shortage of unfunded mandates either, so I don't want to go over everything as well, but just want to list a couple just so for everybody's awareness. Electric vehicle vehicles, this is, California is going towards zero emission vehicles, this is something that the city needs to implement as well, and how are we going to plan for the future? EPA, keep loss, everybody here look for our chemical already, so how are we going to be reporting testing and making sure that we have a good potable water for our constituents to consume? Reporting for sewer, the water board is, and the skateboard has been increasingly compounding our audit requirements. There are going to be, we're preparing our annual audit, we're now a new element for sewer response plans, those are just, this is about the iceberg, and not to mention that there are a number of master plan documents that we have that we need to tip away at it because we do have aging infrastructure. So that's just a little bit of taste of it, so that I just want to introduce as well.
I'm going to take over from there. Thanks, guys. Just to touch on this and with what I'm going to show in the next couple of slides, just going to reiterate, I think, a little bit about what everybody's saying. Before you is the five-year outlook, and this year, city departments built a five-year forecast at the line level. That means they went to staff, they talked to their staff members at the facilities. They worked closely with departments over the five-year for revenue and expenditure assumptions, and these early estimates were showing that we're growing revenue over the next five years at approximately 2%, but our expenditures are growing at 5.7%. On the left is a graph showing about a $3 million gap. And what the departments just mentioned right here is as they're out there, looking at their budgets, looking at council mandate and state mandates and other mandates, that's where they're looking at in their budgets, and that's where they're looking at how to balance.
I can't tell what the key is on the, what the graph is, but what the.
That is our general fund, and the dotted red line, the dotted line, I made it red just in case we couldn't see it, is expenditures, and the blue line is revenues. Yes, and you can see, you know, in the past, over the last few years, we have come in high on revenues, we were robust, but now as we look forward in the future, we are dialing back. Expenditures are outpacing revenues. It's been three years since we've been in COVID, and those COVID, historically, we look at our historical numbers to figure out our budget and plan for our budget, and those numbers are skewed because the COVID numbers really, really change, and that analysis, so it's really difficult to budget right now. We're in a highly volatile environment, and most economists are projecting a recession in the near future, but it's a larger percentage than not. We are already seeing decelerating growth in the economy, especially in sales tax, and while the Fed has raised the interest rates nine times, and it's anticipated it's going to continue to do so. On the revenue side, on the positive side, property tax is anticipated to grow due to that 7.1% assessed valuation that we saw in 2022, which is good news. On the negative side, we're already seeing sales tax reductions in sales tax. Finance staff is meeting with our consultant this month, and we are already anticipating that they're going to be pulling back on their projections. Mostly consumer goods, which is imperil and home furnishings, but that's 31% of our sales tax, so when you start to see a pullback on, that's a big hit to the city. Transient occupancy tax, or Luntel tax, is anticipated to come back to pre-pandemic levels, and users' tax is also as well coming back to pre-pandemic levels, which is good news as businesses and offices and everyone's opening back up. Franchise fees remains flat, and business license remains flat, it hasn't changed, the fee hasn't changed since 2016, when we went from $216 to $219. On the expenditure side, so we're going to reiterate a little bit of what our executive team had just discussed, rising costs for services and programs, increasing demands, aging infrastructure, and multiple unfunded mandates results in increasing pressure on the budget. As Director Sandoz just mentioned, all those mandates, I was going to list some of them here, but I won't reiterate, but finance did a study, and that the new and ongoing mandates continue to squeeze staff. Councilmember, are you okay?
We're sorry, Tyler was blocking his filter.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. I thought you went in.
He's fine.
We want you to see it.
We want you to see it.
Feel it.
Feel it.
And I guess, it's really squeezing staff's ability with the short amount of staff that we had. Finance did a review on CD staffing alone, and the levels have not changed since 2013, except to get an executive assistant. Their workload has substantially increased in the last 10 years, and this is just an example of one department and additional workload. CJPIA for workers' comp and insurance is anticipated to increase 6.4%. OCFA is increasing 2% this year, but with the recently completed negotiations, and Councilmember Calmit knows this, we know they're going to increase 4.5% next year. We have the fire station bond, the last payment is in 2023, 24. Salaries and benefits are increasing, inflation on the cost of healthcare continues to increase. Minimum wage increases are mandated by the state, so each year we have to increase those in our budget. Building maintenance contracts costs are increasing, and many needs are being deferred. We are utilizing fund balance to fund necessary capital projects. And this year, city staff in partnership with the guidance of the city manager began a five-year projected citywide unfunded needs assessment. These needs do not have a regular source of funding. The UNA is created by city staff throughout the organization. Stafford asks what they see as service needs at their specific areas that meet council priorities and continued service demands. Nearly 250 million was brought forward, 220 in critical infrastructure, and another 30 million in unmet needs across the city. The city has more needs than we can find. A few, and I can pass down support me on some of these if you have any questions, a few of the unfunded CIPs are storm rain improvements, account for Old Town, Marina Drive, CPE, West upgrades, parks, a park and community services master plan was conducted in 2013 and provided a list of opportunity constraints and recommendations to account for overall park improvements. Facilities, the city's conducted a facilities condition assessment in 2011, that IDed a number of structural and operational deficiencies. The needs, of course, have compounded since those 20 years have elapsed. It's more expensive now to fix those deferred costs. The lifeguard headquarters and the police department, I think public works can note on this, that it is arguably the worst condition in the city in the entire assessment.
PD or?
The lifeguard headquarters, lifeguard headquarters towers, it's a PD substation as well. Unfunded in operations is aging fleet, sand replenishment, labor and material costs are escalating, fuel costs, the Buy America, Build America regulations that have been put in place. Let's take a pause, let's take a look at next steps. As we talk about all these, the revenue gap, departments are looking at that, and it's happening now. Departments are balancing the budget, and they're identifying essential services, because that's the priority, to continue our essential services. Prioritizing capital projects, maintaining adequate reserves, and engaging in long-term planning, looking at the city holistically over the next five years, and where we're going to utilize those funds. Next steps is this discussion at the May 2nd, and while I think the dates have changed, or may potentially change, but the budget workshops that will be coming forward, and then the budget adoption in late May.
And May 2nd, well, it's confirmed, but there's a couple of council members that have a conflict on Thursday, May 4th because of an event that we've already, that we've recommended that they go to, and we don't want them to miss out on that opportunity, so we'll look at rescheduling, potentially sometime earlier that week, so that we can get.
Didn't know what it was.
We will try to figure out what the important is.
All right, we wanted to bring this early to begin the discussion and to start that conversation. I know budgeting is a big process, it's a year-long process, departments are working with our team on it daily, but one unfunded, or funded area that has not, unallocated funding source that hasn't been brought back to discussion is the 3.1 million. In October 22nd, the city council set aside 3.1 million in savings from the ARPA with the City Outfalls and Revitalization Plan Fund, because they're no longer in line, they're savings from ARPA. Staff, at some point, will seek guidance and balance, put together the four proposals that we have for you. Proposal one includes focusing dollars on critical unfunded one-time items throughout the city, including 250,000 in additional discretionary payments to Calpers for the active fire safety plan. If we were to allocate 250,000, that's about a $90,000 savings in reduced cost. 400,000 fiber connectivity line for the lifeguard tower, currently, there is no direct connectivity on a consistent basis to the lifeguard headquarters tower. 700,000 set aside for the West End pump station, 350,000 for fleet, currently, the city is on leasing program. Public works and finance staff are working on a feasibility study right now to program the analysis for the upcoming fiscal year, to see if that is a continued feasibility to be in it on our leasing plan. And 150,000 for the OCT UCU grant, and staff will return it, budget it with additional priorities as directed at another time. Proposal two, because there's still remaining funds in that proposal one for council discretion. Proposal two is the city pool. Currently, there's 4.4 million set aside for the pool. With the 3.1 million, we would still need an additional 11.5 million to fund the pool at pool capacity. Proposal three is lifeguard headquarters, police substation, as mentioned earlier, it's one of our most needed facilities. We could set up a place that we reserve and put that 3.1 million in there, the replacement costs. The replacement costs at this time is projected to be approximately eleven million. Proposal four, and something I actually recommend at this moment, it, we're in a volatile environment. We don't know, is a recession coming, how deep is it, what, what do we see, is it a soft landing? In setting aside that full amount and revisiting this at a later time.
Soft landing in terms of the economy.
Economy, right. We, we, we don't, we, we're having a tough time forecasting, you know. Historically, we may, we were able to use historic numbers. And as we move forward, the COVID projections and then possible recession and then infusions of money coming into the environment, there's lots of, of issues out there that are volatile. The, the banking situation, increased, you know, federal rates continue to impact our observations. And we're, our analysis is changing. You know, we used to be able to budget and then we would can plan ahead and move forward, but our budgeting numbers are changing weekly, monthly, they're, they're changing faster than normal. Would that, if there's not any questions?
When we set money aside, like we've set the pool money aside, is there a way that we can put it into? I mean, for years, there's been no interest anyway, but now that interest rates have risen a little bit, is there any way we can get interest on money that's?
We do have our interest on our, on our accounts and we are restricted by law.
I know, late ones, yes, but it is. Listen, it's something that.
It has gone a, it has, it's nice to see. I think with everybody else's interest in cash, our lake has increased and so has our portfolio. Um, it's, but they're, you know, we're restricted on where we can put that to build that savings.
Um, so a city pool, we have three point one million sitting there, it's already been set aside, that's sitting there, correct?
Four point four million is sitting.
Four point four million, okay. And yeah, to build that pool, we project another eleven and a half million dollars?
About eighteen or nineteen million.
For a city pool?
There's diff, yes, sir, there's different levels. Um, I, you want to touch on the three proposals of, to pool?
Certainly, um, so we came with a, a couple of concept plans and work internally with the ad hoc committee, found, um, uh, option that was, um, most suitable for a programmaticic needs over in McGaw Elementary School that roughly came in about between eighteen and nineteen million dollars, uh, depending on, um, extra amenities or accommodations that are needed to make that site work, um, based on public input or, um, LA, Los Alamos unified social needs.
Leisure roll, we just built a new pool. Do you have any idea how much their pool project cost?
I don't know off the top of my head.
It might be a, a relative comparison, don't know.
Um, there are usually some differences. Of course, um, being a city project, we do have to pay different wages. So that does add a big thirty percent on top of, um, any other, uh, construction costs that others might encounter. And I do want to stress that construction cost is really volatile as well, similar, similar to what Director Armada said, and I'm sure you're very familiar with it, but I was just reading the, uh, E and R engineering news record a couple of weeks ago. They released their, uh, twenty twenty-three Q one report.
E and R?
Uh, engineering, uh, news record, E and R. Um, kind of like a construction cost, uh, index as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Councilmember Stili, additionally, also have to remember, we, we need to build all the infrastructure. So it's not just the pool, it's the bathrooms, it's the locker rooms. Like all those things, according to the laws, where they're at now with pool construction, need to be built because we don't have suitable facilities there right now.
It just, it seems extraordinary to me, like a pool, quote, quote, can be fifteen million dollars, so.
The, the cost, as we speak, the costs are going up.
Yeah. So if we delay, it should be fine, but it's.
Because I think we even started at.
Nine or ten.
Yeah. I mean, when we decided that we're not dealing with the Navy, we're now dealing with McGaw and if we do this and we had, you know, some presentations of what this new facility would look like.
Yeah.
And it was in that order of maybe.
And forgive me if I say these things wrong, I appreciate the work that you put into all of this stuff. And it goes by real quick and my brain only absorbs at a certain rate. Is there any way that we could get, uh, you have a, a commentary that you've been, uh, can we get a copy of that or do I have to go back and listen to the tape or, or is that feasible?
I can, I can type up, I can type up my bullets.
Well, I mean, I just, whatever you've got.
I've got a couple of their bullets in and I can give you those, um, what those are.
Right, it's, it's an absorption issue for me.
I do want to reiterate, um, we have this one set aside pot of money, but two hundred and fifty million in unfunded unmet needs, so.
We don't have two hundred and fifty million dollars, you know.
Even with your short, even with your short time on the council, you were absolutely correct.
Can you stand on the, uh, proposal one, I mean, what's the OCTA environmental cleanup matching grant?
If I may take that one. Um, the environmental cleanup program is similar to the catch basin inserts that, uh, we routinely apply for and, uh, those are the great, that just see other catch basin in some, um, I'm sorry, in lens. That's considered a tier one grant, um, from OCTA. And it's very rare that OCTA would call, uh, do a call for projects for tier two project. These are the larger debris capture devices or program activities that, um, they do solicit for. And last time they actually, uh, did a call for projects and awarded was in twenty fourteen. So quite a few years ago, so what we want to do is position ourselves for this tier two grant. Um, we weren't able to do catch basin inserts, um, successfully in the Old Town area. So we're trying to do a larger, uh, capture device before the stormwater enters into the west end pump station and discharges of the San Diego River. So that is something that we have been looking at for quite some time and trying to target for that. So this money will actually set aside for two components. One is for the grant application and two is to pre-design the project to make ourselves competitive for that grant.
Okay, and the fleet management is up for the, like, new cars and?
Currently, the city is, um, on a leasing program with Enterprise. Um, and what happens when, in, when you lease vehicles, that cost goes ongoing. They, they, in a downturn or a pullback, the city typically, historically, was able to stop payments on cars. Um, we won't be able to do that going forward on our leased vehicles. This would set aside a payment plan to pay off those vehicles and allow us to do a full assessment if it's, if it's viable for the continued, the city to continue on a leasing program.
Okay. The fiber connectivity to the lifeguard tower? Uh, because that's been, like, looked at by a consultant or something.
I can, I can speak to that, uh, and I don't want to sell your hundreds of digits. I know you can go on for an hour or so about.
I was only going to use like ten minutes.
I'm going to get the people up and on.
Yeah.
Oh, he was ready.
So, so yeah, uh, there are some, obviously, some extreme challenges with phone system and all that, uh, the lifeguards. Uh, that's not to say that other departments have faced with that. It's one of the reasons we're, uh, in the process of having a new phone system installed in the city, uh, which will hopefully cure most of our issues. Uh, and I'm really excited about that and I know, I would thank, uh, the mayor for, uh, for all the information that you've been providing on that end. We do not currently have direct fiber into the station, which is a huge problem. Uh, we do at our other facilities. So while we're going to get a new bank phone system this year, it doesn't mean that it, it may cure all of these challenges. Now, you can speak to some of the challenges that you've been facing with and why it's important maybe to add in that direction in terms of finding a direct fiber line.
Just briefly, if you notice it's windy today, that means I have no connectivity internet or phone. And so, you know, we have a rule that I put in place that if a lifeguard is on a rescue, there's a lifeguard on the beach backing him up and then there's a lifeguard in our dispatch to call for additional resources. So right now, every time it's windy and it rains, we have no connectivity to our phones. So there's no way to call nine one one, for instance, if we need fire or police, except on our personal cellphones and that makes me nervous, just on, on personal cellphones. So our communication is a real issue for a public safety agency and we need to be hardwired in so we don't have this issue anymore. That's basically the general thing, this has been going on for years and we need a solution.
Have we, have we looked at Starlink or the satellite internet?
We are looking at those alternatives, the Starlink, um, is something that we definitely look at. The problem with, with the chief is just, he's at the beach and so that's a problem. So, I mean, of course, the seven hundred thousand a price tag is an estimate and obviously all of these costs continue to go up, um, and he's facing the same challenges. But it is something that we are currently looking at, we, we know about Starlink and some additional. We've tried some alternatives, uh, we've been successful to some degree and then you go back and there's an issue with it, like the wind or the rain or.
Right, so Councilmember, I actually, I personally signed up for Starlink for, uh, for my house and it's not available in this area yet.
Okay.
So that is not really an option.
How's the orbit out, Warren? Council's house, Starlink, working out for you and your.
Well, I know it's not available yet here, so I, I know it's not available yet because I signed up for it, but, uh.
Anybody know Elon?
Yeah, to me, that goes back to the issue of, uh, once again, I, I need hardline connectivity. Because ultimately, even, I know with people who have the dish, whenever it rains, that goes out. So I'm sure Starlink is going to be similar to that, I would imagine, but I don't know that for sure.
What do you have now, I mean, if it goes out?
So right now, it's a microwave antenna that goes from city hall to the top of lifeguard headquarters. So those palm trees on H Street, those tall ones, when they start swinging in the way, they interfere with our connectivity.
Got it, thank you.
Um, so the eleven million dollars for the lifeguard headquarters, is that tearing it all the way down, getting rid of mold?
That is correct, it's a round of.
New construction.
So brand new construction.
You'll put a tint up all that new construction that's going on, or?
It's likely we're going to have to find a temporary home for them, uh, whether it's in a trailer of some sort or, um, but we haven't gone down to that degree of, as you tell that.
And, and paying off the fire station bond, is that going to leave us any money left over to do debt service or is it all just going to get sucked up by all the increased expenditure, expense costs that we have?
It's.
It's all going to get sucked up.
How do I say that nicely?
I'm sorry, but yeah, that wasn't professional, but.
I think one of the areas, uh, calpers is a perfect example. We have a negative six point one percent return in calpers and that is going to give us about four hundred, five hundred thousand hit a year going forward. We have to plan for those, those impacts. And again, it continues to squeeze our ability, like staff has mentioned about all of these projects, you have one person to do it, it continues to squeeze that ability to, to do that. Um, real quick, if there's not any other questions, these are unfunded one-time needs. Um, that, this is part of the list of the unfunded needs. Again, I want to reiterate, uh, there, there's a, there's a big amount of unfunded items out there with one pot of money, we're all looking at the same pot of money. And meeting with the departments, they are working cohesively in partnership on what each department needs. And balancing, you know, I know Chief has done, um, just an unlimited review of his department while we're looking at balancing, making sure that, um, he meets his service demands as well as the other departments. Thank you. Well, passing back to Rick.
Okay.
Just, uh, comment, um, I've made a, an informal suggestion, also unfunded, uh, for the staff that, you know, one of the problems that we all experience at various levels is getting our constituents to understand these problems. Um, you know, their feeling is, well, take care of it, you know, rebuild lifeguard yet. How could you let that go this long? Well, we just discussed all those reasons. And so I've, I've suggested something that would be akin to a government white paper where we put together, um, something, a document or some kind of presentation that can be distributed to our residents, whether it's mailed, whether, you know, because we know you can't rely with respect for the sun to transmit information to all of our residents once a week. So that we, the goal is to, to get our residents to sort of buy in to what, what we're faced with and what we're trying to do about it. Just to take some of that pressure off of us to, uh, you know, to let us work on those issues. And it doesn't have to be as detailed as, as these others, but in the general sense, to know that we're working on it. Um, our costs keep going up and our revenue is slated to be flat or slightly lower or dramatically low. So that's just a suggestion.
Are you looking for direction now on, on this or are you going to talk it later?
Uh, no, I think the plan is we'll bring it back. I think it'll take a, a larger, uh, to do than this, the, the forum that we're in right now.
Yeah, our plan is to bring it back during the budget workshop.
Okay.
Um, process for further discussion, obviously, we hope to have more members of the public um, in attendance and participating and making their viewpoints known as well. This was just specifically to have a, a brief conversation with you and get some initial feedback from, from you and then our, our ability, at least to be able to make some, some initial recommendations.
I, I like proposal one. And if we, we have the money and each year reducing ten percent in interest.
Yeah, buying power is just eroding right, right in front of us. It's just, the dollars we do get are becoming less powerful the go of them and, and replace the things that we need. So I mean, we have this kind of shrinking buying power in front of us and we have these rising needs. It's just like, at some point, it's, it's, uh, sorry.
It's like that shirt comes out. No, I, that's, that's great engagement. I mean, that's, that's the kind of direction, that's, that's the kind of input that staff was looking at is to see what council's thoughts were on this. I mean, thank you, Barbara, for the, uh, presentation. I mean, just this one slide right here is over twenty-four million dollars in needs and you have about three point one million in ARPA set aside funds to, to address that. One of the reasons why we brought this up is because in our interviews with council members, this was one of the items that they wanted to talk about as far as what is going to be the use of that remaining three point one million dollars. So, uh, this is a, a sneak preview as to a future agenda item and I'm sure a lot more council deliberations when we have more public here, uh, to, to discuss it. So, uh, moving on, I'm, I'm going to take the liberty of, of jumping to item nine, which normally we do in the afternoon session, but this is part of the pivoting that we'll do to, to move the process along a little bit. And now we're going to be talking about priorities and priority sessions. Uh, the previous slide was a perfect example. I mean, you had three point one million dollars in out-of-fund, you're trying to find what better use of it when you have twenty-four million. So you can't do everything on that list, but you can do some of those things, uh, pretty successfully. And that's what prioritization sections are all about. And that's what this afternoon session is all about, is trying to be successful in the resources that you have and the staff that you have, their bandwidth that you have, uh, to do, uh, projects. Uh, we talked a little bit earlier today about the, uh, the bandwidth of council, excuse me, of, of staff. Council acknowledged that, we want to talk a little bit about that as well, too. Uh, we talked a little bit about the collaborative trusting relationship. That's one of the things the city manager needs from council is, is to build upon that trust. And then also to set some focus priorities. Uh, you have sixteen priorities that you discussed, uh, with, with us when we had our interviews. We're going to be talking about them today. Uh, no one can count to sixteen, I don't even have sixteen fingers. But you can, you can count to a manageable number and that's what today's exercise is going to be, is to try to find out what should be the top priorities to address, uh, in twenty-three, twenty-four. One of the things we like to do is set up the metaphor on, on Stephen Covey, uh, seven habits of highly expected people. He uses the metaphor of, uh, a glass of rocks, uh, big rocks, small rocks. You take them out and I did this exercise with, with my, with my kids a couple of years ago. You, you dump it out, you try to put it back in. If you put in the small rocks first, they take up all the room, you can't put in the big rocks. What's important, what's important is to deal with the big rocks and that's why you need to put those in first. And then you can work around your project workloads with some of those smaller, smaller lists of accomplishments. So that's what we're here today to talk about, is what are the big rocks that you want to put in your bucket uh, to have staff accomplish? We talked a little bit about staff's capacity. I heard a little bit a while ago, somebody mentioned the, uh, concept of the iceberg. That's typical of the iceberg when you're talking about state mandates. That's, that's, that's true. Council sets the priority and the direction, uh, and the goals of, of the city. But below the surface, there's a lot of work that's happening that, uh, the public doesn't realize. And, you know, any. And, you know, anything from providing day-to-day services to the community, to planning for the future, to responding to unplanned events. I mean, the recent floods that you've had, that took a lot of staff time to deal with those issues. The pandemic, what your staff had to do to pivot when the pandemic came on board. Patrick and his crew, you know, as far as dealing with the, didn't have procedures, didn't have return to work policies, didn't have their masking protocols, didn't have the PPEs, having to work with, you know, your marine department and police department and your fire department to unravel those things and put procedures together, no one wrote the book for that. There was no guidelines, they had to work, it was a fluid situation. Those things happen, and they take up a lot of time. And then you deal with maintaining your infrastructure, we heard that you have over two hundred million dollars of needs, that takes work to do. And then the last thing was the state mandates. You know, we heard about the carbon reduction, we heard about electronic vehicles that are mandated. All those things take time, and you have staff that are working on those. This is not scientific, but this is something that we have, we've come up with at Baker Tilly after years of working with cities and working in cities ourselves as former public servants. We see that your staff spends probably eighty-five percent of their time, if not more, just dealing with the day-to-day functions of running their operation. That leaves only fifteen percent set aside for such things as training, and your police department, your fire department. They have mandated training that they have to go through on a consistent basis, that takes them away from their day-to-day activities, dealing with unforeseen challenges such as floods, such as pandemics. And then leaves about five percent to deal with new initiatives. When you think about what does that five percent deal with from a staff perspective? Your full-time complement of employees, a little bit over a hundred, full-time employees. But when you're dealing with priorities that the city council comes up with, a lot of the priorities that you come up with don't deal with your public safety departments, you know, as far as the housing elements, as far as the parklets are concerned, as far as the technology aspects. And so if you take out the public safety employees, and then you take out those employees that are dealing with operations, you have about a seven percent vacancy factor, you actually have seven vacancies right now as we speak. That leaves just fourteen positions citywide that can deal with new initiatives. If you recall this slide, and we say you have about five percent that can be set aside for new initiatives, well, if you take those fourteen employees at five percent, that leaves about fourteen hundred hours for new initiatives. That's less than a part-time position from that perspective. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to set the content as far as, a council member mentioned earlier, our staff is limited as far as the resources, their bandwidth, and that's why this exercise that we want to do this afternoon when we go through the prioritization, is to really zero in on what are the top priorities that the city council would like staff to really identify and go after. We put this slide on here because these are some talking points that we received from our interviews with the city council, one-on-one interviews, and I thought it was pretty impactful when we heard these things. And again, this is a new slide, we don't use this at any other presentation. These came directly from a couple of your council members. We need to realize that things take time to accomplish. We need to be mindful of the fact that adding additional projects might overburden our staff. And I think what that meant was that staff is already at a capacity, we're trying to get things done, such as the housing element, that takes a lot of time. If we add more layers on there, something's gonna have to give, and that's just a reality, something's gonna have to give. And then everybody has their own agendas of what they would like to see get accomplished, but we all need to realize that our current resources are limited. You know, again, you know, it goes back to the very beginning of priority session, you know, a great philosopher, Jay Perkins, came up with, we can do everything, we can't do everything, but we can do some things very well. So with that, what we'd like to do is go into the prioritization session, and everybody should have a handout, hopefully. The handout is a horizontal, it says Attachment D. And for the members of the public, there should be a handout in the back as well, too. And what Attachment D is, is a list of priorities that the city council came up with in September of twenty twenty-two to deal with the twenty-two, twenty-three fiscal year and what you wanted to have accomplished through this June thirtieth. And what we'd like to do is turn this over to Jill and have her walk us through some of these items, get some clarification on them. You have receptive matter experts here, we encourage council to ask as many questions as you can to get a good understanding as to where you are in this process as far as each one of these priorities. And then identify whether or not they should be a priority for twenty-three, twenty-four. In working with city staff, we took the liberty of coming up with some suggestions as far as whether they should stay on the list, or if they should, yes, council member?
I know you're transitioning, I apologize, and I'm kind of, my brain's still stuck on that, the resources and what time is available. Do we have any idea how much the city spends in compliance on unfunded mandates? How much money does the city through staff time and other resources, how much do we spend in compliance on unfunded mandates? Do we know that number? A last staff on that one?
No, I mean, I could sue my department, just because it's not something we would track, how many hours have you spent on?
Well, like housing element, I mean, you've spent enormous hours on that, so I mean, that keeps you from other things as well, so we don't know.
We don't track it.
Do you have any idea?
Council member, no, as Rick mentioned, staff has many hats.
Right.
We were here till ten p.m., you know, if something needs to get done, we stay here and get it done.
Yeah.
So we're not helping, we're doing it, I think all staff, I ran into Alexa late last night. It's getting those, we have due dates, and we have this today and due dates that need to get done, so we're meeting those, and we're not logging that down.
Yeah, there's not a hint of criticism in the question at all, guys, I think you guys are awesome, and a real problem is just kind of like a question mark comes up in my brain, it's kind of like, do we have any idea how much money we spend?
So council member, it's actually, reading my mind, it's literally a, put on my personal to-do list, it's something that we can do better, track at the police department, because many training mandates come from the state regulatory agency called Post. And so they'll say, you now have to go to this training, and you have to get it done. So it's actually something that we could begin to capture and get on our jam.
I think that would be helpful when we go talk to our constituents and we talk about all these priorities that we can't afford, but at the same time, we're spending this much of our time, our resources, in our limited numbers, in complying with existing. So, thank you, I apologize.
Council member, if I can, both of you, so I think there's another thing to think about is that we're not only tracking unfunded mandates that have actually been approved, in a sense of us, we're also tracking things that are in committees that may actually have, be it the governor or the legislature.
Right.
So there's a lot of time outside of just the unfunded mandate, so that we can kind of preemptively prepare for these things to go on, so that we can pivot hard time to account for.
I had the similar kind of thought, like, how much time is each department spending on these unfunded mandates? And, you know, versus things that affect Seal Beach.
And I think, too, it's, you know, how we're spending that time is also kind of an interesting piece of conversation, like, for example, I will spend most of this week writing five staff reports for the next council meeting. All of those staff reports are, you know, pieces of my unfunded things, of writing staff reports, you know what I mean? And, you know, pulling in the research and getting the resume, you know, and those kinds of things. So it's, it's not maybe as glamorous as we would like it to be in the day-to-day world of how time is actually spent.
I think the fact that we know that we have a lot of unfunded mandates, the time that it would take to track that and be able to present the numbers in a way, just, well, I mean, is it, what are we, who are we to benefit from that unless the information we're getting from staff is too vague, you know, like, well, maybe yes, and maybe no, you know, then.
It would be helpful to be able to tell our constituents that, you know, we're spending, you know, this much money in compliance of state mandates.
A hundred percent, or even a ten percent.
Twenty percent of the time.
So I apologize. Yeah, I mean, that's a great question, I mean, council, go ahead. I'm sorry, that ARPA number, that three point one million, where did that come from? Did that sprinkle down from heaven, or is that?
Pretty much.
Yeah, it's the federal, but who said three point one million for Seal Beach? And, you know, Huntington Beach gets thirty million or whatever, where does that number come from?
Sent out during COVID to ensure that cities continue to meet their needs.
Why three point one million?
It's five point seven million, based off of population and needs of the city.
Oh, that's right, pickleball is in that number, too.
Yes, two point six million was set aside for the Tennessee Pickleball Center, and three point one is remaining, and this is the remaining funds.
Yeah, I guess in general, my question is, why three point one, why five point six and seven? Why not seven point two, why not nine point six?
It's been a couple of years, but I think they basically adopted the CDBG allocation formula, which was, you know, it already existed, and they had to get this money out fast, so they kind of said, hey, we've got this math, and that's how we send money out now, so.
Based on the city's operation.
The bathrooms and leisure world have an impact on how much money you're paying.
Yes, yeah, it's, yeah, there's a few different things that feed into several formulas that feed into it, but population is.
Thank you, thank you.
I also want to add another cost factor to that, and, you know, we heard that, we hear the discussion all the time about why is the city hiring so many consultants? A significant number, and almost the majority of what we do, the efforts that we undertake, if you weren't required to do it, whether it's a state mandate, it's a council mandate, requires outside expertise. But we don't necessarily have the expertise on our team to be able to complete that. And so I think when you're having those discussions with your constituents, it goes so much further, it's a deeper conversation about why hiring expertise, the experts that we have access to, why that's a good thing for the city. And we can talk about that maybe a little bit later on when we're talking about staffing, but I know it's something a couple of you have heard, especially Lisa and Megan, when you were running for office and campaigning, and we've had a little bit of this discussion, one-on-one, but maybe a discussion we should get into here, because even articles in the paper that pop up, it's as if the mere fact that we, you know, that the council's authorized a PSA with a consultant, that in and of itself is a headline instead of the reason why that's a good thing for our city.
City manager, I could just, one last note, just as one thing that we have to talk, and we actually do track, it's not a funded mandate, but we don't think of it like that, and that's Public Records Act requests. And we have a high volume, City Clerk Harper can attest to it, and within the last several months, I mean, the amount of time that we spend on those PRA is enormous, and, you know, the directors, middle can tell you about all the ways in which he spends, serves out time on trying to accomplish, you know, they have deadlines, it's ten days, and maybe we can get an extension, and oftentimes, we have to get an extension because we're doing the day-to-day stuff, it's all assigned checks for correcting things, so that's something that we do track, our time, and the clerk's office does a good job of that, so that's something that is.
We actually have three hundred and forty-five PRA's in twenty-two, and as of today, we have one hundred and thirty PRA's this year, which is starting April. And most of those PRA's are mostly for Alexis Department, and so they spend a lot of time, it's permits, it's just about anything you can think of. The public has a right to request them, and we have like ten days to respond to them to let them know whether we have records or not, but sometimes they believe that we have ten days to reduce the records, which we do not. We have ten days to respond whether we have the records or not.
So that's the bottom part of the iceberg there, you know, in the meanwhile, you know, we're, you know, we're all doing it, but I can only speak from our department, about the things we're trying to do to make our workload lighter, smarter, you know, whatever you want to do. So last year, we embarked on the scanning project because we had ten or twelve years of plants in paper rolls. So a public records request comes in, and literally someone is going through plants, that's not workable. So, you know, so we put together this project, and San Francisco has kind of taken on kind of the management of it, but yes, we send the scan, the plans out to be scanned, but they, you know, there's a manifest that needs to be done, destruction still needs to be done, public records and, you know, management of those are a big deal, so that's a project. It's helping us tons to have these now in a digital format, but that's, you know, again, that's just one example of the, under the iceberg, all of these other things we're trying to do to make it work better.
And one last thing that I'll add to, once we get those permits, there's also redacting, so that takes some staff time as well, so. And it's just a big undertaking that we go through every day, and we want to make sure that we are, you know, being responsive, you know, to the request every day. Yeah, I spend time with Winnie, Winnie spent time with Jill, she sent out, you know, sometimes this city attorney, you know, is sending us, you know, going through documents, reviewing, making sure that we can release them, so it's a lot of moving parts just with one request.
Good question.
Excellent question. For your benefit, there was a day back in the eighties, in early nineties, in which city staff used to keep track of how much time they spent on mandates, because they were state mandates. But back in the early nineties, the state legislator snuck an eight-letter word in there called unfunded. And once they shot that across the bow, and they said, let's make this a law, let's make it unfunded, and it got through, then they started saying, oh, from now on, we're gonna make these unfunded. Because what they were doing was they were hurting from a recession, and they were looking at ways of how can we not have to pay these cities for keeping track of all this time that we require them to do these duties, because they'd have to get reimbursed for them. It's called state mandated reimbursements.
And they're clawing back, too.
Yes, so it's another way in which they're going to try to rebalance their budget. So at one time, cities did keep track of a lot of those mandates because they can get reimbursed for them, they call it SB ninety, state reimbursements, but that went away probably twenty years ago, for the vast majority of them, now they're all unfunded. So with that, I think that's a good time to take a break. I see Megan has the lunch back there, it is exactly twelve thirty, so why don't we pick it back up at one o'clock, and we'll go through the prioritization.
Council member counting? You ready to get started?
Sure.
Thanks for making me a public speaker.
All right, so Rick teed this up for us before the break, so hopefully everybody had a good lunch and a nice break, and you're energized and recharged and ready to dive into the meat and potatoes of what we're talking about in terms of priorities. And one of the, one of several reasons why you're here today, so I'm starting on page two of Attachment D, so does everyone have the matrix that we're gonna walk through right now? Right, so we are starting on page two, category one, which is organizational efficiencies. Item number one, strategic priority has to do with our existing phone system, and so I'm, this is an item that staff has recommended. And so I'm, um, this is an item that staff is recommending that we keep on our strategic plan as a strategic priority for the next six months. And so I'll have Patrick just give a brief update on, on where we're at with this. And as, um, was mentioned earlier, I know, um, council member Moore has been engaged in this effort, um, with staff as well. And so he's been, um, is clearly aware of where we're at in this process along with our city attorney. So Patrick.
Uh, thank you, city manager. Uh, so yeah, first of all, we thank, uh, Mayor Moore for your participation, uh, and really spiriting IT in general for the city. Um, I think it's been really great. Um, you know, that being your area of expertise has been very helpful. Uh, with regard to the phone system, uh, there are a number of things that have happened. We recently had four demonstrations from vendors, uh, different phone system features. Uh, a lot of our staff here actually were part of that, I know from hearing. Um, obviously we talked about some of the challenges, he was one of the raiders. Uh, and we, we actually selected a vendor. Uh, we were going through the process, working with the vendor, this, uh, the city staff and the city attorney's office, uh, and putting together a draft agreement that's amenable to both, uh, both parties. Um, so thank you, uh, city attorney for getting that to your staff for, and prioritizing that so that we can get it, uh, sooner rather than later. What that means is that, I know Mayor, uh, you had mentioned that, uh, you're looking at a people timeline in terms of getting that in front of council. Uh, that is a target date that we have, uh, whether or not we get there, uh, we'll see. It depends a lot on, uh, like I said, coming to terms, uh, with the, you know, the devils in the details with, with agreements. So, um, so it'll be either late April or in May where we'll have something in front of council. Uh, and then it'll take up to, uh, with the vendor said, up to eight weeks to install the new phone system. Though we imagine there might be, given our outdated infrastructure, I, I, you know, uh, have to say that it's been probably more than twenty years that we've had a new phone system and all the legacy stuff over at the lifeguards is going to have to be dealt with. So, uh, they've assessed our infrastructure. Uh, this is a, a cloud-based phone system, uh, which I think is, uh, kind of where everybody is going. And so, uh, with that, we're in a good place to, to get the implementation going. Uh, once it goes to council, council considers it and, uh, if you decide that you'd like to approve this agreement, we'll get started on implementation. Any questions, Tom?
Do we have any numbers yet?
I'm sorry?
Do we have any numbers on it yet?
Numbers of.
How much it's going to cost?
Yeah, we have some, we have, uh, we don't have that op, and I can share that at a later date.
I'll, I'll wait until it comes out.
It's less than three point one million.
That I know for sure.
Actually very reasonable when I was, uh, it looked like we might actually save money with the new phones as some versus our current system. If we paid a system licensing, that's what each cost here is. Yeah, it's going to, and the, uh, I was, on the meeting with the, uh, new vendor, just really get, uh, it's going to be very helpful, I think, for staff and for just being responsive to your, the residents. And, you know, when you get a phone call, if it doesn't answer, it could go to email. And, uh, you can respond on your phone, cell phone, and just all the latest technology is going to be really nice.
So the, the, um, lifeguard station isn't included within this?
It is, but, but they have a, a set of different challenges. They, they don't have direct fiber to their station, so that's the biggest issue. So whether or not, um, it may, it may cure some of, of what they're going through, but definitely not all. And I, I suspect that they will have, uh, additional challenges, you know, with the super system.
And all the people that were in the room to see the presentations, I, I think we were impressed with all the new technology. There's some, some great items we look forward to, but the main issue for the lifeguard headquarters is the actual hardware connectivity rather than the hardware of the phones and their systems.
So the hardware connectivity, would that be an overhead or underground connectivity?
So right now it's, 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 and the engineer can speak to it because they've done somebody assess it preliminary.
It, it, it's a little of both, is my understanding. Some may go overhead, but some will need to be underground, so it's, it's both.
And that bridge mates from City Hall?
Yeah, so the idea right now, we have a connectivity from City Hall, the PD. And the idea would be to have it all connected, hardwired in once.
So the cost estimate that you saw earlier during, um, uh, Director Oronato's slide for four hundred thousand dollars does include, um, a degree of trenching and underground boring to get the fiber over to the lifeguard headquarters. So the number is higher than just overhead stringing it.
It's all, that's good fiber over there, the company don't like, uh, spectrum doesn't come along, stuff like that or?
Uh, I do believe that spectrum does have a line there, however, it would be a rental cost, a recurring rental cost, uh, that we would have to pay.
I, I don't have the number off the top of my head. Um, we have a T one line from Verizon coming in, but it is, um, extremely expensive.
Keep in mind that's.
Yeah.
That old tech, old technology.
That's correct also.
All right, um, moving along, um, the number two item is developing an IT master plan and needs assessment. It's an item that we're recommending, um, remaining on the strategic priorities. Patrick, anything brief?
Yeah, just really briefly, it is something that we're still have on our radar. Uh, much like the, the phone system, uh, we believe having a project manager, uh, hiring someone that has more of a technical expertise in this area. Because this is like, this is going to be a comprehensive plan rather than just, you know, a simple, hey, we did an assessment, here are a few bullet points. Uh, we really want to get into it and find out, uh, more of the three to five-year projection of where the city should be headed in regards to IT. And that's going to, that's going to take a little bit more expertise than we have. We do have, um, our management analyst, Kevin Edwards, who's part of our IT guru. Um, but we, we'd like some additional support in that realm, and I think we can make some progress, uh, if we do, uh, in that way.
Could I ask just one small favor? The traffic noise is, is kind of increasing the ambient background.
Thank you.
I think the importance of the IT master plan in my view is to make sure all the pieces fit together. It's like the phone system with the, uh, maybe a ticketing system. Kind of the, how it's, and, and infrastructure and how that all plays with the, the internet connectivity with, you know, so having someone look at all of that and plan out three years would be helpful.
I agree.
Okay, item number three on that same page has to do, I know there were some concerns expressed, um, from council about, um, the time it's, it takes to process development review applications. And this is something, um, we've addressed this. Alexa, is that we're not recommending keeping it on here as strategic priority? Alexa's or anything you want to add? You know, intergov is something that's going to be ongoing, but in terms of the actual priority to address the concerns about development review, that's, that item's been addressed.
Yeah, in terms, in terms of the software, um, we, we have purchased the intergov software. We're in the stages of, of getting it live, which requires us to get legacy and different, two different systems integrated into there. And ultimately, that will be a good thing from an administrative perspective. It will reduce the time, particularly between our departments where, you know, we're, we're exchanging information by email. It'll all be in one central place where you kind of log in and look at things. And an additional in barbs department, the way the systems speak to each other will certainly help, um, with some of the manual work that's being done on the finance side of things. So it's, it's a good administrative tool. Um, it doesn't solve the fact that we, you know, have five hundred plans next year. That's, you know, that, that's a different piece of the problem.
All right, page three.
Yep, before we, before we continue to that one. So are we recommending on number three that it not be the priority?
Correct.
Okay.
Take it off.
Yeah, it has a guess on it right now.
Oh, okay, we have enough. Megan, maybe we can just grab a couple extra, the updated ones here. The one that came out this morning is the most recent.
It's been updated.
Okay, right.
Okay.
Does, does intergov allow, like, people to get their plans approved online?
We have that now.
Okay.
So almost all of our work at this point is digital submissions.
Okay.
It's, it's through the trans tech system, so through our building consultant system.
Okay.
So this, this offers up to what, what we, what we don't have access to is, you know, their entire system. Where everyone can look at something and see where it is, who's responsible for it now, you know, what stage of the process it is.
Or the management, uh, dashboard.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
So let's take, let's take two, finish our, complete this process. Um, well, we are in some respects at the mercy of the Tyler consultants that are assigned to us to get us through this process. So, uh, we still have some workflows that need to be created and that's, that's on our side. Um, there's, there's other plugin components to intergov, including Esri, which is kind of the universal standard mapping system, but it's not one that we use. So we have to develop all those maps, we have to train our staff how to use those maps. And then, um, digital markup for moving, which is another plugin, you know, piece of this. So that's, it's training and kind of figuring out how to do it and, you know, just step by step. And then the, the conversion of the data, which I cannot speak to, I won't pretend to. But taking the legacy data out of the old system has to be cleaned up, put into the new system. And then you have to start testing. Testing will go for a couple of months, at least, depending on how it works. And we have to go back and fix what doesn't work, what, what's not connected. So it's, it's a lot of trial and error. So this is an ongoing process, it's just not a priority. So, so it's still, it's still, you're not stopping? We're not stopping. So it's just not a priority?
It's, it, it is, but I think the, from the perspective that the actual priority was the trying to expedite development review. We've addressed that. This is just going to be an ongoing effort to ensure that that continues. So we don't see a reason to continue to keep it on here, even though that particular piece of it is, will continue to move forward.
Okay.
All right, page three is our second category, community outreach and council projects. Um, strategic priority number one has to do with, um, community outreach on, um, the pool. And trying to, uh, determine options for potentially financing, um, a community pool project. And so you can see we've got several updates there. Um, the council did appoint an ad hoc, project ad hoc committee, which previously included, um, council member Calmick and council member Vera Papa along with our staff team. So, um, a big piece of that obviously is determining, you know, from a financial perspective, what, what, what do we have the ability to afford to be able to move this forward? So Iris, anything from your perspective that you want to add to this conversation right now?
Sure, um, we spoke to it a little bit earlier in regards to, uh, the option that, uh, we discussed with the ad hoc committee and the, uh, school district as well, um, the rough order of magnitude of, um, the potential of that option. Uh, just echoing what, uh, city manager just said, um, we are looking at the, um, the way to make this, or how to go about funding this, if it is economically feasible to move forward with a project or not. But we, we do want to continue moving forward to share these options and continue to solicit feedback as well.
So we are definitely recommending leaving this on as a strategic priority. Um, item number two has to do with downtown, um, basically Main Street and sidewalk enhancements. And Iris, um, we, we are recommending, um, leaving this on as a strategic priority. We're actually recommending kind of bifurcating this project and, and pulling off pieces that we can manage to make it a little bit, uh, easier for us to move projects forward. So Iris, do you want to address this one?
Of course, um, so one of the components, uh, to Main Street was parking. And, um, while we're addressing it on several fronts, we wanted to look into microtransit opportunity, um, as one of the possibilities. So recently, uh, staff submitted a grant application for microtransit under AQAB. Um, and hopefully we will be successful with that. Um, we're also working with OCTA to possibly look for continuous funding for, uh, microtransit as well. And, uh, that is in the works. OCTA hears us and hears other agencies' needs to actually, um, uh, promote these microtransit opportunities. So that's one component of it. As city manager Ingram mentioned, um, we are looking on ways to, uh, move other components of Main Street together. We want to continue with the public outreach opportunity to create that vision plan. But at the same time, there is infrastructure that can't wait anymore. So we're looking to do roadway and sidewalk infrastructure upgrades while we create that vision concurrently.
Any questions from council? Recommendations, suggestions? Okay.
One question. What about the trees?
The trees will definitely be a point that we're going to continue talking about and will be logged into the vision plan that, um, uh, that will be running in tandem with the infrastructure improvements.
All right, item number three has to do, and, and, and granted, several of these got caught up. Um, because we definitely had a pretty aggressive community outreach plan in place before, um, COVID. And it's just been a matter of time to get back into discussions, um, on these. And the third one has to do with engaging the community on, um, options to look at potentially for whether or not to pursue a restaurant at the end of the pier. And I know from, obviously from an economic perspection, perspective, there's a lot of questions there. Uh, we did engage with a real estate professional to, to look at some options. And quite honestly, um, I'm taking responsibility for this one because we just don't have, um, the depth of staff to be able to, on several of these, to be able to, for me to assign this to someone. So, um, we're definitely recommending keeping this on, um, as a strategic priority for the next six months. And I know council members may have, you know, some recommendations, at least in the short term, for us to potentially explore. Again, just seeing if there's consensus of the council.
I guess, um, I've talked with council member Calmick about doing something this summer. I know all these unfunded mandates is kind of overwhelming. It'd be nice to have something that's kind of fun. And, uh, uh, the, we, the thought was to have like alfresco dining at the end of the pier with the, uh, food truck. And, uh, possibly a golf cart that goes back and forth on the week, on the summer weekends only. And if, if the rest of the council agrees, like, to just go ahead and.
What do we agree to?
Uh, yeah, on the summer weekends, uh, alfresco dining at the end of the pier.
Have, having food trucks come and, uh, and I, between here and building a restaurant at the end of the pier, I think that's a logical first step. People would be, I, everybody I talked who was interested in being able to go out and be in the pier and have a meal. The practicality of building a restaurant before they can have a meal is kind of like the big stumbling block. So, I mean, food trucks, they can just pull on out there and spend the day and then it'll be done, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, it's still, there's still a discussion, a larger discussion about something that would be possibly permanent. That's one of the choices. Um, the, a full restaurant, you know, is, in my opinion, not, not happening. I don't think that, uh, you know, we can't afford to build it. And I don't think an operator can afford the overhead of, of doing business there. The other alternatives that, when we get back to doing things like this, uh, would be, um, food trucks or something that would be similar. I was mentioning in, uh, City of Pismo Beach, they have airstream trailers, which are kind of cool looking. And, uh, you know, they can be towed on and towed off. There's another concept that involved using, uh, shipping containers.
Just steel, like steel craft?
Yeah, just like, like steel craft. That would be, the design that, that I've seen, uh, does allow for a view port or down the center. And then still have two modules that would be approximately sixteen by forty. And then a glass, in eating, seating and eating area behind that, that could be heated, lit, whatever, you know, we want to do, which we can't afford with the money that we have from insurance from the purifier.
But it would still require us to recruit a restaurateur or two.
Absolutely.
Because, what I like about food trucks is there are some food trucks whose food is extremely good. And all you have to do is basically sign them up, get them out there.
That's true.
Have a food truck competition and pick out the, the loser every week.
How, uh, how does the Main Street restaurants feel about the idea of bringing in competition essentially?
There's, there's been competition out there for sixty years.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Um, some restaurant people I've talked to, they're fine. You know, it's just like having a new such-and-such restaurant and then block away or next door.
Something new every week.
Yeah.
Something new every week though, which would be maybe more attractive than having the same hot and hambur place.
From what, and, and again, I haven't done any research on this, but the, the concept of the food trucks has lost a little bit of its luster. A lot of the really successful food trucks actually moved into brick and mortar. I mean, they're still out there, could still get them. Um, as a permanent, uh, entity, it, it doesn't appeal to me that much. I mean, if we were going to do something that can be driven off for. I mean, if we were going to do something that can be driven off or towed off, I like the idea of what Pismo Beach did. If there's something similar, the same or different, you know, it has some style to it. Where food trucks don't really have a style.
I think, kind of with the crowd though, those food trucks will show up somewhere and they put the word out.
True.
And the concept is just to do it kind of this summer, um, just to kind of attest that-
Tom's idea though is not in lieu of the long-term plan. It's something we could do this summer. The only cost is-
Well, the thing about a food truck is they actually have a built-in audience already. And that they would be without the word Seal Beach Pier come on out.
Yeah.
And so people would be coming to them.
But the obligation from the city's part would be minimal, other than um needing to, you know, drag the tables out there. And we probably would need some sort of a, you know, porta potty setup out there, which, you know, all of that is, is doable.
Too beautiful. The bathrooms at the bottom of the pier down there.
I never talked about that because I never go there.
We, we could ask staff to come back with some kind of proposal.
Um, I had conversations with Wendy Rock, who owns Fish Company, and she just said it's not fiscally, you know, responsible to build. She would have did.
But to build that, that's a whole other thing.
Yeah, it just wouldn't generate enough revenue to do it.
She'd be okay with uh temporary.
A lot of people have said food trucks. I mean, yeah.
But they, yeah, and of course they haven't seen the Steel Craft concept.
Yeah.
Yeah, my daughter was just down the street. Every time I go past Steel Craft, it's, it's called people, so.
The, the beauty of, of the design that I saw and the act, the concept of the shipping container is that you could do anything you want externally to them. So I was thinking, even if the Steel Craft concept dies out, you know, if we had it on our pier, you can make it look like the pier itself. They can be painted, they can be sited. There's a new siding that uh was explained to me that um you, you put it on, it has a mast because part of it, and it's good for twenty years. You don't have to paint it, you don't have to do anything. So there's a lot of things you could do with the shipping container concept that would, I think, render it more long-term in terms of its, the way it looks and, and how it would fit in the end of the pier. The restaurant is never going to happen, you know. Ruby's only made money like five months out of the year.
Yeah.
And that ship has sailed, I think.
Yep.
So it sounds like I'm hearing consensus, at least, you know, temporarily to add, you know, in terms of work that's underway, looking at what that, that type of recommendation would look like, at the same time continuing to pursue work with the real estate professional to bring back some sort of option to council for consideration.
We get street positions real cheap, I'm sure. We have a lot of places.
All right.
I think it's, if we did the food truck thing, I think it's important we get good food trucks and not just, you know, a lunch truck from a- we have a lunch truck out at Leisure World, they have good tacos, they have good burgers, but it's just not, you know, they go to the crowd as opposed to food trucks.
Or they shoot the horn when they go in.
They do. Everybody goes around, all those old people running.
Shelley's, Shelley's point's valid though, you know, to us, and, and Joe, we have multiple conversations on this. No good deed goes unpunished because, and we can't make everybody happy all the time. So regardless of what we do, there'll be complaints. Um, I know Tom brought this up with the chamber a couple of weeks ago when they seemed, I mean, really talking, you know, to the, the chamber president, but seemed at least open to the idea, so.
Is there a place for a bathroom, a permanent bathroom at the end of the pier?
No, if, if we-
Or plumbing.
As part of the, the Steel Craft concept, there is a, there was a module of the higher-end affordable bathrooms that would go next to the, one of the big modules.
All right. Thank you. Page four. Um, category three has to do with parklets and is, this is an item from staff's perspective. We're not recommending it as a strategic priority for next year based on the action that the council took um at the end of the fiscal year or the calendar year last year. Um, as, as all of you know, we, you know, really talked about the need for us because of all of these mandates coming forward. We just don't have the staff ability to be able to take on these additional um projects. And so um an additional full-time planner would be necessary, not just for something like parklets, but in just the day-to-day business and the increase um in business alone. And so we've actually, we're bringing forward to you um budget, a full-time budgeted planner position uh in, as part of next fiscal year's parklet. So again, um, we're not recommending keeping the, the parklets in and of themselves. This strategic plan is a priority, but we are addressing the staffing need that this discussion triggered um because the need is absolutely there. So unless there's any questions that Alexa or I can address on this one.
Are we inputting on the, the need for an additional plan, uh planner? Is that what we're talking about here?
We've already addressed it in the draft budget that we'll be presenting to you guys.
Okay, all right. We'll get to that when we come to it.
All right. The elephant in the room, the housing element. Um, item number four, obviously. Recommending keeping this on as a strategic priority because we have to. And so Alexa, I don't want to steal any of your thunder because you're smiling. I want to have you. Anything that you want to add to this addition, in addition to what you've already talked about earlier?
No, actually, I, I, I think, well, no worrying where we are.
Maybe there's a little coastal plan.
Yep.
That we desperately need.
Are you best friends with your HCD counterpart up in Sacramento?
Sadly, we're not that close.
Do you get uh different people or is it just one key person that you're, you're?
There's a couple of key people that are assigned to us.
Right. Have you sent them any gifts or anything?
Any time, timing?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, when we were doing um some of the onboarding, I was telling you, you know, we're going to have a draft, draft in two weeks. We don't have that route yet. It's behind on the way.
Do you have any indication whether they're going to, whether they're going to accept us this time or?
No, I mean, I think, you know, I, I think we're putting forward um what we think is a really good effort to address their comments. Um, and, you know, we've spent a lot of time looking at other elements that, that have been approved and trying to figure out what we can incorporate. Um, our situation is, you know, and, and every, every community is different, every community is unique. But we do have some particular challenges just in available land, um, being in a coastal zone, being next to an airport, you know, that, that are restrictions to develop.
Have they modified their position of the major property?
The, the higher up that I have spoken to, Esri, that, that was kind of an odd comment and really didn't make a lot of sense. We'll see. But, you know, it's, uh, you know, as, as we've talked about repetitively, I think there's, there's the action of doing, but at the same time, you know, this element is, is going to be something that will need council approval. And there are some really tough things in there. You know, we, we know now more than ever that our community does not embrace density. But that's the only way we're going to make these numbers. So it's, it's going to be a lot of really hard discussions and decisions for, for the council because what staff can do is, you know, try to make the city as, as palatable for HCD as we can and where we can, you know, kind of round the corners a little bit to, you know, to meet the, the community's desires. We are, but at the end of the day, you know, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred units with, with padding, fifteen hundred units in our community is a lot. And, and the way, you know, the way projects get built is, you know, with density balances. So even what we plan for, you know, it could be higher than that to make a project pencil. So these are, you know, these are just the facts of the situation. And, you know, I, I'd love to make it go away, but that's not happening. So it's, it's going to be a real challenge. You know, not, not just on the staff side, not just on the doing side, but on the council side of padding.
If, if we rezone for one thousand two hundred and fifty or however many it is, what does that represent in terms of population? How many more people would live in Seal Beach if that, if we, when we get this? If, if it were all built out?
If it were all built out? Well, if, I mean, you know, two point four people per household is
Two point five?
Standard order to use, you know, but it's a ten percent. Well, yeah, one mountain. If it all happened, which in, you know, that's, that's a pretty tall, tall ask.
It remains, I mean, has that number of Leisure World, you get around a thousand.
Wow.
Two thousand more population.
I, I noticed in, in uh, uh, one of the financial books, A Little History of Seal Beach and something like nineteen seventy, there were twenty-four thousand people that lived in Seal Beach. Of course, today we have a population of twenty-four thousand, so I just like, isn't that interesting? Are we, would you say that we're ninety-seven percent built out in this town?
Um, well, that, that, that depends on how you measure built out. I mean, again, we do have, we do have very large parking lots, you know, that's what we're relying on for this housing element. So it's, you know, how, how built out we are is relative, depending on how you're looking at it. But yeah, there's, there's almost no vacant land.
Yeah, we, we just don't have vacant property except for four acres and, you know.
First rate.
Yeah, and that's it. Yeah, maybe, yeah.
That's it.
It's kind of like, wow.
If those parking lots get built out, is that going to affect our retail revenue?
Well, I mean, it may impact it in a very positive way. You put more people next to a target, that target's going to do better. They should start. Um, but, you know, if we're talking about having to reduce the amount of retail space in order to add the units, which is a possibility, you know, for, for a property owner, not press for the property owner to choose to do that, then yeah, that could be a loss. I mean, I, I would like to think at the end of the day it would kind of net out, you know, but again, more, more people, excuse me, to support the businesses is typically a good thing.
Process going forward from here, you have the application draft going up to Sacramento sometime in the next month. And you'll get comments and stuff back from that or?
Yep.
So an actual next application point for Seal Beach would be when, do you think? Estimate that.
HCD is supposed to turn around their comments and respond to you in sixty days.
Okay. Okay, so Seal, it's city council is what I'm, you know, when it comes to city council, that's what, I want to get ahead of that. That wave of, especially in, in Leisure World where everybody, you know, the, the overarching hobby of Leisure World is rumors and, you know, fantasies and stuff like that. So I want to get ahead of that as best I possibly can. I want to do it in a timely fashion. And I'm just trying to figure out what that timely fashion is. Is it August? Is it going to be November? Is it going to be?
Let's, it, let's say Perfect World. Let's say we, we've got, we, we send this up at, at the end of April. They get it back to us in the sixty days. They're probably going to take the full sixty days. So then we're at the end of June. Let's assume they're like, yeah, you're pretty much good to go. It's just one or two things. So by the time we do that, write the staff report, get a planning commission, uh, mid-July at best before we're at-
Yeah.
Planning commission.
Okay.
And then another month at best before we're at council.
Yeah, so appreciate the dialogue on this. I mean, if we could probably, we could probably talk for two more hours on this, but I want to be, you know, I want us to get through um the rest of this and-
Thank you.
Obviously, all of that to say, we're obviously leaving this on as a strategic priority with the, moving forward. Anything additionally you want to add on? Um, item five, local coastal plan, that's another heavy lift for you. That's clearly in process, but needs to stay on as a strategic priority.
That's right. Yeah, we, with our existing draft, um, city attorney's office and, and I had been through it. I think we just have a couple of little sticking points that we're working out this week. And then that we should be sending up for maybe this month, this month, to get feedback prior to council approval. And that's only for the first half. That's not, that's not the implementation piece. That's only the land use plan. So the, there's two major components, so we're at the first half.
Any questions, comments on that?
So the land use, uh, uh, so after we, we go to the coastal portion for the land use and then we do the other?
That's right. Yeah, we want to make sure that, that they're basically in agreement with, with what, with the direction that we're in, so that we can do the next step.
Okay, fair. Thanks.
All right. Moving on, page five. Um, item number six is address staffing needs. And I want to preface this by saying, even though we're not recommending leaving this particular um objective on as a strategic priority for next year, we significantly need to talk about staffing. And the two priorities that we had under here um have already been addressed in terms of analyzing competition, um, especially with respect to our marine safety part-time staff. And then also hiring a new management analyst to um focus specifically on IT matters. So from that perspective, we've addressed it. From the perspective of the fact, the mere fact that we just cannot continue with, um, it's just not sustainable in terms of our staffing right now. Um, you know, I'm talking about just on a day-to-day basis and what's before us, much less trying to identify and work on strategic priorities. So I just want to take a minute, especially since we don't, we no longer need to talk about COVID-related activities on item seven, is take a moment and want to give um my staff team a chance just to talk about um some of those impacts. And, and again, knowing that we, we're going to, we don't have an option. We have to address that with you. So anyone who would like to jump in and talk about the impacts of staffing, I would encourage you to do that. This is the time for that.
No, thank you, city manager. I think we all can talk about staffing and staffing issues. And, you know, I, I, I take a look at, you know, there, there's been a big transition, especially in this market. Um, you know, there's a lot of competition for, for good staff. Um, and naturally, we look at our exit interviews to see why folks are leaving. Since last July, we actually have twenty-two or twenty-three new hires. Remember, there was a hundred and, was it fifteen? One ten, one ten full-time. That's a big hit. So if you just think about the numbers, it may not seem like, oh, well, it's twenty-two people we got to be focused. That doesn't include the onboarding, the training, the institutional knowledge that you're losing, right? So when we talk about projects, you know, they may be delayed because we're going through that, right? We have to get them up to speed on the project itself, you know, whether it's TD, uh, lifeboat, inspiring, uh, CD, finance, public works. Um, all of these are, are, are very important. Uh, the other thing that, that really kind of sticks out in terms of like the data is the fact that, you know, typical management analyst position, you know, we get anywhere from seventy to eighty applications for the job. The last time we did it, we, I think we got seven or eight. So it's really competitive. Now, you could say, well, maybe it's the salary that's just causing this issue. It's not all about salaries. When we do those exit interviews, it rarely comes up that the city's not paying enough. It's really about workload and lack of opportunity. So I think there's a, there's a, a good way in which we can try to find those opportunities for our staff. That doesn't mean like, yes, if you ask us, yeah, we need more staff, right? We can certainly look at that. But there are financial limitations in doing that. So now we need to create opportunities within our organization. I think what we really should do and what you guys have done a good job at at the police fund is succession planning. Um, it's something that they created and they do well. It is something I think we need to do in city hall specifically, but not just have it to sit on a shelf. Sort of like what we did with the classification and compensation study many years ago, but more with actionable items where we train our folks, we mentor our folks. We make sure that we're getting them ready to take the next position in front of them. And when we create those opportunities, we can keep that institutional knowledge. So I think that's very important aspect of sort of looking at it, rather than just kind of like, well, we can't pay that salary. We're going to lose people and that's kind of just the way it is. I, I think if we're really listening to our employees, and, and that's what we're trying to do here, I think having a succession plan will, will help us kind of understand. Uh, we have a master plan for, for roads, for parks, for facilities. We need a master plan for our staff. And I think that's just something to think about.
Yeah, I can speak to that since uh, it's him, Gairos brought that up. Uh, the police department, before my time, um, we were from Chiefsville, recognized that staffing was an issue in law enforcement. So, um, across the board, chiefs talk about recruitment, retention issues. And uh, I'm, we're lucky and I'm, I'm happy to say that we don't have that issue in Seal Beach. Uh, police officers want to like it at Seal Beach. It's a desirable place to be a police officer. But we built that over the course of the last ten or twelve years under CM Ingram. We've done a lot of things in the police department that I think uh could be used in the rest of the city. Um, succession planning has a lot of different components to it. One of the most successful programs has been our tuition reimbursement program. Uh, in the police department, the entire command staff now, um, either is, has or- Uh, in the Police Department, the entire command staff now, um, either is, has, or is aspiring to master's degree level of education. Well, that, that type of, um, education for me is down to the organization, but it's an incentive. It's you're developing employees, you're, you're encouraging them to be better, and candidly, my appointment as chief is a function of that. The city helped me achieve my bachelor's degree, my master's degree, and they developed me and sent me to leadership schools and those types of things. And at the time of appointment, uh, I was competitive with chiefs from other cities. And that's something we wanna do here. We wanna have, uh, employees and people within our own, uh, city who are in loyalty to the city and have that institutional knowledge, and we're keeping them here. And I think there's a lot of opportunities for that in all departments throughout the city. Uh, but we have to be, um, intentional about that rather than, uh, passive, and I think that's really the direction we should go with that type of, uh, this year.
Now, I'll take a minute to comment on, um, on part-time employees. I echo Cedric and K. Anderson said about the full-time staff. But I have seventy-five part-time employees for the city, and, uh, they're valuable for the city. They're actually cost-effective. And, uh, as a lifeguard agency, we can expand and we can track our staffing in the season and weather happens. That's why, um, these part-time employees are extremely important for us. Um, in fact, the, the staff, the part-time staff that's been with our department the longest, we call them the winter crew. There's five of them. These, uh, guys and gals are trained like a full-time employee. They, uh, operate them both. They, they position the supervision. And so with, with that being said, I, I need to point out the big problem I see on the horizon is, right now, our pool staff, there's, for a pool lifeguard, there's five steps of pay, but because the state has raised the minimum wage up so quickly, I think the first three steps are minimum wages, so we only have three steps left. So the supervisor of the pool is making fifty cents more than the line staff, if that makes sense. So there's some compaction issues with our part-timers, and then there are also, when it comes to the beach lifeguards, um, you know, I, I've stressed this earlier, six months ago, when we did a five percent raise for the beach staff. Our beach staff starts around nineteen dollars, and we're competing with the city of Long Beach that starts at twenty-five. Uh, so we just got done with the recruitment process and tryouts and, and interviews, and we recruited, or we, we talked to three people that had made both the interview process for the city of Long Beach and the interview process for Seal Beach. And I think two out of three are gonna end up in Long Beach solely because of pay. And the third, we're gonna get to Seal Beach because we've been effective in creating a certain culture in our department that people are looking for. But ultimately, my point is with the beach lifeguards and part-time wages for them, since I've become a lifeguard in eighty-nine, where I was making eight twenty-five an hour and minimum wage was four twenty-five an hour, beach lifeguards have always made double minimum wage, and that's up and down the coast. And so what happened is, we went from two dollars an hour, our lifeguards are making eighteen fifty, the minimum wage is ten dollars an hour. Now we're at fifty and fifty. We've gotten a five percent raise, so we're about nineteen twenty an hour. So, uh, we're falling behind quickly, and so we're losing people to Starbucks and McDonald's and, and those type of things. And my last point on that is, once again, very effective financially part-time employees for the lifeguard, um, department. And the thing people need to remember, to build a lifeguard, it takes years of swimming in the pool, right? They have to have years of swimming background where they surf every day, and they're really water knowledgeable. And then they have to be independent, able to work unsupervised, outgoing, be able to speak clearly. Once again, they are the face of the city. The first person that people see when they come to our city is usually gonna be a lifeguard on the tower. That eighteen-year-old kid on the lifeguard tower represents the city and all of us sitting here. And so in my mind, it's important to, uh, hire the best people possible and train them as well as we can. And, uh, once again, I know it's, it's shocking, but I think we need to be aiming for thirty dollars an hour at this point for our part-time employees. And, and that number is hard, right? It, it's hard for me to say, but if you look at it traditionally and historically, I really believe that's what we need to be, we're, we're falling behind constantly because the state is constantly raising the minimum wage in the last five years.
I'd like to, um, echo some thoughts are, uh, sorry, I don't wanna regurgitate what my colleagues just shared with you, whether it's, um, pay, succession, succession planning, training, retention of our staff, retention of our institutional knowledge, can't agree more with all of us. But what I do wanna also highlight is, um, the state of public works, actually. Um, so I may have mentioned to some of, um, to some of you that we have a number of vacancies right now, whether they are, um, actual vacant positions that we haven't filled, or, um, out on workers' comp, or some other, um, instances. So there, a quarter of our staff is gone at any one time, and, um, just to let you know, on the engineering side, it's down to Dave Spitz and myself. We are running the administration and capital side of things. Um, as you all know, he is the face for our OC Sanon, uh, four oh five. So, uh, much of his time is on the inter-agency coordination, um, which leaves pretty much the capital side all on me. Um, you know that one of our assistant engineers just left, and we haven't recruited my re- or actually, we just recently recruited my replacement, but haven't started yet. So the capital projects are still moving, albeit though it's not at the speed that we would like to deliver and, uh, as we would have liked to. So, um, these are things that we're trying to manage and still get by. But I wanted to stress that we are, we don't have leadership over at the yard either. I'm, I'm also watching over that. So I split my time between the yard and our engineering side as well. Our city engineer's not here to watch after the, um, uh, after, after the city hall side. The yard, I don't have a Scott Smith for part-time for three months, so I will basically be sitting over there also and cloning myself the best I can over there, um, to watch after the, all the disciplines we have. We have the utility side, we have the maintenance side. We run a business for sewer and water. Uh, we need a leadership. You can't run a business without having leadership there. So these are health and safety issues here, and I do wanna stress that we need proper oversight in that area, and we should not delay on that anymore. So, um, again, for, for, for the department, for the city, for our citizens, uh, we do need to fill those vacancies.
If you're proceeding on the hiring at this stage of year, over now, right? You're not waiting for us to say, go get them, right? You're recruiting, or?
We have recently recruited my, uh, former position as a deputy public works director, city engineer. However, um, we are looking to optimize these vacancies through a, a reorganization plan if possible, um, and utilize those positions and vacancies to cover more and, um, do more for the city. So that, we are, um, in a transition stage.
We need to fill existing positions, right? Or missing people?
We are missing people, yes.
I, I could add to that real quick, just to give you just a quick downpoint. So we have right now eleven active recruitments and one full-time HR person. We have two ladies that work in HR, but they're equivalent to, to one HR person because they work on other special projects, uh, for the city management office. Just to give you some context.
Alexa, Barb, and Gloria, anything new that you wanna add? Just to stress the point that we're obviously trying to make here.
I would just echo what my colleagues have said as well, source and historical knowledge. We don't wanna lose that. Um, my office is two point five people in the office, and we're doing the work that most cities do, you know, larger cities. So, um, Dan has been around, what, fifteen years or so, and she has quite good knowledge, so I would really hate to lose her because she's really working out of scope, and we could, um, there's something we can do to incentivize to maybe keep her there. Not that she says she's leaving, but, you know, at other cities, they're, they're paying much more for a deputy, and I think that she's working out of class. She should already be an assistant super, because when I'm out of the office, she does everything. When I'm in the office, she's doing quite a lot, so. So, um, yeah, so I, I kinda echo what my colleagues are saying, and we really don't wanna lose that historical knowledge. You could ask Dana something, and she would know. Barb came to ask me something, and yeah, so we probably should just ask Dana, because I'm sure she knows, you know? But yeah, so we really wanna.
Dana's full-time, right?
She is full-time. We need to.
And there's a half, the, uh, winning, that's right.
We actually could use a full-time person, there's records alone, you know, but don't get into that.
We have a budget process coming up.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm just, uh, you know, I think, I think Gloria's department and, and mine, you know, share the similarity of, of just volume challenges. You know, we, we look back historically, you know, we made comparisons to last year, having records of us, you know, ten years ago, we had half the volume of planning applications that we do now, but I still have the same number of staff. So, and, and face all of, all of these same challenges of having part-timers that could make more at Starbucks and, and, you know, having, having vacancies that have been here seventeen months. I have not had a fully staffed department at one point in that entire time. You know, there's, there's just a lot of, you know, a lot of things we're, we're trying to absorb and, and make room for, um, and challenging.
I'll, I'll reiterate, um, uh, as a city manager, is that there's a labor shortage. Um, we had a recruitment, we went out three times. Um, we're training people up to train them out. They come in, right? Um, I have people calling and trying to steal our staff. Uh, because we train them, we put their, you know, the dollars that they need, and then there's, you know, more resources. So we do train them to train them out, and we know, I asked, it's day two, two years. Two years, and then if they wanna move on, and that's, that's them, that's what we do.
It really is a double-edged sword, because we know what the needs are, but, and we have this discussion, our team has, we, we can't afford to continue to give increases every year. And we're, I'm just talking cost of living increases, and talk about retention in terms of acknowledging those that probably should be reclassified, which along with that comes a salary increase, and then talk about new staffing. I mean, it's just, if that isn't feasible, and yet we can't just ignore the fact that we need additional staffing. And so I'm wondering, maybe Rick and Carol, having, you having heard this conversation of maybe, you know, from this particular category, what we intended to accomplish based on, um, council's direction, we have accomplished, but maybe there's an opportunity through maybe looking at succession planning or something of that nature that we can be focused on to try to capture some of this. Obviously, through the budget process, we have, we're having those conversations about knowing what we know about revenues, what can we afford, but it's not just short-term. What can we afford long-term? Um, you know, in terms of public works, looking at potential reorg plan, and we were looking at, you know, phasing it, but at the end of the day, we have to be able to afford it. Um, so it's, it's a really difficult conversation, but.
I think, you know, we're, we're in a lot of cases, we have a lot of clients in California, and you guys are not alone in the, um, staffing issues, um, and vacancies, and, um, finances, finances, um, you know, very difficult, very difficult positions to fill. Community development is difficult to fill. Public works is, I mean, you guys are all, all difficult to fill. Um, that, that being said, one of the things that, um, we go into cities and do organizational assessments, and a lot of times what we try to do is balance the ongoing workload with the peaks and the valleys, right? What does that base, what does that base staffing level really need to be? And you supplement that with consultants. Um, and, and consultants can often do those, those brief, you know, I need help with this one thing. They can come in, they can quickly handle that for you, get in, get out, take it off your plate. Um, because I hear that too, right? It's like, how many things can I take off my plate? You know, public works is a, is a prime example for engineering, engineering assistance and getting an engineer. Not to say that you, those consultants still need oversight, particularly in engineering, but if you're not actually doing the work, you know, that oversight can also be extremely helpful. So I would really want you to think, you know, I think a succession plan is good. You know, people don't leave. My experience has been, people don't often leave for pay. There's often, there's some other reason for that. And I've also learned that giving somebody more pay doesn't necessarily keep them, right? So, so it's always a combination of things why people leave. And so you wanna think about, um, succession plannings, and people do have to have a clear path, right? If there's a, um, there's a deputy city engineer and a public works director, and that's it, well, and somebody comes in and looks at Iris and goes, well, Iris is gonna be here in like fifteen years. Where am I gonna go? I don't wanna be a public works director. Um, they're, they're gonna go somewhere else if they, if that opportunity comes up, right? So that, so when people aren't gonna hit that ceiling, that's the other thing, you know, you're relatively young staff. So when they, when your up-and-comers are coming in, they're going, oh my God, she's gonna be there forever. And forever could be, you know, three years for them, right? Then, and they're ready to jump to the next thing, and I think it's also generational. This generation also thinks that, well, I've been here ten minutes, so I should be able to be there, you know? Yeah, I should be able to be the new director. So I, I do think, um, succession planning, um, laying out on paper, you know, by department, what the succession is and how that works, um, with appropriate pay scales if you can afford it. And then, and then contracting those other items out to third parties, because you got, you gotta get the work done, and you don't, you obviously don't have no hands. And so that's what we're seeing our, um, most of our clients doing, is trying to contract out as much as possible.
We could, as part of the succession, succession plan, maybe we could get some feeder students from CSU of B, you know, that are studying civil engineering, or, you know, that be willing to get some experience, and then feed them into some positions as part of, you know, kind of a strategy.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, and it's something that we are currently doing, uh, and we could do more of. I, I know the public works had an internship, it was a paid position at our home point. We don't have that currently. We do have a non-paid internship at the city manager's office. They're living on what they can do because of their hours, right? They might have another job, they might be going to school full-time. Their knowledge, uh, is usually, they're very green, and so the training that was gonna take it, our additional time to do that. So it's not just bring them in and they can do some things. They're very helpful, that's not to say that they're not. Um, it's, so it is something that we may be able to expand upon, uh, but those might come with some, some costs.
So of course, the, like consultants, we use consultants, and we're not obligated to any sort of retirement plans or, so we save money there as well.
And then you can, you can historically pay for the consultant at the cost of your vacancy, because the, the cost will be less from the fully, from the fully, um, burden rate of your employee. So you, and, and if you've got a, a person who in, then there's a different, there's a kind of different formula there, but most, most people are not persons that you're gonna hire, so, um, it's relatively easy to get them, and, and there'll still be some cost savings from that vacancy.
And we've done analysis of, of other organizations, uh, a couple along the central coast, in which, uh, from a public works perspective, especially capital projects, you have a litany of capital projects you wanna, you wanna adopt and deliver, but your, uh, delivery ratio is probably about ten or fifteen percent of, of your projects. So then you have, you know, another eighty percent that you haven't gotten to. Well, we had a discussion a little while ago, which cost of living, inflation, those costs are going up. And what some of the other cities are seeing is they're seeing, we can save hundreds of thousands of dollars by hiring one capital projects manager to deliver this backlog of projects and get them under today's costs rather than the cost four or five years from now. So, you know, that's another cost benefit that you take a look at.
So would it make sense for us then, potentially, to seek council consensus on like an or- organizational assessment? Just to look at at least our baseline and where we're at, and what, in a perfect world, what that would look like, and potentially what we could work towards?
Yeah, I, I, I think that would be a good starting point. And then with those recommendations, then you work with your staff on what those recommendations look like, and you put a dollar value next to it, to do them too. One of the things, whenever you get involved with consultants, being a former city manager, I always say, what's my return on my investment? And if I'm gonna spend thirty or forty thousand dollars, you know, on a consultant, I wanna make sure I'm getting not only that money back, but then some. And so that's, you know, from a rule of thumb, that's what you always wanna take a look at.
From, uh, the standpoint of, of grants, do we currently have the capability in terms of the number of hours that current has to research and write grants? Aside from the matching fund, which is a different scope, obviously. But is that something that, that we have currently, or that we need to look at in terms of whether it's a consultant for a particular type of grant or ongoing? Cause I'm sitting here thinking, where are, where are we at our? Because I'm sitting here thinking, where are, where do we get our money from? Property taxes, sales taxes, and fees, basically. And so unless you, you know, can stomach a sales tax increase, the property taxes, we have no control over, sales tax, we have no control over, other than creating an atmosphere where people want to come and spend money, whether it's in Old Town or Chompy, or Long, you know, on the freeway or whatever. So I'm curious asking that as a general question. And what, what are, what can we or what are we willing to do to improve our? I mean, I see, like, being just in things like SCAG, um, Southern California Association of Governments. And then the money is falling out of the sky. It's just like, to whom and why are they getting it, and what are they doing with it? It's crazy, you know, the money that I see available. But if we, whether we're, we don't fit the, you know, the pattern of, of eligibility in general, or whether or not we're just not.
No, because we don't check some boxes.
Well, that, that, that occurs on a regular basis, but are we missing? I guess the basic question is, are we missing out on grant funds that would be available to us if we had the people and time to look for it and say, ah, there's one.
I, I think, my, I think there's kind of four components, and I think that, yeah, that's, that's a possibility that stuff may get biased because we can't do it. Um, as Iris brought up, a lot of the times, you know, it's, it's not, um, it's not just about our, our income levels, which is why we don't check a lot of boxes as a community, but having shuttle-ready projects, that takes that upfront investment to be shuttle-ready. And so, you know, that, that's a challenge too. Um, and then, you know, I share a funny story. We have, there's an over-the-current, over-the-counter grant available for, um, implementing this automated solar permitting system, right? Okay, well, this sounds great. I'm going to fill up, I'll spend a couple hours filling up paperwork, and that's easy enough. I ship it off and I send it back, and then I have our city attorney's office review it, and it turns out there's, there's something we have to guarantee in that, in that contract for some policy that we don't have. Calling HR and talking to our two, you know, half-time HR people trying to figure out, well, what does it take to put this policy together? So, yeah, I'm going to solve other problems too. So there's, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of answers to a complicated question.
There's probably no one grant-writing professional that knows about all of the grants and where they are.
If I may, China, really quickly about that, um, you're absolutely right. You hear about IIJ and DIL all over the place, federal money falling all over. There are opportunities out there. We may not check all the boxes because of Justice 40, basically allocating 40% of it for, uh, more disadvantaged communities. Um, but that doesn't mean that we're not competitive for the other 60%. And, um, I think that there are opportunities out there for us, but we do need to invest resources to get resources. Um, there's no one person that will be able to cover all the gadgets here and be experts at writing, um, a particular grant application for all our, uh, all our departments. Not going to happen. Um, there are consultants out there that can help us though. However, that consultant could only put in as much as we give them, so that still requires oversight as well. It also requires advocacy as well, speaking to our counterparts in SCAG, for instance, our MPO, um, talking to LA County, talking to Caltrans, talking to the state, talking to the feds. Um, that is investment. So do we want to go that direction is something that we're asking for correction from you about as well. Um, do we want to take that next step?
I think that grants and grant writing and seeking grants is an evolutionary process. I remember years ago, when Mayor Moore was community council, we started talking about seeking grants and seeking grant opportunities and grant funding. And at that time, that was not really something we did a lot at the police department, and it took us a while. And we, there's a lot of grants that we look at, that we don't qualify for, that we don't seek, that are not available to us, that don't check our boxes. But there are, as Director Lee has just said, there are those occasional grants that come around, and we seek them, and we learn about that grant, and we have a couple successes at the police department, notably with Office of Traffic Safety, where we, we call, we began the process. It took a couple of years to learn how to, to apply for it and then get it. And then once you get it, you have to learn about the grant management. So there's a learning curve. It can be done, um, but it takes time. You have to start, and it's an investment. But we do seek the benefit from that, so when you're talking about return on investment. Now, we have those grant opportunities and we, we manage that within the police department, but it does take commitment to doing that and to seeking that. There's a better way to go, um, for some departments, where there's not so much. At OCFA, we have a whole bunch of persons who've made that investment to, the more that pays for itself as well as a lot of funding, additional funding to the agency that helps us keep some of the cost off the city, especially the house contract cities. So that is an investment, as an example. Many of these subjects, we share at OCFA with our 1,600 employees. Um, the same problems, but this is one example that, uh, I would advocate for. Um, you, you invest some to get some, and, and more than base for itself, uh, and also reduces the cost that we pass along to our contractors.
So great engagement. Um, if you see Carol's added grant writing on the bike racks, it's something for us to continue to talk about, um, organizational assessment, we'll add that on as a strategic priority to keep us moving on. Um, page five, item seven, the dimension of COVID activities. We've already addressed this multiple times, not, there's no longer a need to keep that as a strategic priority moving forward. Uh, moving on to page six, um, addressing landscaping media along Pacific Coast Highway. We're recommending keeping this on. It's a strategic priority. Um, Iris, I know we've got in discussions with Caltrans opportunity for them to potentially look at existing maintenance agreements to possibly get something done there. But again, there's another example of where we did outreach through a grant process, and we were not competitive because of, from, you know, from our demographic perspective. So we're at a disadvantage many times. Anything quickly we want to add to this one?
So, um, we are in negotiations for maintenance agreements with Caltrans primarily because of the 405. So they are taking the opportunity to renegotiate those agreements. Um, maybe they may entertain PPA, maybe they may not. Um, I, I'm guessing that they probably don't want to take on that extra, uh, capital responsibility. Now, um, when would they actually entertain? And they do see that there is, um, issues with the landscaping, um, in that area. Uh, if they could find a pot of money, they would be, be happy to help us out. So there's an opportunity for partnership there, and, um, goes back to our, just our recent conversation about being able to find money off so and partner together. Goes back to even a previous conversation about the OCTA, uh, ECP tier two. This may be an opportunity because there is transportation-related runoff in that area. I think in the winter storm, you might have actually even see some, uh, dirt that eroded from those medias onto the roadway. So that is an angle that we could tackle, and that's not the only angle we could take either.
Is, is, um, the repaving project from Warner to First Street still on the list?
It's still a no. Um, they have awarded a contract. However, they're not addressing the medias.
All right, the next item on, um, item number nine on, um, has to do with water conservation measures. I know we talked about this at length back in September. We're not, we've already addressed this. Obviously, there's an ongoing need for us to adjust our water conservation measures, uh, depending on, um, water supply shortages, and we'll continue to monitor state mandates and then make adjustments as necessary. So even though this is an ongoing item in terms of our responsibility, there's no longer a need. Um, we're recommending it not be a priority moving forward. And then item number 10, um, has to do with exploring alternative revenue sources, which continues on to also page seven and page eight. Obviously, this is extremely imperative for us, um, given the circumstances. And as Barb went through the fiscal analysis in terms of our revenues rising at a much smaller percentage than um, our expenditures, and we've talked about this at budget, we'll talk about it again in terms of things that we need to be doing. And I know from council's perspective, we're cognizant in the fact that these are going to be difficult decisions for you to make, but decisions that we need to talk about moving forward. Um, I know for council, and it's come up in, from, um, the interviews, of obviously taxing is not something that you want to consider, but looking at other ways um, for new revenue sources, and that's, again, going to require you to be open to this conversation. So, um, I don't know, in lieu of time, if we want to go through these, knowing that we're, we're going to, we're going to talk about them again at length as part of the budget development process, um, unless council has anything specific that you want to um, talk about, comments, questions, concerns at this point? Barb, anything additional you want to add here now, commentary? Okay. All right, so now we're over to page eight. Item number 11 is funding the Westminster Byway in Locking Pass. Um, we've already addressed this, and we're making a recommendation to not include it in, as a strategic priority moving forward. Um, Iris, you briefly wanted us to talk about our challenges here. I know we've already submitted for grant funding. We've been denied, um, again, for some of the same reasons. And so anything here you want to add? I know we've been working in joint partnership with Leisure World. They've actually expressed an interest. Probably should have waited. I know Nathan stepped away for a moment, but they've expressed interest in potentially some of that, um, property. So I think there's some opportunity there for them for a potential use of this site. But again, financially, it's just not something, you know, if we're going to invest, we need to invest the money in order to be competitive, but we just don't have available money to do that.
I, I mean, if I say any more, I'm going to sound like a broken record. City manager, you can hit it on the head, right?
Did we try again from the original submission, or?
Uh, we originally submitted one through, uh, RMC, so River Mountains Conservancy. Um, I, I don't believe that there has been something that's suitable for us to resubmit again, but, um, if an opportunity does arise, we do have a ready-to-go application.
Okay.
All right, so table two, new proposed priorities for discussion, and you want me to keep moving through here? Um, so these would have been, I think, Rick and, and Carol, things that came up from council through your discussions?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm at the bottom of page eight, so flooding is an issue needing to be resolved. Um, don't disagree at all. It just takes money. And so, uh, we talked about some of the things here. Iris, if you want to address this in terms, and thought it was important to highlight to you, you know, what we spend on an annual basis in terms of funding to address, um, water-related issues as a result of, of storms. And then, um, so I don't want to steal your thunder here, but there's a lot, a lot moving forward, I think, for, for discussion.
I think this winter storm, I, um, well, it brought us much needed rain. Um, it also brought us a bit of damage as well. So these past few months, um, we've obviously heard up and down the California coastline that a lot of people are going through recovery, and Seal Beach is no different either. Um, as you all know, uh, through the emergency declaration and the contract that we awarded to, uh, rehab our pier, which is going to be starting in the next couple of weeks, um, that, that in itself was $1.6 million, and not to, uh, talk about all the overhead and staff time and pumps and equipment that we use to address the winter storms. We're still recovering from it right now. Um, you still see a number of potholes out there that our staff is, um, trying to really remediate. We do have trees that are, um, some that then fell, that fall down, and we're trying to remove the stumps. And the list kind of goes on and on, um, but we are still recovering, so that, that's definitely a lot of need. Um, flooding, I, I mean, no surprise there, CPE, we did an extensive, uh, focus study in that area back in 2019. So there are extensive needs, um, no surprise in that area. Uh, Old Town is also a big area that we need to address. Um, half of Old Town drains to the county pump station, and a good chunk of it is actually going to the West End Pump Station that drains over at Sagy River Valley. I'm not Sagy River, not valley. Wrong area. Um, but that takes water from the hill and the, the whole watershed area. It, it's all encompassing, just because it's not immediate in that one particular district, doesn't mean that it doesn't provide an impact as well. So do we need to invest in it? Absolutely. West End Pump Station is, um, an absolute need, otherwise we will go underwater for sure. So please don't overlook it, that this winter storm here, we got past it, but that doesn't mean that we should forget about it because we have a sunny day today. We need to invest in it and make sure that everything is functional for other emergencies or other rain weather.
Um, and as the council knows, we, you know, had a discussion with you a couple different times, um, and direction for us to pursue, um, the option to sell the Ironwood property um, and take that funding if the council gave us, approved moving forward with that sale, assuming we had, um, offers on the table for consideration so that we could take that funding now and invest in the needs that we know we have now that we can address with that particular amount of money through, for example, West End Pump Station. So Alexa, anything, I know we, the, in terms of solicitation for proposals, that was, we released that a week or two ago?
Yeah, uh-huh.
Anything you want to add to that?
Um, I mean, we, I'm receiving calls and emails and, of interest. Um, we've been responding, but, you know, those things seem to be submitted in, in writing to us, not just ask us what you want. So, yeah, well, we, we will definitely have letters of interest, and we'll evaluate those at the end of our subsidy period and determine what we want to do at that point.
My concern is if we get rid of that property, I mean, I think that's going to have an impact on College Park East when, if and when we're able to help resolve the flooding there.
I think it's, I think given the, knowing the number that we know in terms of, um, storm drain improvements there, we're, at the same time, though, I think it's important to say that we are looking at other pump station alternatives aside from that location. So we're not just completely ignoring it, but we're, we have a fiduciary responsibility as well, knowing what we know about the ultimate cost for an improvement in that particular area. Um, I mean, we identified it several years ago, which is why we moved forward and could purchase of that home. Knowing what we know now and the needs that we have right now that we can address, um, with, with that particular property, then we, that we're bringing that forward to you for consideration. At the same time, we're also working with, um, Zeki with AKM, um, to look at potential other alternatives. So we're not completely ignoring it, but we've got to look at what's, what's feasible.
No, I understand. Uh, and those other alternatives, is there going to be a cost associated with that?
Oh, of course, yeah. But we're, we're trying to, you know, we're not in a position to be able to talk about it, um, right now, but, you know, of course, we're, we're trying to see what we can look at in terms of land acquisition so we can minimize that cost, so we can focus our, our efforts on the actual infrastructure itself.
We're definitely setting into right now, uh, what we want to do is to have a update to the 2019 season patient. Um, those are not the only three options out there. There are, uh, permutations of it as well. So I don't want to think that this is the only way to go about doing so. They, it, it was just a general concept. So, uh, I do want to come back, um, and just like City Manager Ingram said, we don't have the details to quite share publicly at this time, but we are looking into it. And trust me that we're not forgetting and are looking at, um, citywide flooding issue aggressively.
Yeah, I, I appreciate, I, I mostly, I don't, don't want to be ignored just because we don't have the money. But, um, I, I would, um, I would, like I said before, I mean, it'd be nice to have a plan or to have an alternative, but the trouble is too, that every time you're studying another alternative, it costs you more money to keep studying the alternative, so. It's, it, which is a concern.
I'm just curious, is, would retaining that property, that, that particular house in that location be relevant to any of the alternative plans we're looking at? We already know that, and I think this is correct, that, that because of the basic cost of doing anything to mitigate flooding problem in that area, using that location as a pump station, that we, we can't afford to do that.
No, it's just if, if something else were an alternative besides the pump station or whatever, you know, that.
But I'm saying that the house, the house itself is, it seems to almost be more symbolic at this point. But I'm saying that the house, the house itself is, it seems to almost be more symbolic at this point because we we don't have the funds to do what that house was originally designed, the purpose for which it was designed.
Well, it was, it was not necessarily a pump station. There was a lesser project, which is what left was a smaller amount of money and now has grown into a larger. It's not 50 million, it was a lesser amount of money. But it was the location because there is a existing.
Gotcha, yeah.
Pipe, so that's why that location. And there was a pump station and then a pump station with basins and stuff. So there were, you know.
Yeah.
And now the last, the 19 study looked at some other variations of that. So I'm not saying that's the only one. I'm just saying there was a reason that.
No, no, I'm sure at the time. I just, you know, it it seems as though it's created a problem for your residents in thinking that because we are looking at selling the property, that that's tacit abandonment of the people in College Park East.
Well, if you don't, if you don't have another plan, then it sounds like it's abandoned.
No, I understand, but I think that's, that's kind of where we're at. And so I guess if we can look at whatever other alternatives and, you know, get those, you know, to a point where the folks in College Park East can see, well, there is another plan that we're seriously looking at. And so by selling that property, we're not abandoning or doing further damage.
I think that was our previous direction to to have an alternate plan if we do proceed to sell the property.
If we sold the property, would we, what if we retained an easement? I don't know enough about it to, but what if we retained an easement to be able to access the lines that are.
Um, I think the easement will probably take a whole bit of the property. So, um.
Could we give a little description on what's needed on the West End Pump Station, the the $1 million?
Sure, well, our pumps need upgrading, our VFEs, variable frequency drives need updating. We do need to look at resizing our forbey. We do need a submersible pump in there. We need to, you need to work on skated instrumentation. So that's just kind of like the tip of the iceberg. Immediate needs, I actually need to get our transducers and level sensors updated right away. Those are. How do I, those are our sensors, if you will, that turns our drives, which drives our pumps and our motors to start pumping water essentially. So I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I'm not really explaining this properly. So those in itself are routine needs, albeit though not every year, but every so often those do need rehab or replacements as well. So we do know that at the, the sensors that are telling you about, we have to change out of VFE and we need a submersible pump and other instrumentation needs. So those four are like within the year at least, if not sooner than that.
When I started on council, both pumps failed and that was a big problem for the city. So I think we should definitely look at that.
I can't agree with you more.
Obviously, this is staying on as a strategic priority. We're also, you look on in terms of significant work, you know, we've clearly, we've got over 150 million dollars citywide in storm drain infrastructure needs. So it's, it's very, very difficult. And we also explore maybe a stormwater community facilities district in terms of trying to, as an additional viable option to pursue for an additional funding source. So lots more to talk about on this one moving forward. And then another item brought up by council was addressing protected left turn lanes along PCH from, I guess, First Street all the way down to 12th Street. And so Chief Henderson and I and Captain Ezrow most recently talked with our representative from Caltrans. And so Chief, do you want to just bring up date on this one?
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. We did, Caltrans has done a fairly extensive review of all the intersections. Sometime ago, they did some upgrades to Seal Beach Boulevard and PCH through some of the input equipment there and lane markings. And they're proposing the same thing for all the intersections along PCH. The overarching issue with us is that we don't control those intersections. They're not under control of City of Public Works, doesn't work on them. These are Caltrans owned areas and they have control over how those traffic intersections are maintained, how they're engineered from a traffic engineering perspective. So they have conducted assessments of all those intersections and they planned a number of upgrades to markings, to lighting, to somehow how some of the lighting is controlled. And we did meet with them just a few weeks ago. So that is their recommendation going forward is to to maintain the traffic controls as they sit right now, but do some infrastructure upgrades to those intersections.
I know Lisa, this is one that you're really passionate about, so.
Well, I don't know if you guys all know the driving force on this was the fatality at 12th and PCH with Sarah Kruger. I don't know if you guys remember that. And, you know, there's been many, many instances, you know, people have witnessed seeing it or being involved themselves, almost getting hit crossing the intersection. So this one was passionate for me. I'm happy with your answer, you know. But so there's no way to, I mean, so essentially it's.
We, we, we own jurisdiction over the area that it sits right there. We made recommendations. They did assessment of, for example, one of their data points is traffic collisions at the intersection. So the whole of our, all of our traffic collision data. And they have certain rubrics for measurement, which prompt changes or don't prompt changes. And I don't know what those internal discussions were or what those, that that rubric looks like. But based on their assessment, we just didn't need that standard for changing markings or for adding left turn lanes. That's not to say that we haven't done our own campaign citywide, where we've done outreach and education campaigns for, to increase, increase pedestrian safety. We've applied our traffic unit, specifically the motor officers, to conduct additional enforcement there for vehicles failing to yield to pedestrians. So there's a number of safety measures that we've undertaken. But in terms of changing the actual intersections themselves, it's simply not within our control or within approval.
I would just add that Caltrans is notoriously the world's worst bureaucracy. And they don't do anything unless they actually absolutely have to. I'm sure other city managers will will agree with that assessment. So if you want something to be done by Caltrans, it usually requires practically an act of legislation by the state to get them to do something. So I think that, you know, a lot more, you know, lobbying and and work could be done to work with them. But I think what the chief is saying is accurate. They're not just going to change based on what we're asking for. And it's unfortunate, but that's, that's kind of the way it is.
I, I forward you an email, Cheryl. I know you've been really busy. I think I just sent it to you. But one of my constituents had suggested a pedestrian footbridge over PCH. Is that even feasible?
Um, true. Well, I, I guess, um, I guess nothing is not feasible. Where, I, I think that there's definitely a lot of city competing interest right now. But to do a footbridge, it's, we're gonna need a lot of right of way.
I don't think there's.
And where, where, exactly. To have that space, to make that work from just a real estate perspective is, is quite tight. And I don't know if it's going to be feasible. Actually, I know it's not going to be feasible without a take. So that's item one. Getting permitting is going to be item two. This is definitely something that Coastal will be definitely looking at. So there has been opportunities, I think Carol could speak to the Newport footbridge as well. But it's not without challenges and and capital and right of way.
I will just say, Caltrans has been extremely responsive to me over the years. I know to the police department, and this isn't the first time they've done an evaluation. Of course, they did multiple types of evaluations after that tragedy at 12th and PCH. They're responsive, they went out again and they reevaluate the intersections to ensure that they haven't missed something. And it's, it's unfortunate, but at the same time, you know, it's unfortunate that we don't need the threshold. But on the positive side of that, we don't have the accident history, whether it's auto versus auto, auto versus pedestrian, in order to mandate a change there. But they have come to the table in terms of looking at ways they can make improvements. They talked about, you know, interval timing, they're going to adjust the interval timing at the intersections, you know, in terms of signalization to enhance safety. So I think, and they're always willing, they've done this before in the past. They've been willing to come and sit down at the city when we've had resident complaints before and have a meeting with city staff and, you know, council representatives and even residents. And they're, you know, willing to entertain that again. I think that's always a positive discussion. And I think for you in terms of, you know, input from your, your residents and constituents to have the ability to have that conversation, whether or not, I think the fact that it's outside of our jurisdiction, but we can still have the conversation, we're doing what we can to try to drive change that enhances public safety, I think is, is a really positive thing.
I know it took years for Caltrans to put KRE and PCH from Seal Beach Boulevard down into Surfside. I mean, finally, the number of traffic collisions and fatalities must have met their threshold.
All right, and another item that came forward in terms of a proposed priority from council was about e-bikes being an issue. We clearly don't disagree with that and to consider regulating them. So I want to turn it over to Chief Henderson in terms of regulation and enforcement. And then Chief Covey, I know, was addressing from a fire safety issue becoming more prominent pretty much every day now. So between the two of you, I think the input would be valuable. And we do recommend adding this as a strategic priority moving forward.
Thank you, City Manager Ingram. Yeah, we are not unique amongst cities, especially coastal cities, to having an e-bike issue. This is across the board. We've spoken to many other cities. We currently have been in an e-bike partnership meeting every month. We're countywide, they're looking at a variety of measures to really get control of this. I think it just, it came on subtly and no one expected it to become a problem it did as quickly as it did. That being said, a number of cities have tried different approaches and initiatives to try to regulate this. But before that, the e-bike issue is really falling to the schools. It was becoming an issue at our local schools. And so I know that Los Angeles Unified School District is looking at a safety program where they essentially mandate if you want to bring in an e-bike to school, you have to pass a safety program. It's an education program. But that really doesn't affect us here, especially where it's a problem for us, which is down in Old Town Main Street Bike Path area. So that being said, we have done quite a bit of education and outreach. I get asked all the time about e-bikes, say, those things are so fast, don't you have to wear a helmet and what have you? And there are different classes of e-bikes. We placed a pretty comprehensive informational email, informational link on both the city website and the police department website. So if anybody has any questions, it goes right to OCTA, which has really done a good job of kind of laying it all out before you've got any questions about what e-bikes are. Currently, our most significant initiative besides education and outreach is we're looking at a possible municipal code change that will help us bring some regulations to e-bikes. It's sitting with the city attorney's office. It's been enacted by the City of Carlsberg, but we have to vet it to see if it suits our needs and candidly, if it's enforceable, legal. So there's a number of legal tests before we want to bring it to you for presentation. But there are some aspects to it that we really like. Most notably is you can regulate, regulate where in the city e-bikes are, are not allowed. One of the more dangerous areas that I hear about all the time is down on the boardwalk. It's a narrow boardwalk, it's used heavily by pedestrians. And so to have fast moving conveyances on that boardwalk, you know, there's an inherent danger to that. But we have to find a way to legally and appropriately regulate that. And we often will look to other cities to see what they've done, what ordinances they've enacted and what successes they haven't had, have not had, and what legal challenges have been brought forward that would render it maybe not as effective. So that's a process, we're looking at that. I know city attorney, there's some comments.
The ordinance is very close to being ready to go. I'll have it to my garage.
That is great news. This is something that we really have been working on pretty hard now for the past several months. Our goal is to get it before the council, at least prior to the beginning of summer because that's, that's going to be our busy time. E-bikes, pedestrians, the beach, it's our complaints and our issues will go up exponentially as the population increases in around the Old Town area. So we'll, we'll work through that and prepare our staff report. And hopefully we'll have that to you here before summer.
In the last, you guys down in, in, near the beach have been having this issue for a while now. College Park East has been, the last few months, it's been picking up. It's primarily young boys on, on e-bikes, some with other ones thrown around. Sometimes, you know, just gathering at the park, but there's people that have, a lot of it on social media is where I see it. You know, they'll zip past an intersection where a car almost hits them. Or lately, they've been, you know, making ruts in the parks and things like that. Social media, you know, well, it's boys being boys, you know, leave them alone. But if they're destroying park property, you know, what, what exactly, you know, what exactly can we do or what is too much? I mean, I, I think I reported in Almond Park where they were actually digging jumps, like in Gum Grove. They were digging jumps and making jumps in the park is one thing. And then if they're just driving into sand, well, that's a temporary measure. But, you know, it's, there's concerns about safety, you know, pedestrian safety and also city property, you know, what, what exactly can we do?
Well, so thank you for your question. There's a lot in that. I would start with, with any enforcement effort, it's a balance. We want to educate, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to let everyone know what the laws and the rules are and how to do things safely. On the other hand, if you don't gain compliance, then enforcement is your, is your next option. And that's where municipal court, municipal, excuse me, ordinance would come in. When it comes to damaging the park, that was an issue in Gum Grove and we addressed it directly. We would, when the issue would come up, we respond with calls for service or even just a proactive work, identify who it was. And truthfully, there's not that many, you know, you can, with a little bit of work, you can identify who's doing these things. And usually a warning, education is really a better way to go and demonstrate that, you know, if you're damaging the area and that's, that's not appropriate use. That being said, even although e-bikes are a special class of bicycle, they're still subject to all the same rules of the road as everyone else. If they're running a stop sign, then they can get a stop sign ticket. Those things are still available, just like any bicyclist. And we've, we've addressed those issues before over the years. When it comes to e-bikes, there are classes of e-bikes. There's class one, two, and three. And if you're on a class one or two bike and you're 17 or under, you're supposed to have a helmet. So these are education things that we can do and there's an enforcement component too. But it is, this is, again, it's still an emerging issue, but it's one that everyone is dealing with and it's something we're going to, we've given a lot of effort to and will continue to, especially as the summer months come up. especially as the summer months come up.
So this new ordinance allowed you to issue applications?
Yes, it would be a municipal code violation and would be, would be available to us as an option. Depending on how we structure it, but yes, it would be. Again, a lot of bicycle violations are vehicle code violations. Again, running a stop sign, any number of illegal turns, not having the helmet on, those types of things. Those are still all, those are things that are available to us now that we do enforce for. And so, but yeah, once we get the municipal ordinance in place, then that'll be an additional enforcement tool for the officers down, especially in the summertime.
Are they allowed double riders?
Well, so within the ordinance, there's, what we're looking at is, it's a broad definition of riding with due care and safety. So, you know, you'd have to, the officer who observes a violation would have to be able to articulate, hey, this was inherently unsafe. You've got a teenage rider, and there's a little kid on the back, no helmet, and they can articulate that that's unsafe, and they were going, you know, fast and cutting through traffic. These are all things that go into the judgment of the officer who may be doing the enforcement.
Chief, from a fire safety perspective, I know you've been an advocate in terms of, and already made a presentation, but want to give you an opportunity to talk about some of the things that you're doing that I already have.
Thank you so much. So, yeah, when I promoted, I brought it to the city manager to speak to you guys, and I did that presentation on battery hazards. I noticed in the past year, prior to promoting, I would say six of my last 10 fires just before promoting, had been caused by these kind of battery failures, the hazards associated with. And it's more along the hobby-style battery-supported things, not cars blown up in garages per se. It's more this thing with the bikes and the drones or the cordless drills, anything that's got a lithium ion battery for it, and most of them are cheaper made, and quality really matters in this subject. So we did this in January, we continue to have an increase in these fires. We just had a thorough on fire in Mrs. Jacob's old territory in Stanton, destroyed a apartment complex. We just had a fire two days ago on Irvine and Turtle Rock, a house. Just had a fire in Laguna Hills two weeks ago, three weeks ago, that destroyed an e-bike warehouse. That fire continued to burn for five days. There were 45,000 batteries involved in the incident. And so they just kept blowing up, kept blowing up. We would think we would have it out, we were soaking it with water, we were turning it over with heavy equipment. We'd leave, and three hours later, we'd come back to more blowing up. So it's been a, it's a very significant challenge to us in the fire service, but obviously, a huge issue on the public safety side. So I've been directing our investigation folks to update our data tracking when we do our fire reports, to get more accurate data on this stuff. So hopefully, in the next year, we'll have some better data to be able to support what we see is occurring. FDNY, as I told you in those stats before, they saw a 230% increase from 21 to 22 in battery-related fires. So we're looking for that kind of data. We've partnered with the city, city manager invited OCFA to participate in our bi-weekly newsletter. So we've been putting out safety messages in that newsletter and stuff like that, trying to refresh this knowledge or the hazard. And then we were talking at a city staff meeting the other day, and the police chief made a great recommendation about maybe trying to outreach program to some of the more specific occupancies that have or manufacture these. So I've asked our fire marshal staff to develop something that maybe we can include in our, when we're doing inspections and things like that, to kind of educate. And the more I started thinking about it, and it's not just the e-bikes or hobby things, you think even with the golf courses, if they start changing to, from lead acid batteries to lithium ion batteries with the golf carts, so golf cart manufacturing and things like that. So starting to think is the fire service is grasping this, not only the fire hazard, but the hazardous materials issues that goes along with these fires. Many businesses are changing from generator backup systems to battery energy storage systems, best systems. So they don't have to pay for a generator. But now we have these fires and these battery backups inside a commercial business that critically hurt one of our captains, so it's kind of discovering, whoa, here's another problem that we weren't seeing, because we're not necessarily knowing that they have them. So we're also identifying, trying to put that in our notes and our calls, the places that have these kind of hazards, to protect our firefighters. We've come up with new policy on how to clean the gear, what kind of testing we're doing. So it's a huge issue, not only for the public safety, but the fire service as a whole. And we continue to collaborate with the city, trying to get this messaging out. If I may follow up on Councilman Landau's question. If the convenience itself is not designed for two riders, only designed for one, then that could potentially be a violation of the ordinance.
No, seriously, actually, my son is looking at a, I guess it's a style of e-bike that you can actually mount child seats on safely. You know, they're smaller, they have underwheels, the bike's easier to control. He wants to be able to drop both of his kids off at daycare and school and then go to the market, which is close. But, I mean, these are being sold, I mean, they're not cheap. I think, you know, these are going to have just like $7,000.
So, um, has any of these e-bikes, the batteries exploded while they were in use?
I don't have that specific, I know I do have a photo, again, from Mrs. Jacob's area of a bike down on the beach on fire, there was nobody on it. So I'm unaware of a specific where it happened while someone was riding it, but I'm not saying that hasn't happened.
What's the end life for these batteries? Once they're not used on a bike anymore, or they are, they've exhausted themselves? And it's, where do those batteries go? And why aren't they a fire hazard, where do they end up going to?
They are, obviously, it's got to go through the hazardous waste disposal system. You don't just throw them in the trash. And I just had a conversation with someone about this the other day. There's nowhere in the United States that currently disposes, destroys, and recycles these type of things. He was telling me, a friend has started a business up in Canada that has found a way to safely tear them apart and destroy them. Believe it or not, you have to flash freeze them first and then burn them, because if you try to burn them initially, they're going to blow up like they do. So the waste of this is an issue. We actually ran into it with the fire down in Laguna Hills, because there was no dump in California that would take the waste. So that was another issue of how do we dispose of this waste secondary to the fire? A lot of EPA, a lot of agencies were involved in this.
Do we have a problem with the e-bikes, kids on e-bikes in Gum Grove Park?
I've heard about Gum Grove Park, I have heard about issues in one part, but not about the other.
So clearly, this is an item that we've worked, although we've worked extensively on, is still an ongoing public safety concern. So we're recommending keeping it on as a strategic priority moving forward. And I want to thank both chiefs for the work effort that you've already put forward on behalf of our community, so we can try and stay in front of this as much as we can. Okay, we're almost at the end here. The last item on Item 9, again, these were items that were brought forward by council members, creating a skate park and a V M X track. We're primarily recommending not adding it as a priorities, primarily because we don't have a funding source specifically. We're looking at land acquisition as well as construction. But Lisa, I know this was something that you brought forward, if you want to add anything to this.
I think the last 10 minutes discussing e-bikes is reason enough to give these kids something to do. I mean, Jill and I talked about, well, you know, back in the day, the kids were out, they weren't getting into trouble, they had their drift ones. And, you know, now there's kids, you know, I talk to parents, and they're trying to build jumps along San Gabriel River, and that concerns me, because, you know, they're way back in there, and you've got a lot of transients. You know, some of them are very unstable, and I'm just worried the kids are way back in there, and you've got homeless people, and I'm just concerned for their safety. So, you know, if I'm allowed to, just do some research and if I can find funding, would that be something?
It's $16 million, what it is.
I mean, I think it's important for, you know, for the community and, you know, we've had people reach out to us, you know, saying it's a problem, we need something for it to do. It's not just the ocean, not all those kids use the ocean, so.
Years ago, that came with a proposal to Parks and Rec that wanted to do that on state land property or something.
Don't even bring up the state land.
Again, this is the discussion, so if council wants, you know, there's consensus for us to take a look at something. I know there's a risk management perspective that we don't need to go into from J P I A's perspective, but primarily, our, you know, was, our recommendation was not including it just from a financial perspective. So one of the recommendations I made to Lisa was, you know, maybe through the Parks and Recreation Commission, they could potentially have some sort of a discussion, since that's really kind of within their purview. And then it would ultimately, you know, if they made some sort of recommendation, then it would be, of course, you know, we'd have to attach some sort of a financial analysis to it. At the end of the day, it boils down to money, if we have the ability to be able to afford it.
My hate on it would be that, right now, it doesn't cost anything to have it on this piece of paper. And as long as, and as long as we don't have a location yet, then we don't need to talk about funding. But if Lisa is able to come up with a possible location, then we can, and then we can make the decision, well, if it's going to be $16 million, or it's going to be through donations and, you know, grassroots funding source, then, I mean, it's something. Conceptually, we don't have enough recreation spaces for kids that are either not toddlers or aren't interested in serving. And I think that, you know, it's, again, part of the situation that, you know, the city wasn't necessarily built for that. But here we are, and, you know, we even had to dial back some of the wishes of people that wanted to sort of make Gum Grove Park a look but don't touch park. And, you know, both of my kids grew up, you know, riding their bikes and, you know, were ill. And so if that's taken away, then, you know, they can't ride their bikes in the ocean or skateboard. And we have enough problems now with traffic congestion in the north where it's not safe for them to ride around on the streets, and we certainly don't want them building their own parks, you know, along the San Gabriel River or finding some other place that isn't generally noticed. So I think, you know, again, at this point, it's an idea that Lisa has brought forward, and it's not costing us anything, even to talk about it. Maybe our city attorney's filling this as we speak.
Yeah, I have no issue, I think keeping it included on there may be one of the, you know, things we can be looking at potentially, like I mentioned, is having, you know, Parks and Rec look at it. It's just going to be, as long as there's an understanding that right now, we don't have land, we don't have any financial resource to pursue it. And as long as we understand in terms of a priority perspective, since community services is under Alexa's umbrella, that we're going to have to balance that somewhere.
I like the idea of having Park and Rec look at it.
All right, and then the last item on page 10, again, this is the last item that was brought forward from council was creation of an innovation committee comprised of residents and council members to engage problems differently than we do now. And so not something that we had recommended in terms of a priority moving forward, primarily because it would consider staff time to support this effort. But at the same time, we've talked internally about creating a citizens academy that would be similar to what the chief does with the public. But what we talked about was something that would be more focused on citywide operations in general, and how the city operates and how it's managed and that sort of thing, as a way to kind of engage the public more sometime later in 2024. So that was kind of our input, but again, this recommendation came from council, so here to listen to what the discussion points might be.
That kind of came from my corner, and I don't mean to say that we're not innovative in what we do, but there's, I used to live up in Colorado, and I used to watch the city council in Aspen, which is kind of a funky little town, and they do funky little things. And one of the, one of the ideas they came up with in there last was to have an innovation committee, come up with innovative solutions to problems that just don't seem to go away. And, you know, that's the only reason I just, I brought it up to them. But, and I don't have any further thoughts on it at this stage of the game, except that.
Is that a mic drop?
I think, I agree with the overriding concept that we have such limited opportunities for residents and the city council and staff to talk about things. You know, we're restricted at city council meetings by public comment, which is one-sided, and then council comments, which are one-sided in terms of interaction. And a lot of things like some of these bigger issues that we're dealing with, like, you know, the disruption that H C D has caused within the city, that, you know, you're either believing what's on Nextdoor, or you're believing what one of us says. And I think to be able to have, I realize that I'm talking about, you know, more staff time, so it's just for a price tag on that, to be able to have, you know, workshops possibly, where there is that opportunity. And it's not giving away the authority that the city council has, and it's not giving away the higher ground, so to speak, that staff has. But I think that's something that, you know, I'm hearing in various forums as a complaint, you know, we don't know what's going on, you know, and we tell them, well, it's on the website. Well, they may or may not ever go to the website. It's published in the sun, well, that's once a week if they get to paper and read it. And so, you know, there really is a lack of the ability to communicate. You know, for good or bad reasons, it seems like every other week Huntington Beach is having a workshop about something, you know, that the council is meeting and discussing. So I'm not suggesting that we be like Huntington Beach, God forbid. You know, that there may be something that collectively, somebody comes up with an idea as to how we could foster that.
Oh, Jill? Oh, I think you and I talked about doing a coffee or a town hall with different, you know, different ones of different departments, I don't know if that's.
No, it's a great idea. I think Lisa and I talked about this, and I know Nathan's looking at facilitating a town hall meeting in Leisure World to talk about primarily the zoning code update and the housing element. And of course, we'd want it, you know, to be effective and not to be an opportunity for the public to, you know, bash the staff. That's not the intent of it, but I think the more that we have an opportunity to interface, which is why we bring out our, you know, city hall, our pop-up city hall out at community events, just so that our staff can engage with the public and they can put a face with a name and be visible and see that we're real people, we're good people. We're here because we love Seal Beach and we want to make a difference. And I don't think there's as much opportunity to do that. I think we do a lot in terms of outreach and engagement, but it takes the community to do their part and to come and want the information and to come seek it as well. So I think there's a bike rec opportunity here, I think with some of that. And then to Lisa's point with town. And then to Lisa's point with town hall meetings, we're always willing, you know, we've done that in the past with some council members to do town halls to have staff support there, um, to help address questions and, you know, to have an idea of what some of the concerns are so that we can help address those.
Wondering too, if we, when we promote this, that, that we really promote the rules of civility as, as adopted, so, um, you know, I think if, if they go into knowing, like, look, you know, this, they're, they're, they're reaching out to, to be transparent because everybody complains the city's not transparent. And, you know, if you guys come in here swinging and bashing them, you know, then they're not, they're not gonna do this outreach again. So, you know, I think if we look at it that way and promote it that way.
I would have no issue with telling somebody, you know, there's really no reason that you're here other than to bash our staff member that's here. So, thank you for your attendance and have a good evening.
I think I saw you do that once.
One of the things I wanted to, to bring up is, as you're talking about communication methods, is a survey of your residents about what method they like to be, what method they get their news from. Where do they, where do they, where do they look at? Do they look at Facebook? Do they look at, God forbid, Nextdoor? Do they look at, um, you know, where, where are they getting their information from? Do they know the city's website? If you don't know how your people are getting their information, you don't know where to put your information. And so it may be, a first step may be to do a community survey that says, okay, we want, we want to reach out to you more often. What's the best way for us to do that? And then once you get the results of those surveys, and then you can address your, um, your information out to your public in the ways that they want to see it, you know? Do people use email anymore? You gotta text everybody's stuff, you know, what is it, how do you, how do they, how do they want to receive their information? And, and we're all talking about different methods, but nobody really knows what all twenty-four thousand are gonna, gonna wanna see, you know? And so there's probably multiple, multiple ways of communicating, right? And so to reach every, as many people as you can. Some people are just gonna delete when everyone, okay, they don't care, right? That's probably most of your population. But you wanna know, you wanna get a sense of people who are gonna respond to you, or the people who are gonna look at your stuff. And what are they looking at? So that might be, I, I, just a, a way you get to how best to reach your residents.
I wanted to ask Jill a question. We had back in, uh, two thousand eighteen, while we were considering a property tax decrease on the ballot, we had a series of, um, public meetings and I went to, I think, maybe two of them. So I, I, but the ones that I went to, the people were very civil and, and were happy to receive information. Uh, so I, 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 I wanted to know about the others. Did you have problems with, with ravel rousers or?
I think maybe in previous years that, you know, with council members individually with coffee.
Like coffee, so, yeah.
Depending on what the issue du jour was at the time.
Okay.
Um, but I think, you know, the town hall meetings, I would agree, among what, some of us were here at all of those. And, you know, that when you have a specific topic that you're talking about, like for Nathan and Leisure World, zoning code and housing element, I think that was always helpful.
People are happy to hear the information.
At the same time, even at those, and I think the chief's found this out with coffee with the cop, somebody may come and they have a question, you know, about the status of the pool project or, keep coming back to Alexa, but housing element, you know, he may not be the subject matter expert on that, but he welcomes, you know, for example, maybe Alexa to attend a coffee with a cop with one of you just to have the staff support there. Um, we've done community surveys in the past, we've done it on before with ballot measures. Um, so I think there's opportunity there to Carol's point, maybe we're missing it because we don't know what people, what source people are utilizing for information, if any.
I, I know, I, I was assuming, well, people read the sun or whatever, but at a recent scoping meeting, one of the young men said, well, we don't read that or we don't read this new, your news or we, and I'm thinking, well, how, how do you get your information? Cause there's inserts in the utility bills, there's shoreline, there's various methods, but we don't know if, if they see any of them, I, you know?
Yeah, and to a certain degree, that's a cop out too.
Yeah, well, I know that.
Yeah, and, you know, what are you gonna do? What are you gonna do?
Yeah.
On the innovation thing, it's, it, part of my point of bringing that up is because we are city council and we have departments and we solve problems with people and money and resources. And that's the way we solve problems. We have a problem with this, that, or the other thing, it's gonna take people, uh, it's gonna take money, it's gonna take time. Uh, instead of backing up two spaces and figuring out a different way to solve a problem. Uh, the, the, the example that I'm thinking of in my head is that we have a garden plot over in Leisure World and the, their, the governing board has just decided to spend eighty thousand dollars to study the problem and then to do the, the grading that goes with the garden. It's kind of like, uh, Leisure World is full of people who know a lot about gardening and grading and things like that. And why not put an action committee together and solve that problem without spending those eighty thousand dollars? I mean, we kind of look at solving, I don't, I can't say this, from personal experience, I hope it's such. If, we solve problems the same way, every single time. We need to think outside the box, we need to turn the problem upside down, look at, look at our community and ask them to solve problems for us. Things like that, I mean, Lifeguard Headquarters to me, that's the icon that defines Seal Beach right there. And we think, well, that's gonna cost us seventeen million dollars or whatever the number happens to be. You know, is there another way we can, uh, get the community involved in fundraising or something like that? And then get into a matching situation or some way to make a more practical, uh, project just by involving the community? Because I'm not the only person around that looks at that, that building and says, that's Seal Beach. You know, at Seal Beach, when you're going down Main Street and see the flag and you see, uh, Lifeguard Headquarters? I mean, that's, it's an icon. So anyway, that's, that's my only point about innovation.
Are we allowed to do GoFundMes?
Sure.
You don't get them.
As long as you don't get money, that's correct.
Well, I mean, uh, for, uh, 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 if, if, you want to go fund me to build a Lifeguard.
Please, we've been donating donations in the past, as long as it's not related to the council number of stuff that we're.
No, like to build a new Lifeguard Headquarters.
Yep, we take, cities take donations all the time.
Yeah, uh, they, they fundraised for the pier, but here, but that took two years of fundraising to get the pier.
I got two years.
Yeah. I'm just saying, it's not, we, GoFundMe could be fast, I don't know, but. We could set up an account, it would be, um, by council action.
Can we organize a committee that's the Friends of Headquarters and?
Friends of.
Yeah, there's only one, there's only one legal issue, which is that there's a state law that says that if you're going to solicit donations for charitable governmental or political purposes, you have to report donations of five thousand dollars a morning. I know an attorney who can, who can help us. That's, that's all it is, but you can accept, you can push for the donations.
They're kind of people. Okay.
So it sounds like, yeah, but so, it sounds like we got great feedback on that and some opportunity, whether it's through our matrix and strategic priorities or the bike rack, um, for us to look at. I know Rick and Carol, you have just a couple slides to get through here before we're done, so I want to make sure we have time to do that.
Yeah, and, and, oh, full disclosure standpoint, uh, when we met with the city council, there were some, uh, issues that they brought up that didn't rise to the level of a priority, but more of a clarification perspective in sending them. One of the questions we asked is what would you like to discuss or what would you like to find out at the workshop? And they came up with a couple of them, four of them I have in front of you. And, uh, I asked Jill to work with staff to give an update and to address a couple of these questions. So, uh, first one was to improve community outreach with Facebook, mainly, uh, Parks and Recreation, what they were doing, what Public Porches is doing and what Marine Safety is doing. And staff's response was, uh, they're already posting on both Instagram and Facebook pages to get the word out on those three departments. Uh, our understanding is the police department's doing a good job in, uh, communicating with Facebook and doing a lot of social media, so.
Yeah, some of this, I, you know, I don't wanna sound like a broken record, but I need to. Some of this boils down to staff availability to be able to have the time to do it as well.
The, the next one was get an update on the, uh, the Bay Theater going, on putting the theater back into operation. Our understanding is that inspection was done back in December regarding the framing and there's an electrical inspection scheduled soon, uh, so they can start getting back into operation for that. Third one was a desire to see a master calendar for the city and community events be publicized. And staff is working with the City of Seal Beach Chamber of Commerce to post those community events on, on their website. And then lastly, uh, an I T, I T audit of the city from a third-party firm, capable of security. And, uh, talking to, uh, city staff that currently in progress right now as far as taking a look at it. And then lastly, uh, we're at the one yard line, you know, still have two minutes left to go. We're at the one yard line, we're ready to score. Uh, additional items, uh, council wanted to discuss and that is the need to be more transparent and allow for public input, better public outreach to make every effort to explain items more to the public and tell your story. I think we, we talked about that a little bit. We put together a, a bike rack item on, do we, a government white paper, uh, dealing with outreach to the community. And then the ability to use surveys more in order to get information out about residents or thinking. I think Carol mentioned, uh, a good aspect is to try to survey your residents to see what kind of information do they get? How do they get their information? Is it newspaper? Is it, uh, website, social media? Uh, in talking to Jill regarding this, they're trying to see some more clarification from, from the council on any of those three, three matters, so.
One item was the implementation of a new parking permit. When that first came out, there was an awful lot of confusion, both externally and even internally because, um, we didn't know, you know, what, uh, H D L was doing necessarily. And staff basically was, was turning people to call Fresno, this was initiative. And I think that, you know, Barbara, which she found out, jumped on that very quickly and straightened out, uh, H D L and, uh, worked with our staff to make sure that people were able to figure out how to get the permits. So I think, um, a lot of things, it's like we're talking about the possibility of implementing paid parking on Main Street, you know? And, uh, you know, I've been told many times over anything that we've tried to implement that the demographic, the age demographic of Seal Beach is somewhat higher than a lot of cities and that means there's gonna be a lot more of our residents who are not computer literate or iPhone literate and they need more help. And one suggestion that I made was that if, if we implement, uh, parking meters on Main, not meters, but paid parking on Main Street, that for a period of time that we use our C S Os and station them for a week, uh, at, at the parking station. And so when somebody comes up and, you know, they have this look like, well, what do I do here? They'll be right there to help them and instruct them how to pay for parking using that method. And it's a small thing, but, um, I think that's where we can do better on public outreach. So we implement something that's, something that's new and foreign to a lot of people that's spending a little more time upfront and making sure they, they understand what it is and, you know, how they, how they can work within that system.
Staff need any other clarifications on any of these three items?
I'd also like to see, uh, that's not mine, but, uh, I'm in favor of better public outreach as much as we can, uh, let, letting people know what's coming up, uh, you know, it's, it's more than maybe just posting on the agenda, but maybe having the sun, have advanced knowledge of something that's coming up so that, uh, the residents, you know, whether they read the sun or not, that as far as I'm concerned, that's our, our best, uh, our best outreach avenue unless we hear better from, uh, I, I, I will post things occasionally on Nextdoor, I don't do Facebook, but, uh, you know, whatever, whatever methods, uh, to let people know that something's coming up.
You did, uh, talk to the chamber about doing a, a master calendar. Like, when people come to the council meetings and tell us all these dates, it's hard to keep track sometimes, so. We, we thought of maybe putting one calendar with everything Seal Beach that we could look at that's coming up. It's a nice thing that we push out to our residents.
I think the ultimate solution is twenty-four thousand phone calls every year.
Uh, as far as my count, we narrowed it down to, uh, top priorities of around eight for city staff to be addressing over the next, uh, year period of time. In talking to staff, they look to be reporting back to the city council on the status of that, about every six months, as far as, uh, what their status is on, on those, those eight items. Uh, we recommend from, from a, a policy perspective, holding off on adding new items as far as prioritization items to the list unless something falls off. Uh, be, because again, it's that capacity issue and the workload issue. One of the things we have here that we talk about is best practices. Uh, what we see other councils view is they hold off on addressing any new projects until, uh, you know, new initiatives until the next fiscal year or if they have a bi-annual budget, uh, the mid-cycle adjustment, you know, during the, during the even year. Those items that would warrant having to address something immediately would be, in a case of an emergency, you know, pandemic, flood, uh, new outside forces, uh, funding, needing, uh, matching grants from the city, uh, multi-agency opportunities that can't be delayed, uh, community safety issues that need to be addressed immediately on, on the near term or changes in, in any type of laws or, um, in this case, unfunded mandates, so they're gonna be funded. So otherwise, we recommend holding off on any initiatives until the next, the next, uh, cycle. As far as next steps are concerned, uh, it'll be, uh, with Carol and I, we will go back. Uh, we've been taking some copious notes as to what this discussion was. Uh, we put some items on here as far as a bike rack issue to, to, to discuss at a later date. And we'll be putting together a written report and submitting that to the, to the city manager. And then she'll be providing that written report, uh, to council within the next thirty days. So as far as, uh, wrap up is concerned, uh, I know we're a little bit over scheduled. We're hoping to get everyone out at, at three, three o'clock, we're at three-thirty right now. Uh, two, two things, one, we have a, an evaluation worksheet, uh, in front of everybody. Uh, this is, uh, very important for us. If you wouldn't mind feeling it out, that gives us ideas for how, uh, these kinds of workshops need to be ran and how we can improve them in, in the future. But one of the things we'd like to do is just go around the room very quickly and just take, uh, takeaway as far as what your experience was today, what you liked and, uh, how you value it. So, you wanna? So on the closing comments, you know, if you wouldn't mind sharing, you know, one comment that you thought was useful in, in today's discussion, that'd be great. And why don't we start with, uh, Patrick?
Well, I, I know today, you know, it was great to be with colleagues and, and from all of you. We heard a lot about challenges and crises and, and, you know, coming off the best of the, the pandemic has been, you know, kind of eye-opening in terms of, you know, what we've been able to accomplish in terms of increasing efficiencies and becoming more virtual. So while there are a lot of challenges, I think, you know, like there's a famous quote, you know, big challenge is great, big opportunity. So we have to be focused on the positive that there are a lot of opportunities, uh, to be had with our city and our community. So I think there's some great things that. So I think there's, uh, some great things that can be had and really smart people accomplish those things, so.
I just want to thank everyone here, all my colleagues and council facilitators. I really think it was, uh, I've been in these and I think it was really productive discussions today. Difficult topics to talk about at times, um, but I really felt like from a staff perspective, uh, the council heard what we had to say and really appreciate that as we listen to what your priorities are and try to make a vision for the city. So thank you for giving us all those.
He's just still there. No, I appreciate being on the front of it. Jill, I don't know what you're gonna say. I'm always impressed in these, in these quick meetings, quick meetings all day, but it, it's really impressive to look back at what has been accomplished. And all of those things that have been accomplished are accomplished because of all the people sitting here at the table. And, and so to me, it's always impressive to see what we've accomplished. And it's always nice to get a feel for what the council's priorities are and what they want us to be looking at. And so I appreciate that. And my last takeaway is I'm glad I don't have Alexa's job.
The word we always use in the fire service hall is process. Process happens for a reason. And when you stay in the process, this outcome is much, much more successful. This is part of the process of running a successful city. And it takes everybody working together and clobbering together and getting on the same page for a process to work. And the outcome of this for the city will be good because of following the processes was good.
I, I think, um, may have heard this from you, Jill, that you have to plan to succeed. So, um, in order to succeed, so this is a great opportunity to make sure that we're a step towards success and, uh, really great to hear, um, from our electeds which way we're going and provide that direction to focus on priorities in the coming years. And obviously it's great to just have everybody end on a positive note here as well.
Uh, I, I honestly, I think. Yeah, all, all of this, you know. Right. I, you know, this is, it's a great opportunity for a travel building, between all of us and rest of, you know, kind of get to know all of you or, you know, it was almost a present. It's just, it's just a really, really nice opportunity and I'm so glad that we have it. Thank you all and thank you for Jill for, for continuing to put this together twice here. It's just really great.
Uh, I, I, I hope, I'm glad Alexa has Alexa's job. Very thankful for that. But really thankful to the city council, um, city manager, you're allowing us to be in partnership. But this executive team is amazing. Um, in partnership, we've been working weeks, um, talking about long-range planning and looking at the city holistically for partners like a family. Looking at is where's our family going to be in five years and ten years and putting that on the table. And, um, watching the executive team, uh, chief has sat down and said, you know, I'll give up this if Alexa can have that, you know, and, and seeing that partnership is amazing. And with your leadership and guidance, it's really appreciated. There's two hundred and fifty million in, in.
Well, it has been a lively discussion. Um, thank you to council, city manager, Ibram and my colleagues here. But I, I think that we really did, uh, out of the bold principles, we listened to others respectfully. For you guys that came later, I kind of said that we can find common ground even in difficult conversations. And so today we had some difficult conversations, but we were able to find common ground again. So grateful to all of you to be able to be here at this table and have the opportunity to, um, just discuss between us. Uh, I think that's it.
I'm grateful for the opportunity to come here and pontificate without any consequence.
Hey, Joe.
Bailey, there's your word for the day.
Really thank, uh, this, you know, our staff for taking the time to come here and, and be honest with us. Because that's, that's the basis that we have to go on in, in doing the, the part of the governing that we do. And I, from what I heard, there was a lot of honesty here about what our needs are and what we should be doing to, from our end to try and mitigate and solve some of the problems that, that we do face. But the fact that you gave up your time to come here and be with us is, is priceless as they say. So thank you.
Um, I, I think, uh, the biggest takeaway for me is, um, being new is really getting to know everybody better. Um, I think this just crammed maybe eight months of working side by side into a, a day. Um, and so I really appreciate that, getting to know everybody. Um, and again, hearing all the issues and just after being here in September, you know, just kind of reconfirming how hard you guys all work. And, um, I'm excited and I'm proud to, to work with you and, um, and excited, uh, what we're going to do for the city to help with along and then also to kind of help with what our constituents are, are saying and kind of getting the word out, you know, what, what's actually going on and not what they're hearing on Nextdoor, so. Um, and thank you, Jill, for, you know, putting this together as well and, and Rick and Carol, thank you.
Uh, ditto, ditto, I'm thanking Jill, uh, for putting this together and for all of our leaderships to be here and, uh, to go through this process. Uh, you get a sense of motion, like we're taking things that used to be priorities off of the list. So we are actually accomplishing something. So I mean, there is actually a verifiable way of saying, we've done this, now we're going to work on these things here. And so that, you know, the adage I use all the time was prior proper preparation prevents poor performance. You guys heard that as the seven Ps in some cases or the six Ps, I'm not sure which. I won't tell you what the seventh P is, but. So, and I live in Leisure World, my neighbors about three feet apart on each side and we all know each other and, uh, it's a great neighborhood and everybody else keeps asking me, how's it going? How's it going? Cause they know that I ran and they know that I won the office and I've been sworn in now. And, uh, and I, uh, my comment is I'm having a blast. This has been a lot of fun. It's been, um, very informative and I hope to be a contributor to this town for the next eight years. Assuming my wife will let me run again in four years, so anyway, thank you all, it was a great day.
And, um, I want to say there's very few opportunities where all of us can get together and have a discussion about something because of all the rules. So it's, I really appreciate hearing everyone's high level as well as low level issues and having staff here to tell us why we can't hear what is, what those wishes are going to take. Uh, I want to thank the, not only the staff for being here, but for the public for being here, which looks like they're, they're not anymore, but I, I do appreciate the people that made a point to come out and look. And I appreciate, uh, Carol's, uh, suggestion of a survey to find out how people get their news. That helps us maybe focus better on public outreach and, uh, uh, community outreach and maybe help, uh, get people involved, more people involved in what we're doing. So thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it and, uh, everyone's input. And I especially felt the, kind of the struggles that a lot of you are feeling in your, you know, short staff and unfunded mandates. Uh, what I like is that we're all trying to do what's best for the city. And I really think everyone has a positive attitude and I really appreciate that and, and talking with staff. Again, this is my seventh year and I can't remember a better city staff than we have now. But, and each department is just being run really well, so thank you.
Uh, as the new guy here and, uh, someone that's mostly charged with just helping everybody else achieve their goals, um, it was really helpful to learn, um, staff and the council's values, challenges and objectives for the coming years so that I can help, uh, as much as I can with everyone achieving those goals.
Uh, I guess I would just close by obviously ditto, 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 by everything else everyone said, but quite honestly, I'm humbled by the partnership. And I know, um, that my team, I mean, we live together, we cry together, we laugh together, we, we do what we do together and it takes us working together, together to get it all done. So I want to say thank you. And, uh, thank you for what you do and who you are, um, and what you, what you bring to the table each and every day, um, and to this council. I'm quite frankly was humbled, this is my first time in nearly twelve years in doing this, that we saw the cohesiveness, especially with two new council members on board now in terms of, um, you understanding, you know, the challenges that we face and the accomplishments. And I mean, it really took us to task, to meet a task, especially, you know, and what we could add to what they had already, um, given you. And the discussion that we had this morning, I mean, I think that was, that was incredible. I know, um, really to have, to say that it was a refresher course on governance and council norms and how, you know, roles and what council's role is, what my role is and what the staff's role is and making sure that we balance that and we don't cross over those lines. But to have you already understand that coming in and this was really more of a refresher course and just to have us talk about it and how we can continue to have those conversations and build trust and strengthen our relationship and partnership because of why we're all here. I think to me was the most humbling part and it's something that I'm blessed, um, each and every day to have the team that I have to work with, to have a council that I've had the opportunity, um, to work with and especially the five of you now moving forward and a city attorney, um, that, with, that we can all lean on for not just legal advice, but just advice in general, um, and have, you know, another sounding board that we can lean into. But I especially want to say thank you to Rick and Carol. I know Rick, we talked at the beginning, this was his fourth year, helping us. And, and Carol, um, your first opportunity to work with us. I've known Carol a really long time, um, and we go way back, uh, in terms of our relationship and working relationship and friendship and partnership, especially through working through OCFA. And really to have the two of you with your experience and your background, but really the passion for what you do. And for me to have the ability to lean into you for guidance even on a regular basis, not just to help us facilitate a day like this means a lot. And so I want to say thank you to, to you for who you are and the fact that you retired from this profession, but you're so passionate about it that you give back and continue to impact cities and make a difference because of what you do. And so thank you for that. I mean, it was a truly a successful day and we had, you know, we've got, we had a few people here, which was, which was nice. And I know it's audio recorded, but I think we have a lot of takeaways, um, as a result of today. And again, want to thank the council for your ongoing commitment to allowing us to make this happen.
And on behalf of Carol and I, I want to thank you also for giving us the opportunity. Uh, there's not a lot of cities that do this. Yeah, this is a big chunk of your day. When you take a look at your entire executive team pulling them aside, uh, for, you know, one day of, you know, teamwork, team-building, uh, and talking about the priorities and explaining what the priorities are to, to, uh, answer any questions for council. Uh, so they have a clear understanding as to what your challenges are. It, it's fantastic and it says a lot to you to, to make this a priority for them. The city can only get better, you know, from, from taking out time like this. And I think, uh, one of the things you mentioned early on today was nurturing that relationship. And everybody has to nurture the relationship as far as how you interact with each other in order to be cohesive and effective, city council, so, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Um, Megan, anything you'd like to add? I know she, you have cookies back there for everyone, right?
A two-person party funding stuff.
If, if we, if you want to leave your evaluations up here, that'd be great.
Can they send them to you if they would like, as long as they commit to doing it?
Uh, if we can get them, like today, cause that, that way it allows us.
Yeah, it must be part of our, um, yeah.
It allows us to process it.